Okay, good morning. It's 9:32 and I'm going to call this meeting the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors to order, and please ask our clerk to call the roll, establish quorum, and read the statements.
Good morning. Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Hume?
Here.
And Desmond?
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on the Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will be repeated Sunday, June 11th at 6:00 p.m. on Channel 14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Each speaker will be given two minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda or off-agenda item. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted or disconnected while making your comment. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to clerk staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda and off-agenda item and direct the clerk to call the name of each speaker. When the clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. If a speaker is unavailable to make a comment prior to the closing of public comments, the speaker waives their request to speak and the clerk will file the speaker request form in the record. The clerk will manage the timer and allow each speaker two minutes to make a comment. To make a comment by phone, dial 916-875-2500 and follow the prompts to be placed in queue. Clerk staff will transfer each caller into the meeting. You may be on hold for an extended period of time and your patience is appreciated. You may also send written comments to boardclerk@saccounty.gov and your comment will be routed to the Board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see clerk staff for assistance or contact the clerk's office at 916-874-5451 or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Okay, thank you. Flo, I'll ask our Chief Fiscal Officer Amanda Thomas to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
... to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and injustice for all.
Thank you. I thought that was appropriate because Amanda worked harder than anybody in preparation for today's proceeding, so thank you. Well, good morning and welcome to everybody here in the chamber. We have a very full agenda today with our budget proceedings. I'm going to start with, we'll start with off-agenda, public comment, which is for items that are specifically not on the agenda. And as you'll see, we'll be having our, item number two will be our in-home services, supportive services, public authority discussion, which does not relate to the pay and wages discussion. So if you want to comment on that, that'll be off-agenda. So hopefully you're signed up if you're here to speak about that. Do we have any off-agenda public comment, Madam Clerk?
Currently, we have one person signed up in chambers. We do not have any phone comments, so if it pleases you, I will close the phone queue.
Let's do that. We'll take the in-person commenter.
All right. So if we could have Rachel Gonzalez?
Good morning.
Hi, good morning. How are you? Today, I am here to talk about the necessity for the budget that we have proposed to be passed by the Board of Supervisors. As an IHSS provider, I'm a parent provider, we're struggling, right? This is a human rights issue. Barely making it on a month-to-month basis with a special needs child is particularly difficult. And again, I'm serving on the executive board for SEIU Local 2015, and I'm also serving on the bargaining committee. And at our last meeting, it was a little disconcerting to find that the team itself doesn't necessarily understand the state match system financially. And that is, you know, it's unnerving for us as people that are on the other side of the table. So what I'm here to ask today is for due consideration. Please understand that this is a care issue where elderly folks want to stay in their home and pass away. You know, they want to be comforted, and we're experiencing, again, that shortage of caregivers that we've spoken about. I also talked about at the last Budget Committee meeting, that, or our Budget Committee meeting, that, you know, I used to make a lot of money before I had a special needs child, and I would love to go back to work. I loved my job prior to being a home provider, but unfortunately, it is quite literally impossible for me to find anyone to care for my daughter, not to mention I want to care for her myself. So I desperately urge you to please work with us. Please, we're not asking for much. We're just asking for the contract that we've offered you. I think it will benefit the county, the state, and I think you guys have the opportunity to pave the way and to show that you care about the work we do and provide us dignity. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Supervisor Serna?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. So I would like someone on our executive team to maybe provide some clarification in terms of what's before us today versus the negotiation process.
Yes. What is before you today is the IHSS Public Authority budget, and it is completely unrelated to IHSS caregiver wages.
Okay. I just, I feel the need to make sure that that's understood by all so that there's no confusion about what we may or may not be doing from a perceived perspective by some.
Yes, and we can't take up wages because that's a part of bargaining right now.
Great, thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Serna, for getting the clarification. Okay, well then that concludes our off-agenda public comment.
That concludes your off-agenda.
Then let's move right to item two.
Okay, for item two, you are acting as the in-home supportive services public authority. This is to approve the Sacramento County In-Home Supportive Services Public Authority Fiscal Year 2023-24 requested budget.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. My name's John Kuzitsa. I'm the Executive Director for the Sacramento County In-Home Supportive Services Public Authority. I'm here today to present for your approval the fiscal year 2023-24 IHSS Public Authority budget. It's in the amount of $3,346,178, as you'll see on attachment one. This requested budget reflects a net reduction of $39,774, and that is on the expenditure side. That's reflecting an increase of $187,706 staffing cost increase. We have a reduction in our programming cost for DTEC at $205,446, and then we have a miscellaneous reduction of $22,034. On our revenue side, in preparation for this budget, and at the time, we weren't certain exactly what the budget would be, so we took a conservative approach, we have a reduction of $57,387 from the state. There is a matching federal component, so that dollar amount is equally reduced there at $57,387. And then our provider enrollment services contract for this upcoming year is increased by $75,000 to reflect the increased demand in services regarding enrollment. So at this time, I'd like to request your Board adopt the 2023-24 budget as it's presented on attachment one, and if you would like to have any questions, I'm happy to answer that at this time.
Okay, thank you, John. Supervisor Serna?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. If there are no members of the public that are here to speak to the item, and if there are no questions by my colleagues, I'll move the item.
And so, Chairperson, I do want to say that there are two other actions for the Board. I just spoke with our county council, and so the motion could approve all three actions. So I want to clarify on the record, are you approving it for all three actions?
Correct.
Thank you.
And the second, okay. Do we have any public comment?
We do not have any public comments for item two at this time, and I will close the queue as well.
Okay, then, then let's call the roll.
That's unanimous vote with those members present.
Okay, thank you, John.
Thank you.
Yeah, move on to item three.
And for your next two items, I'm going to read these items into the record at one time. There will be one public comment period for both the budget and CIP. So for item number three, this is the fiscal year 2023-24 recommended budget hearings. And for item number four will be the adoption of the fiscal year 2023-24 Fiscal Year Capital Improvement Plan and incorporate additional projects.
Okay, so before we get started, Anne, our county execs, just to be clear, so then Amanda, when you come talk, you'll be talking about budget and the CIP all at once, so we'll take all the public comment on both these items after all of the, obviously, the presentations and the Board discussion. Okay, okay, thank you. Good morning, Anne.
Good morning, Chair Desmond, Board Members, Anne Edwards, County Executive. I am pleased to be here today to kick off this budget presentation that Ms. Thomas will be presenting in just a moment. The budget addresses needs we have in fiscal year, excuse me, in fiscal year 2023-24, as well as longer-term needs we have against the backdrop of slowing revenue growth. There's a lot of talk about whether or not a recession is coming, and I certainly want us to be prepared for that possibility. We use the Board identified priorities for the use of our limited discretionary resources based upon our obligations and community needs. I know there are many more needs that we are unable to fund, so the recommendations before you are aligned with the following budget priorities: continued funding for ongoing programs and initiatives, new and enhanced programs for county obligations and our most critical needs, additional enhancements prioritized for the September budget if resources are available. And Ms. Thomas will be providing much greater detail in her presentation. Finally, I know you're not surprised that I'm going to bring up reserves, as I believe they are critical to managing a recession or even a slight reduction in revenues. So I am recommending general fund reserve contributions to meet the Board's goals and support longer-term service stability. And again, Ms. Thomas will be providing much greater detail in her presentation. So I thank you, and I am now going to turn it over to Ms. Thomas.
Good morning, Amanda.
Good morning. Thank you, Anne. Good morning, Chair Desmond, members of the Board. I am Amanda Thomas, the county's Chief Fiscal Officer, and as Anne mentioned, I'll be providing an overview of the fiscal year 2023-24 Recommended Budget and Capital Improvement Plan. So, starting with a high-level overview of the recommended budget, the budget is balanced as required by state law, meaning that the sources of financing, including both one-time fund balance and ongoing revenues, equal the uses of financing. And while there are no significant reductions in the recommended budget, it is important to note that the general fund budget continues to be balanced with one-time sources and to a greater degree than in the current fiscal year 2022-23 budget. This is because we are seeing a tightening in the general fund as revenue growth flattens, at the same time, we're seeing increased expenditure needs due to underlying costs and new obligations. A lower fund balance compared to recent years also means there is less one-time funding available for either current-year spending or to set aside in reserves for future years. General fund growth, or funding for new or enhanced programs, totals $138 million, with all but $25 million of that funded with dedicated revenue sources. And as you'll hear described later, most of the $25 million funded with discretionary resources is for growth related to the May's consent decree. While a lower fund balance and increased expenditure needs in the general fund mean we aren't able to set aside as much in reserves as we would like, the recommended budget does include an increase in general reserves of about $17 million, which would bring the general reserve to the Board's policy target of 10% of discretionary revenues. So before I get into the budget detail, I did want to talk a little about the community engagement process leading up to the development of this year's budget. As you know, in June 2021, the Board approved a community outreach and engagement plan for the fiscal year 2022-23 budget. As part of that plan, in the summer of 2021, we launched a budget-in-brief budget summary and an online budget explorer tool, both of which provide easily accessible budget information for the general public, and we are updating these for each successive fiscal year. Also, over the summer of 2021, departments conducted outreach with the county's advisory boards and commissions, on which almost 600 people serve, to better understand their priorities for the county's budget, and this input was used to inform the questions that were asked in a survey of county residents. We've also been holding public budget workshops leading up to the budget process, first in October 2021, and then most recently this past December, to provide an overview of the county's budget and budget process and an opportunity for members of the public to ask questions and provide input. And based on the input gathered through the outreach efforts, the county worked with a professional polling firm to develop a public opinion survey of a representative sample of residents countywide to understand the community's priorities for the county's budget with a survey conducted in the fall of 2021. In December of 2021, the Board adopted budget priorities for the use of general fund discretionary resources in the fiscal year 2022-23 budget, reflecting the community priorities highlighted in the survey results. And then, leading into this year's budget, in November of 2022, we engaged the same professional public opinion firm to conduct focus groups of county residents as a follow-up to the earlier survey, and we intend to conduct a second survey later this year heading into the fiscal year 2024-25 budget process. Because the findings of the focus groups largely aligned with and reinforced the results of the earlier survey, in January, we recommended and the Board approved the same budget priorities for fiscal year 2023-24 as were adopted for 22-23, leading up to this year's budget process. Those priorities were included in the budget instructions that were provided to departments in January, which is when departments began working on their budget requests, and these same priorities were used to evaluate those requests in developing the recommendations included in the budget before you today. So, the Board's budget priorities for the use of discretionary resources are shown on this slide, and are: first, complying with the county's legal, financial, regulatory, and policy obligations, including providing mandated services; second, maintaining existing service levels while improving effectiveness and efficiency where possible; and, third, funding new or enhanced programs focused on the most critical and urgent needs, with the priority focus areas identified in the survey of county residents being a countywide focus area of addressing homelessness and its impacts, including housing and behavioral health, and an unincorporated focus area of improving the condition of streets and roads. Significant resources are recommended to address these priorities, both in terms of funding existing service levels and also in the recommended growth. Okay, so, starting to look first at the all-funds budget appropriations. The total is $8.4 billion, and I think we can all agree that's a really big number. Because it's such a big number, I think it's helpful to break it down, and the first thing to understand is that $2.1 billion of that $8.4 billion is really just money that is moving around within the county. So every dollar that moves from one part of the budget to another requires an appropriation, and this happens when restricted revenue is transferred to the general fund to fund expenditures, or when one department is paying another department for services. So this means that the net financing uses, or the money that's leaving the county, is about $6.3 billion. And then, looking at that $6.3 billion, $2.8 billion of that is non-general fund budgets, and these expenditures are largely funded by rate, fee, and other special revenue dedicated to a specific purpose. So for example, utility fees paid by customers. And then, within the general fund, $1.4 billion of expenditures are funded with nondiscretionary departmental revenues, which are also dedicated to a specific purpose. This could be from customer fees for general fund departments, for example, in community development or the clerk recorder's office, but it also includes a large amount of state and federal funding, especially for the county's social services departments, like health services and human assistance. Also, in the general fund, reimbursements from the semi-discretionary restricted funds fund about $1 billion in expenditures, and these semi-discretionary reimbursements are 1991 and 2011 realignment and Proposition 172 public safety sales tax revenue that's received from the state, and it's available to fund certain programs in the county's social services and public safety departments. And then, finally, discretionary resources in the general fund, including both discretionary revenues, like property taxes and sales taxes, as well as the general fund fund balance, fund about $1 billion of expenditures. We generally refer to the appropriations funded with discretionary resources as net county cost, but sometimes you will also hear this funding source referred to as simply general fund, even though technically, all of these blue-colored slices here represent appropriations in the general fund. This next chart here shows that a little more clearly by displaying that the total $8.4 billion in appropriations in the all-funds budget by fund type. So looking from left to right, you can see that enterprise and special revenue funds make up about $3.2 billion of total appropriations that, again, are funded through utility rates, fees, and other dedicated revenue sources. In the middle, so while total appropriations in the general fund are $3.9 billion, you can see that just $979 million are funded with discretionary resources, again, what we refer to as net county cost, with $1.3 billion of the total funded with restricted fund reimbursements, which you can see are separately budgeted here off to the right, and then $1.3 billion funded with state and federal revenue, and $361 million funded with other departmental revenue and reimbursements. And then, all the way to the right, the $1.3 billion in restricted fund appropriations include $1 billion for the semi-discretionary funds that I mentioned, so realignment and Proposition 172, and then $250 million in appropriations for other restricted funds. And then you can see here that the transfer of these funds into the general fund accounts for more than half of that $2.1 billion in transfers that we saw on the previous slide. So looking at changes in the all-funds budget compared to the current fiscal year 2022-23 adopted budget, that total $8.4 billion in appropriations, or again, budgeted expenditures and transfers, represents an increase of $502 million, or about 6% compared to the current adopted budget. The funds with the largest increases include the general fund with an increase of $215 million, or about 6%, which I'll discuss more later in the presentation. Airport system funds with an increase of $159 million, or about 29%, reflecting the SMF forward capital program, as well as additional operating expenditures to meet increased air travel demand. And special district and agency funds with an increase of $56 million, resulting largely from capital infrastructure projects funded with community facilities district bond proceeds and development impact fees. And then, waste management and recycling with an increase of $51 million due largely to additional capital and operating expenditures required to comply with new regulations regarding organic material collection. While total appropriations are $8.4 billion, as I mentioned earlier, the budgeted expenditure is net of reimbursements, or the actual money out the door is about $6.3 billion. And then, overall, the all-funds budget includes $193 million in total appropriations for new or enhanced programs, or what we call growth. $138 million of that is in the general fund, and $55 million is in non-general fund departments. So, looking at that $6.3 billion in budgeted expenditures or net financing uses, this chart shows how those expenditures are distributed by functional area in the county's budget. So you can see that the largest share, at 37%, is for expenditures in the county's social services departments, and this includes departments such as health services, human assistance, child, family, and adult services, and the new Department of Homeless Services and Housing. The second-largest area, 27%, is for community services, including departments such as transportation, community development, regional parks, and water resources. Public Safety and Justice represents the third-largest share, at 18%, and includes departments in the county's Public Safety and Justice Agency, such as Probation and Public Defender, as well as the Sheriff and District Attorney budgets. Expenditures for administrative services departments, which provide services to other county departments, represent 12%, and general government represents 6%. So turning now to look just at the general fund. So as I mentioned earlier, total appropriations in the general fund are $3.9 billion, and as shown earlier, the bulk of these appropriations are funded with federal, state, departmental, and semi-discretionary resources. If we look just at the discretionary resources in the general fund, which are shown here on the left, we can see that available resources include $870 million of discretionary revenue, $110 million of estimated available fund balance, and $16 million of reserve releases to fund expenditures for which the reserves were established. So together, these sources fund $979 million in net county cost, or appropriations funded with discretionary resources, and the $17 million increase in the general reserve. And you can see, looking at these numbers, that the $979 million in net county cost exceeds the $870 million of discretionary revenues and $16 million of reserve releases, which means that we are budgeting to spend more money than we are bringing in with $93 million of fund balance. So of that $110 million, $93 million of that fund balance, which is prior-year savings, is being used to fund 2023-24 ongoing expenditures, and then the remaining $17 million of that fund balance being put into reserves to be available for future-year expenditures. This chart shows the actual general fund beginning balance in prior fiscal year budgets, with the top of each bar showing the total fund balance available, while the blue portion represents the amount budgeted to fund current-year expenditures, and then the orange portion showing the amount of fund balance set aside in reserves for future-year spending. Looking at the totals, you can see that historically, the amount has been around $50 to $100 million, and the very high fund balance that we saw for the prior few years can be attributed in large part to impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic. That includes difficulty filling position vacancies, project and delivery delays, as well as additional state and federal revenue, and higher-than-anticipated sales tax revenue. As these impacts subside, we are estimating a lower fund balance heading into 2023-24, and we would expect to return to closer to the historical average in future years. You can also see that while overall fund balance is estimated to be lower in fiscal year 2023-24 than in fiscal year 2022-23, the blue portion that's used to fund expenditures is higher. This chart shows the breakdown of the $870 million of discretionary revenue and reimbursements by source, and you can see that property taxes account for by far the majority of discretionary revenues for the county, at about 71%. Sales and use taxes at 17%, and then other taxes, which includes property transfer tax, transient occupancy tax, utility user tax, at about 5%, and other revenues at 7%. Overall, discretionary revenues are up $45 million, or 5.4% compared to the current adopted budget. And while this is still a pretty healthy increase, it's much lower than the over 10% increase included in the fiscal year 2022-23 budget.
Excuse me, Amanda. Supervisor Serna?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Amanda, could you go back to the previous slide, the pie chart?
Sure.
So, this is more for the benefit of the public, but the property tax, being the largest slice of the pie here at 71%, that 71% represents, correct me if I'm wrong, about 16% of the 1% that is the cap per Proposition 13 that is collected from property owners, because the property tax gets spread to a multitude of different agencies. Is that correct?
That's correct. So the county general fund share, on average countywide, is about 16% of total property taxes.
Okay, just in the event that someone might be looking at their tax bill and wondering how to reconcile the numbers, so I appreciate it.
Good clarification. Thank you. Okay, so, so we were talking about property taxes. Property taxes at $604 million. Again, the majority...
Property taxes at $604 million, again, the majority of revenues and also the largest share of revenue growth, so at about $39 million or 6.9%, and this is due to estimated increases in the assessed property values. So while fiscal year 2023-24 property taxes are based on assessed values as of January 1, 2023, it's important to note that future revenues could be negatively impacted by declining property values as interest rates continue to rise and if the economy were to enter a recession. Sales and use taxes are budgeted at $147 million and are projected to increase at a much lower rate compared to the current adopted budget, so at about 3.1% or $5 million, as both spending and inflation are expected to continue to slow following the post-pandemic recovery. Other revenue sources account for 64 million in total, but I want to mention that they include two new revenue sources in this year's budget not reflected in prior budgets. So one of those is backfill revenue that counties are receiving from the state due to criminal justice fees that were eliminated by Assembly Bill 177. So that revenue totals $1.8 million for fiscal 23-24. And then also, we have revenue under the terms of an MOU with the Wilton Rancheria in connection with the opening of a new casino in the county, which totals about $915,000 in fiscal year 23-24 and will escalate in future years. $500,000 of that amount is for general mitigation and $415,000 is for health and social services and traffic impacts, which will be reflected in departmental budgets and the revised recommended budget in September. In addition to discretionary revenues, semi-discretionary reimbursements are another important source of funding in the general fund. So these are those reimbursements that are funded with the revenue received from the state realigned for programs that were realigned under 1991 and 2011 realignment, and then also for that Proposition 172 public safety sales tax revenue. So we refer to this revenue as semi-discretionary because the board has some discretion to allocate the funding to programs in the county's social services and public safety departments. As I mentioned when we were talking about the all funds budget, this revenue is received in restricted funds, and then it's transferred to the general fund to fund eligible expenditures in those departments. The revenue in the semi-discretionary restricted funds is projected to total $993 million, which is a $24 million or 2.5% increase, and that's reflecting increases in certain categories of this funding and decreases in others, and overall is really kind of reflecting that slowing in statewide sales tax revenue growth, that same slowing we're seeing in our local sales tax growth. Semi-discretionary reimbursements in the general fund, which are the transfers from the restricted funds that are used to fund those general fund expenditures, they're higher than the projected revenues, so the reimbursements are $1.035 billion, and that's an increase of $18 million or just 1.8%. And these transfers to the general fund are higher than the total semi-discretionary revenues because of the use of both reserved and unreserved fund balance in the semi-discretionary Departmental revenues and reimbursements in the general fund represent the non-discretionary funding, and those include federal, state, fee, and other revenue dedicated to a specific purpose, as well as reimbursements from other funds and departments. So overall, departmental revenues and reimbursements are projected to total $1.9 billion, which is a net increase of $119 million resulting from various increases and decreases, with some of the larger increases in the social services departments that are listed here with $141 million of that in health services alone. Certain categorical revenue reductions were identified by departments, and where the department identified the need for revenue backfill, so discretionary revenue backfill in order to maintain existing service levels, a request of growth was submitted for the additional funding. So this was the case for Department of Finance revenue recovery, where an $800,000 reduction is recommended for funding partially with discretionary resources and partially with new departmental revenue in order to continue providing existing service levels. In homeless services and housing, services funded with $400,000 of one-time funding in 22-23 will continue to be funded with the use of existing and redirected resources. And in the public defenders office, $200,000 of grant funding in 22-23 was funding two vacant social worker positions that will be eliminated. However, the department is considering and implementing new approaches to providing these services, including working with other county departments. The recommended budget includes $61 million of American Rescue Plan Act state and local fiscal recovery funds, or what we call ARPA, revenue for projects that were already approved by the board. So we haven't included any new ARPA projects in the budget, and those will continue to be brought to the board separately and then reflected through future amendments to the budget.
Amanda, excuse me, how much in remaining ARPA funds do we have?
So in terms of expenditures, we have spent approximately 1/3 of the total $300 million. We have small amounts of unallocated in homeless services and housing and also in some of the district allocations. And I will tell you that we're also looking at approved projects and whether or not there might be opportunity to, you know, to release funding that may not be needed for its original purpose and redirect that. So we're continuously looking at that, and we'd be coming back to the board with any recommendations.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I appreciate you asking the question. I just want to add a little nuance to what Amanda's just said, and that is relative to at least to some of the district outstanding district ARPA funds. There have, there's also kind of the state of limbo right now where projects haven't been identified. Finance is ensuring that there's a way that the recipient organizations can manage the cash flow. And so it's not that projects or programs haven't been identified, at least speaking for myself in District 1, it's the fact that we're in the process of just ensuring that there's enough capacity to be able to receive those funds and abide by all the federal guidance, so.
Yeah, that's accurate. Thanks for the clarification. Okay, so now looking at appropriations in the general fund, this chart shows the breakdown of the $3.9 billion in appropriations by expenditure type, with the salaries and benefits accounting for roughly half, services and supplies at 15%, other charges, which includes provider payments and aid payments at 34%, 6% for intra and intra fund charges, so those transfers that I was talking about earlier, and then the general fund contingency at less than 1% of total appropriations. Some of the factors driving general fund base appropriations, which are the budget year cost of current service levels, so this is before we start talking about growth, some of those factors include changes in salary and benefits costs resulting from recently negotiated labor agreements. So that includes a 4% cost of living adjustment and other negotiated increases. And then we're also seeing inflationary impacts on the costs of services and supplies, including things like fuel costs and provider rates. There's an increase in aid payments for CalWorks caseloads, that's due to an extension of the CalWorks time limit for aid, and that increase in appropriations is offset by an increase in related revenue in the department. Base appropriations also show a reduction relative to 2022-23 due to one-time amounts budgeted in 2022-23, such as the $20 million contribution from general fund to the roads fund that are not included in this current recommended budget. The categorical reductions, not backfilled, that I mentioned earlier, also result in a decrease in appropriations. And then we are recommending a $14 million decrease in the general fund contingency to reflect the fact that uncertainty is accounted for in the contingency during 22-23, including the potential impacts of negotiated labor agreements. Those are now reflected in the base budget in 2023-24. Recommended new or enhanced programs or services, so also referred to as growth, result in additional appropriations above and beyond those included in the base budget. Overall, across all funds, a total of $285 million of departmental growth requests were submitted for the fiscal year 2023-24 budget. The recommended budget includes $138 million for recommended general fund growth, with $25 million of that funded with net county cost and including almost 180 new positions. In addition, a similar approach was taken this year to the approach taken in the last two years, where we're recommending that another $29 million in general fund growth be prioritized for inclusion in the revised recommended budget in September should sufficient additional resources be available. And non-general fund growth represents an additional $55 million in total appropriations, including 89 additional full-time equivalent positions. This slide lists some of the most significant general fund growth, and then the presentations that will follow later this morning will provide additional detail about many of these items. So as described earlier, you'll see that the recommended growth aligns with the board's budget priorities and the community's identified needs. The budget includes $35 million total with $7 million of net county cost growth to address the county's obligations under the May's consent decree by supporting programs intended to reduce jail, the jail population. As Deputy County Executive Jones and Katari will cover, this growth includes new programs and funding across several county departments. Additionally, $10 million of net county cost growth is recommended in the sheriff and correctional health budgets to meet the requirements of the May's consent decree remedial plan, and this growth will also be covered in the later presentation. $10 million total with $2 million net county cost is recommended for new or enhanced programs addressing homelessness, again, across many county departments. Emily Halcon, Director of Homeless Services and Housing, will be providing more information on the budget for that department and the county's overall spending related to homelessness. In the health services budget unit, more than $84 million of funded growth is recommended, including amounts related to the May's consent decree and addressing homelessness. Tim Lutz, Director of Health Services, will be providing more detail about the health services budget. And in child, family, and adult services, $17 million of growth, 3 million of which is net county cost, is recommended to support several programs and service enhancements, including $2 million to provide additional funding for child protective services, welcome, and assessment center contracted services. As mentioned earlier, we're recommending that additional growth beyond what is included in the recommended budget be prioritized for inclusion in the revised recommended budget in September should additional resources be available. I won't go over each of these in detail, but you can see that the total net county cost is $29 million, with the largest amount being $20 million requested by the Department of Transportation for general fund funding of payment maintenance and rehabilitation for county roads.
Amanda, can I, can I just ask you a question?
Sure.
I leaned over to Supervisor Serna because I don't remember us seeing this, at least I've only, this is only my third time going through this, but I don't remember seeing it last year where we kind of identify an amount conditioned on revenues, you know, in September. And everything I hear from the state level, I mean, it does not bode well for this, these $29 million in new growth that we've identified. What are the, kind of the assumptions, I guess, you're making in terms of where the state budget may land that would influence whether or not we could fund any of these other priority growth areas?
Yeah, so a couple of things, specifically with regard to the state and state funding, I will point out that we, towards the middle of this table, there's an amount here for probation to expand the Valley Oak Youth Academy program, and that is, that's for the juvenile justice realignment. And there's some of that, some of that expansion is already funded in the June budget with the state allocation for that realignment. However, there may be additional funding available from the state that would be able to fund this amount that's identified here. So if that funding does materialize, it is, it is available, then we would not need to use discretionary resources, otherwise we would. So I think, I think in terms, in terms of your general question, though, probably the thing that we have our eye on closer than the state budget is where is the general fund fund balance going to end up when all is said and done, so we're estimating $110 million right now. I will tell you that typically those estimates tend to be conservative, and so it is, it is possible that we will end up with a higher general fund fund balance, which would provide some additional one-time funding for things like roads and other construction projects and things listed here. There are other changes that will happen as we go into the September budget, we'll take a closer look at our discretionary revenues, you know, there will be rebudgeting and other things that happen within department budgets. So, so those aren't the only changes, but I would say, you know, one of the big changes between June and September tends to be what that ending fund balance ends up at.
Okay. I appreciate the clarification, and I know last year is not really an accurate indicator, obviously, of where we're going to be this year in September. But what was the difference in our general fund balance between June and September last year, for instance?
That is a great question. I'm gonna have to get back to you on that.
Okay.
Because if I, if I guess, I will be wrong.
But I appreciate you for the clarification.
Here's what I will say, we were able to, both, each of the last two years, we were, and maybe this is a more telling indicator for you, each of the last two years, we were able to fund the, the growth that had been prioritized for September. I think we're less likely to be able to do so this year just because of, you know, all of the factors that I mentioned in terms of, you know, expenditures being lower than budget and revenues being higher for budget, I think those are less true in this current fiscal year than they have been in the prior two, which is, you know, which is why I think maybe a better indicator is, you know, the ability to have funded the things that were recommended.
Okay, thank you.
So as I mentioned at the beginning, we are recommending an increase to general reserves that would bring the, the balance to the board's policy target of 10% of discretionary revenues. Additionally, we have certain reserve releases which are largely to fund expenditures for which the reserves were established. So those, those, that's, those are reserves, reserve decreases or cancellations. That includes $14.8 million from the property tax system reserve, so that's funding expenditures associated with implementation of the property tax system. $775 million, or $775,000 from the Black Child Legacy Reserve, and that's funding expenditures for that program in the budget. $500,000 from the senior programs reserve, again, funding-related expenditures, and then we have a cancellation of the Health for All Loan Reserve, which is no longer needed for its intended purpose. With the recommended changes, total discretionary.
Excuse me, Amanda, let me, Supervisor Serna has a comment on this.
Sorry to interrupt you, Amanda. I just wanted to point out that the $775,000 identified here for the Black Child Legacy Reserve, this, as my colleagues may recall, is an appropriation that I worked hard, doing a little bit of battle with staff two budget cycles ago to make sure that this, you know, critical program is funded. We did something unusual at that time, and that was to budget for three years this appropriation. So my understanding, this is now the third year.
Correct.
Of that, and just a preview of coming attractions, you can bet your bottom dollar that I'll be making that same request next year. So no one should be surprised that, that one of our most successful initiatives, multi-year initiatives, that is bearing a lot of fruit in terms of save lives, is something that, again, I think is well worth fighting for if necessary. But again, I'm glad to see that this is identified here in this third year. But next year, I look forward to that conversation again to see that we can secure the funding that's necessary to continue.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Serna, and I couldn't agree more. Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. Since we are paused, I'll take this opportunity to just ask, the $500,000 in the senior programs reserve that's being released, what is that going to fund?
So that is funding, I believe it's an age-friendly communities initiative, this was a, this was actually a reserve that was recommended and approved at budget hearings recommended by your predecessor. So the Department of Child, Family, and Adult Services has developed a program to, to use this funding, and I believe that that's something that has already come to the board for approval, but I can check on the details of that. Is that correct?
So that would be a one-time expenditure, then?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I think we were at the, the last. So I think we were at the, the last bullet here. So with the recommended changes, total discretionary reserves would stand at $288 million. And so there, there are actually a couple of ways to put this number in context. The first is that the number represents about 8% of total general fund revenues and reimbursements. And the best practice recommendation of the Government Finance Officers Association is for a minimum of, of two months, or the equivalent of about 17% of annual revenues. So you can see that we're well below the recommended level. And then another way to put that, that $288 million number in context is to look at what actually happened to the county's tax revenues during the last recession. So you can see on this chart that it took nearly 10 years for tax revenues to return to pre-recession levels, and the cumulative revenue loss during that time period would have required reserves of approximately $600 million just to maintain funding at the 2008 level. And keep in mind that in today's dollars, right, that number would be even greater. And I think the other thing to note on this chart is that it doesn't take into consideration semi-discretionary revenues or other revenue sources that could be subject to the same sorts of impacts during economic downturns. So if these numbers were factored in, of course, the number would be even larger. So with this in mind, as well as the GFOA recommended best practice, we do intend to bring a new reserve policy to the board for consideration in conjunction with the September budget.
Mr. Chair? Sorry, sorry to interrupt. Just in terms of this chart, which I think it's very, obviously very telling, but one other annotation that I think would make it even more so would be that that shaded area, correct me if I'm wrong, represents about 3,500 positions that were shed during that time.
I, I, that, that sounds accurate to me, so, yes, obviously that's-
For the newer members of the board, because I came on this board at the tail end of the recession, and we were still in the process of making some painful cuts, but the fact that we didn't have the 600 million reserve, had, we had to make some changes somewhere. And some of those really painful changes to balance the budget came in the form of positions evaporating, so.
Correct. Yeah. And that's absolutely what we're trying to avoid by building reserves, right, and being able to maintain service levels. Okay, so transitioning from looking at the past to looking at the future, the next couple of slides show a multi-year sensitivity analysis for the general fund, and this is based on assumptions about future costs and revenues, and really is just meant to illustrate what might happen under those assumptions, and understanding that decisions made in this year's budget will have an impact on future years. So this chart shows the difference between projected discretionary revenues and projected net county cost through fiscal year 2031, '32, which is the full, first full fiscal year after the county's pension obligation bonds are scheduled to be paid off. So each of the three lines here represent different revenue growth scenarios, ranging from 3% at the low end to 6% at the high-end annual revenue growth. It's important to note that none of these scenarios try to, tries to predict or factor in a recession. So where the lines here are below zero indicates that net county cost is projected to exceed revenues, based on the assumptions used in that scenario, meaning that we would be spending more than we're taking in and using fund balance to pay for current year expenditures, as has been the case in prior years, in prior year budgets, and then also, again, in this recommended budget. So you can see on this chart that the line is at or below zero in the baseline scenario for most of the year shown, and then for the conservative scenario, that red line, net county cost is projected to exceed discretionary revenue in every year. And then this chart shows in the, in the baseline and conservative scenarios where we will be spending more than annual revenues coming in, that the fund balance, so this is showing us the actual fund balance, that that would decline in the near term, right, as we're spending it, it goes down, as it, so it's, as it's used to pay for expenditures. And then how much that fund balance declines really depends on when expenditures come into alignment with revenues. So in the optimistic scenario, you can see that fund balance is built up as annual revenues exceed expenditures. So while the actual results will almost certainly be different than any of the scenarios that are shown here, and there are many things, of course, that are outside of the county's control, including future revenue growth, the important point here is that one thing we can control is limit future net county cost growth to not spend more than revenues each year. So this would not only help ensure the sustainability of budgeted service levels into the future by aligning ongoing costs with ongoing revenues, it would also preserve unrestricted fund balance as an available resource to lessen the need for service reductions during any future economic downturn. And so that's really why it's so important that we continue to prioritize the use of general fund resources, work towards bringing the budget into structural balance, and continue to build reserves. Okay, so in addition to the recommended budget, we are also recommending approval of the five-year capital improvement plan totaling $3.4 billion in project costs across the five years, with $536 million in fiscal year 2023, '24. The CIP includes projects in the departments that are listed on this slide, and those projects are funded with revenue in those departments. And all of the projects, with a few minor exceptions that are noted in the board letter, have previously been reviewed by the board. In April, the board referred new and newly funded projects to the Planning Commission, and these projects were reviewed by the Planning Commission on May 22nd, with no findings of inconsistency with the general plan. And funding for the fiscal year '23, '24 projects is included in the relevant department's recommended budget. I'll just mention that Colin Bettis, as well as departmental representatives, are here to answer any questions you might have on the capital improvement plan. And with that, the, the recommended actions for both the recommended budget and the capital improvement plan are shown here. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any additional questions.
Okay. Thank you, Amanda. No questions from, oh, Supervisor Serna?
No, it's not a question, Mr. Chair, and I, I didn't know whether or not you were going to offer any kind of preamble to our deliberations, but I just feel the need to say it out loud again, as someone does from the dais every year. And in my conversations with Supervisor Hume, as we got settled here at the dais this morning, you know, he reminded me about former Supervisor Natoli's passion when it came to budget, and it does feel a bit like we're flying without a net this time. I will just say that, and if he's watching, I, I, I know that he can, he can appreciate that. But, you know, we have two opportunities each year to really put, you know, our, not just our mouth, but our intent as local policymakers and local elected representatives to place resources where we place our values here in Sacramento County. And the other being, of course, final budget deliberations in September. And with all due respect to an excellent staff, everyone from Ann Edwards down through the department heads, and our elected, fellow elected representatives, our sheriff and our DA and our assessor, this is our budget. This is the five of ours. It reflects the decision that we'll make today, hopefully, about the recommendation that comes from staff, and staff does an amazing job every single year putting forth a very thoughtful set of recommendations. But ultimately, when we are approached in our communities about what we did and did not do, what we funded, what we did not fund, or how we funded it, the buck stops with us, doesn't, doesn't stop with staff. And I'm well aware that our staff understand our distinct roles in that regard. But I think it does warrant some reminder at this point to ensure that the public knows that we understand our role, and because it is the budget of the Board of Supervisors, I think it's incumbent upon us to really think carefully about how we take the recommendation and possibly augment it. And I've seen in years past where this board has done quite a bit of tailoring after the fact, after receiving the recommendations. I've seen other years where some of the changes have been relatively minor. But that's kind of the beauty of this process, is that we get a very, I think, again, very thoughtful base set of recommendations with which to work. But, you know, it's the five of us that hear on a daily, if not hourly, basis what the needs are in our community from our constituents. And so I would hate for us to waste this opportunity by not giving some thought and speaking our, our minds about how we best match our values to the appropriation of resources at this point in time. So, again, I didn't want to step on your toes, Mr. Chair, in terms of kind of setting the table for our deliberations, but I just wanted to make sure it was said by some.
No, I appreciate that, and certainly as the new dean of the board, I think it's more than appropriate that you, that you did. So, no, and I, and that's the tension, and it's true, it's the tension we all face out in our communities, the, the needs and the needs of the constituents, the needs kind of at the grassroots level of our constituents. And, and I know we're all very cognizant up here of certainly the, the great work of staff. We have an amazing staff in the county. I'm so proud of county staff and everybody here, certainly in this room. But the tension that we all face with knowing we need to preserve a reserve, have a very healthy reserve, because these, these times we've been facing are not always going to be there. But it's also kind of coupled with, well, if we have an opportunity to do something to meet a need for our constituents, how do we, how do we balance that need to have a healthy reserve with meeting a need that's there right now? And so obviously, that's, that will be, I'm sure, will be part of our deliberations later today. The one thing I did want to ask you, Amanda, is, you know, you articulated priorities that the board set, homelessness and, and roads, which I think are completely appropriate, certainly in District III. But there's really, there is, other than the priority set for September in terms of roadways, is there anything else in, in this preliminary budget that we have identified for that priority?
So in terms of discretionary funding in the general fund, no.
Okay.
However, you know, obviously, there, there are ongoing funding needs being met within the Department of Transportation-
Of course.
-using their dedicated funding sources.
Right, okay. Our county exec has a comment before we move on.
Yes, thank you. And Supervisor Serna, thank you for bringing that up. I want to be really clear that we, as your executive team, fully understand that it is our responsibility to make what we think is our best recommendation, and that it is up to you to decide, and we absolutely implement whatever you decide.
Thanks, Anne. Thank you, Anne. Okay, then we'll turn to our first, and Amanda, obviously, you're not going anywhere for quite a while. We'll turn to our first presentation from our sheriff, Sheriff, Sheriff Cooper.
And I'll just say, before the sheriff starts, that, Amanda, I see that lugging that binder around your biceps are really looking swollen, so.
Good morning, Sheriff.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members. Good to see you all, and thank you for this arduous task. It's never fun going over your yearly budget. What I want to do is highlight the hurdles in the first six months, actually going in seven months of, my term is sheriff. I've done many things to try and provide a better level of service to the county residents, and with homelessness, the May's consent decree, we've got a myriad of issues that we deal with on a regular basis, but for the minimum that worked for me, they're doing a stand-up job. First of all is, I want to highlight patrol restructure. So our staffing levels are an important part of it. Think of our department staffing levels from the recession compared till now, we've had a- One slide ahead. The first slide or second slide? Yeah, that's right. That's first slide, okay. Let's make sure I'm on the right slide, on the right slide. If you look at it, since the recession compared till now, we've had a 14 increase in the county population, and an 8% decrease in the number of sworn employees and non-sworn employees has gone up, and the reason due to May's consent decree, obviously, putting those records officers in the jail to be in the control booth versus the deputies on the floor. So some of the things we've done is with our patrol restructuring to address calls for service. So in that, what we did, we were on team policing, the team policing concept before, and we changed that. So now we've basically filling more officers, the same amount of people, on more shifts and spreading it together. Some of the hurdles have been hiring. We're down 100 non-sworn positions and about 100 civilian positions, 100 sworn, 100 non-sworn, and it's really tough, you're competing with everybody. CHP's down 1,000 statewide. There are some Bay Area police departments that are offering $90,000 signing bonuses, $90,000 for lateral hire. We, we can't compete with that, nor are we going to try to compete with that. We're trying to come here, it's important. A lot of departments have gone to beards, allowing beards is a motivational thing, or showing your tattoos. At the end of the day, it really should come down to wages, benefits, and working conditions. Also, on our calls for service, we've changed that model. There's some calls that we're not going to now, what the majority of departments in the region haven't responded to for many, many years, so we've changed that. I can point to one call, a noise complaint, someone playing loud music. Well, we have no problem with responding to that. It's not breaking the law till after 10:00 PM, and if you want something done, you need to sign a citizen's arrest form. Otherwise, if you're not willing to do that, it really doesn't help us. If we want to help the neighbors out there, the citizens out there, resolve some of these things. We've got a lot of incomplete phone calls because of cellular phones, and before, we responded to every single call, and the majority of those calls, the vast majority, were just hangups, missed dials on that. So we stopped responding to that unless there's more information on there. So it's really changed that. It's given the officers more time to be proactive, to deal with the homeless issues, and just quality of life issues. So that's, that's been a, a big one.
Sheriff, can I, for a second, Supervisor Serna has a comment or question?
Thank you, Sheriff, for being here. Appreciate the sharing of data here. This is very telling. You mentioned the signing bonuses in the Bay Area as being a, a competing factor for growing the force, or keeping the force at least where you need it. What do we know in our region about any trends where you have other sister law enforcement agencies that are the ones that are, I guess, most attractive to some who might go through their training here with SAC Sheriff's Department, become deputies, but maybe after five years or retirement, doing the, you know, the time in jail service? Is it Placer County? Is it Roseville PD? Is it SAC PD? Is it, do we, do we know what agencies are competing regionally the most, or just kind of general anecdotal information about it?
Sure, some have a better benefit package. Obviously, you don't have to work the jail. It just really depends on what they're looking for with that. Obviously, the cities are flush with money, they're able to raise taxes, and the city's more so than the county is, and get those things. El Grove just got a half-cent sales tax, or whatever it was, and a lot of that money on initiative came to the police department. So there are a lot of things that are attractive, but we do pretty good in our own. It's just a tough job market for everybody, including the county, not just law enforcement, that are trying to hire folks. So it's been going on for quite some time, so it's, it's just being competitive out there, and I think at the end of the day, we do have a good product. I've taken it upon myself to go out to recruiting events, so when we hold events where you test for the pellet B, they do the physical agility, I actually go out there and tell them, hey, if you pass the written test, you pass the physical agility, and you pass the, the background, I'm going to hire you and put you in a position. So I'm encouraging folks to get out there. We've got a SPARTA event this weekend that prepares folks to go through the process, so we're doing as much as we can with staff. So I've got all hands on deck to make sure we let people know this is a, a, a good job, a respectable job, and we'd love to hire them. But it's just tough in today's market, especially with these young kids that don't want to be in there. The jail's tough right now. I've probably been there about 25 times at the main jail since I've been sheriff. I have a lot of young kids, what are they on? They're on their phone every day, they don't want to walk around, they'd rather talk to you via text than to deal with people, and that's some of the issues we deal with. Telling the deputies, hey, get out of the control booth, walk around the floors, and interact with that. So I think we're seeing it everywhere, and it's just part of society, and it's something we have to overcome. Now, I will say, we had no recruiters up until now, SAC PD had six, so we took two recruiters out of Hyde and moved them over into recruiting, so that's helping somewhat, too. But you got to be out there pounding the pavement and turning every stone. I was met with the Urban League yesterday, and we're going to do some working with them in team building to get some folks to apply. So I've reached out to our community groups to see, and asked for their help and assistance. It's really, it involves the community, we want to be reflective of our community. So that's- So, that's why we're doing that.
Thank you. Can I, can I just follow up, too? On the sheriff, on sworn employees, how many, the sheriff, obviously, for members of the public, it's, has a unique role in terms of its custody role. It serves the entire county, including everybody in the cities. And in terms of its role in the unincorporated areas, on patrol, it's a much different relationship, certainly. How many of those sworn employees are on the custody side, and how many out in the field and unincorporated parts of the county? Do you have a...
About 250 patrol deputies, about 400 jail deputies. So, obviously, more in corrections. Obviously, we're getting some more bodies under the May's consent decree. So, a lot of our positions go to corrections.
Okay, so that's out of 1,392 total sworn.
Correct. And patrol staffing is not mandated, where staffing in the jail is.
Okay, okay. And how do you, I mean, in terms of like the CHP, obviously, that when it's fully staffed, there are a lot more CHP officers out there, working with the sheriff's deputies in the unincorporated areas. How does that impact your, you know, field deployment when you see CHP numbers going down so much?
It is a significant impact. Right now, there are more CHP officers at the Capitol than there are patrolling the streets of Sacramento, and that's a problem. A lot of complaints in the county, the supervisors know, people complain about traffic. We've seen speeders in the freeway, we've seen the sideshows going on throughout the county, and they still have the resources to do it. So, it's something that needs to be addressed, and how we figure that out. We've got a good relationship with the CHP, but at the end of the day, they're tasked with guarding the Capitol first versus having troops out on the streets.
Yeah.
It is a big issue with that.
And I appreciate that, yeah. Someone, obviously, I love the CHP as well, but the reality is, is that the unincorporated roadways are not their number-one priority. And so I think what the sheriff's departments throughout the state in urbanized, unincorporated areas end up kind of picking up the slack, so, okay, thank you.
Sure. Obviously, some of our hurdles are the May's consent decree. When I first came in, I met with county council and told them, what do we need to do? What aren't we doing right? And part of that was ATMs, we worked on that, and some other things. And we really listened to them, and I met with a BOC, and asked them, what can we do to help us get through this? Human trafficking is a big deal in the county, especially in the north area, in the south area of Sacramento. It is rampant. In 2016, the state legislature decriminalized childhood prostitution. So, if you're a minor, prostitution is not illegal. And then a bill took effect last year is that if you're lording for the purposes of prostitution, that is not a crime. So, you go down there, you go into certain areas of South Sacramento, and you'll see 20, 30 individuals wearing just a bra and panties. Doesn't matter if it's 110 degrees out, or if it's 32 degrees out, they're wearing the same outfits, they've got umbrellas, and the trade is there, just over and over again. It impacts businesses, folks and families going into our grocery stores, our shopping centers, or being accosted with that. It's rampant, it's a big issue with that. We recovered, in our operations in the past two months, three minors, two 16-year-olds and a 13-year-old. One of them was from Phoenix. She'd been trafficked from Phoenix here to Sacramento. So, while it's not a crime, there's not much we can do. So, what we did, we contacted that young girl's parents who live in Roseville, got her back to them, and she subsequently ran away, and is now posting ads back online again, explicit ads, and she's 16. So, the parents got ahold of us, the parents filed a missing persons report. That allowed us to go get her. So, think about that. She can go out and be pimped in traffic, and she's being trafficked by a trafficker, because we can't say pimp, because that's not good in the law, so you've got to say trafficker. But they're really pimps. And we went down and got her in the Bay Area, rescued her last week, but bought her back. The only reason, because of that missing persons report. So, if those young girls are out there, if it's past 10, we can contact them, because we have a curfew ordinance here in Sacramento County. Otherwise, we can't contact them at all. It's a vicious cycle, and it's hard to break for these young girls, because with the traffickers, it's through force and fear, they beat them, they ply them with drugs, and obviously, they tell them they love them. So, there's so much where it's really a mind game, and it's hard to break away. And even when you rescue them and get them in a safe place, they still revert back to that. And those girls are out there from 10:00 AM in the morning till 4:00 AM in the morning. It is insane what goes on with that. So, that is a big deal, it's a quality of life issue with that, especially in some of those neighborhoods, you get peoples whose wives and daughters are being accosted and solicited for acts of prostitution. And then the homeless, we've done quite a bit on the homeless, it's important. You know, the state spent $20 billion. I was chair of Budget Support when we rolled out Operation Home Key, Operation Room Key. We've done a lot to do that. And the tough part is, that's important, they want to build it, and the hard part is, we can't build our way out of it. We've got to address mental illness, that is so important. The governor's trying that through Care Court right now, he's getting a lot of blowback. And that's sad, because there's folks here that would rather have them out, walking around, unclothed, and eating out of a trash can than be a really responsible adult and take care of that individual. And then drug issues. In the last, and I'll go into it later on, we've got record seizures of drugs. It is hard to get off drugs, especially methamphetamine. The fentanyl issue is a big deal right now amongst people. So, all those battles, so a lot's rolling around, going on. So, it's tough, and we're actually doing more with less. Next slide. Our staffing levels have gone down, so you look at sexual assault and elder abuse. Back in '08, we had 12 detectives, now we have seven. So, a lot of these cases, we aren't investigating, so a lot of misdemeanor cases, we don't have time to investigate. So, especially for child abuse, on a misdemeanor child abuse charge, a lot of folks are hands-on. And really, those cases result in felony cases. Once you delve into it and dig into it, but we don't have the resources to address that. So, we're talking sexual battery crimes and peddle crimes, and assaults are generally up 30% this year. As far as our high-tech detectives, we've seen a 50% drop in the number of detectives with that. So, we get a lot of tips on the internet from the companies that are required to give us that. And you think about this, a photograph of child pornography, a video of child pornography, it's like a fingerprinted JPG. So, we know if someone's downloading child pornography. We get thousands of tips in every day. We can't respond to all those tips. And we, and most of those folks now, we're seeing, if you're engaged in child pornography and trading it, you're more than likely involved in hands-on activity. So, a lot of folks now, and think about before the internet, there was no place to get these things. The internet is rife with child pornography. People are trading back and forth, hey, I'll send you a video of you molesting someone. If you send me a video of someone molesting someone, or my daughter, those type of things go on. And the number of cases, we just can't do, because we don't have the bodies, and it's been cut by half. You know, we talk about child abuse, I told you about that, misdemeanor crimes, child annoyance, those are the type of things that lead to bigger things, and it's tough, because we can't do that. You think about narcotics, we've had a 65% drop in major and street narcotics. We don't have the street narcotics unit anymore that protects our socially-economic-challenged neighborhoods. Methamphetamines on the rise. In the last three weeks, we've seized 1,800 pounds of methamphetamine. Last night, we had, we got 200 pounds of methamphetamine last night, destined for Sacramento, the streets of Sacramento. We hear a lot about fentanyl, for the most part, people have kind of forgotten about methamphetamine, it's kind of out of sight, out of mind. It is still going on, it's a very dangerous drug, we see that in a lot of our homeless individuals, and it's hard to get off of. And I spent 10 years in narcotics, and people would do anything for drugs. A lot of your crimes are drug-related, a lot of your theft, a lot of your robberies, a lot of, I'll say, sexual assaults, because it's lifestyle. If you live in a crazy lifestyle, and you're not watching your kids or taking care of them, who's around your kids? It's that lifestyle, and it's hard to get off of drugs if you've got money and a job. But if you're homeless, you're screwed, there's no place to go. And, you know, one thing, when we had Drug Court, the judges could put somebody and force somebody into Drug Court, and really make a difference with the DA, and really change that person's life. Hey, to get straight, we're going to expunge your record and take care of you. There's nothing right now. Only folks that go to Drug Court is if someone wants their record expunged, they go to Drug Court. Otherwise, there's no reason. You have to have the carrot and the stick. But it's just horrific what we do. But, like I said, there are folks that want help. But until we resolve the issues of mental illness, working with that, and Care Court's a start, that's not the final answer, and some type of drug prevention, and really dealing and addressing it, it's not going to change with that. It's getting worse and worse every day, as we see. Fentanyl, thousands of deaths, nothing has changed. It goes on and on and on, legislature is ineffective, they're not passing any bills of significance, it's not going to happen that way, and we continue to deal with it. And what's scary now, we're seeing fentanyl, putting a lot of other drugs, including marijuana, methamphetamine, they're cutting it with everything. So, if you're a drug user, you never have any idea what you're going to get. And the answer for us is, we just do more fentanyl. We recently had two overdoses at the main jail, and they had to hit them with eight doses of Narcan, eight doses, because people have built up a tolerance to that fentanyl, and, you know, you've got to hit them again, and again, and again. And it is a big issue. So, we're passing out more and more Narcan, and that really is abandoned, it doesn't address the issue of how we try and get these folks off of drugs somehow. And I'm not, you know, advocating to put people in prison and lock them up, but there has to be some way through forced treatment, and that's through Drug Court and things like that.
Excuse me, Sheriff, Supervisor Hume?
Yeah, first of all, thank you, Sheriff, for coming out and calling attention to these issues. I mean, obviously, it's uncomfortable to hear this stuff, but it's important to make sure that we're aware of it. And I know that we're going to be hearing from the district attorney in a little bit here. And you may address this later, but you're kind of touching on it now. So, I just wanted to ask, relative to Drug Court, alternative sentencing, diversion, are these legislative issues and/or, you know, was some of this undone with Prop 47 and 57? And what's the future look like? How can we start to claw some of these tools back?
You're right, Supervisor Hume. It was done through the legislature. We, here in this room, unfortunately, have no control over it. We just suffer the consequences of what's going on with that, and that's really the big issue, how we deal with that. And it's interesting, on our homeless operations, to help those folks, a lot of them don't want help, like I said, because they can't make a rational decision for themselves, or just with the drugs, things like that. So, that's the hard part, what do we do with that? And, you know, we're offering tiny homes, we offer services to them, and a lot don't take it. So, we've got to change the narrative with that. And it impacts the community. We've gotten a lot of responses from folks that are concerned about it, and so far, it's working pretty good. You know, it's not the answer, law enforcement is not the single answer, but we've got to work with other folks, and we're trying to do that, and just trying to resolve it. But it's frustrating, to be honest, completely frustrating. Obviously, our air fleet, it's old, I'll talk about it later on, it makes it difficult to fight these crimes because we do that. Next slide. Obviously, we've got our Public Records Act team, that was TDY from other divisions, so we took it out of Hyde with that. In January, I told you earlier, we had zero recruiters, now we have two. On the homeless operations, we rely on outside bureaus, it's all hands on deck, so we draw from all other areas, and just, we take it out of Hyde to deal with that. The new courthouse is going to open next year, September of next year. I need 30 new deputies to staff that. And per the May's consent decree, 10 more deputies pending approval by this board. Next slide. Calls for service, and this is a big one, calls for service have increased dramatically. In 2022, compared to 2011, a 44% increase in 911 phone calls. And then all calls for service increased 31%. And we're having a hard time hiring dispatchers and call-takers, because it's a competitive market. You know, and the thing is, when you're dispatcher or call-taker, you're working shift work. And a lot of folks want to work Monday through Friday, nine-to-five, weekends and holidays off, and the same thing in law enforcement. So, it's just, it's tough, because there's so many jobs out there, and some places offer, you can telecommute. So, it's just a constant battle, day in and day out. Next slide. So, the equipment needs, right now, we only have two helicopters available. Our helicopters are old EC-120s, those are legacy helicopters, they don't make them anymore, so you can't get parts for your helicopter. It's tough, those are great first responders. You talk about use of force, having a helicopter on scene, they can direct officers and let them know what's going on. It's a regional asset, so we get a lot of use out of it, and when they're up, they're up. SAC PD has air assets, CHP, but we do a lot. Quite often, they get to the scene first, they can direct individuals in, so we've got to do something. Our oldest helicopter is 23 years old. That's old. Their technology is old. Our Hueys, we use for rescue and SWAT, they're from 1966, they're Vietnam-era models that require a lot of maintenance. So, at some point, we're going to have to transition and get new ships, and they're very costly. So, we're trying to figure that out. Next slide. Airplanes, we've got 1980 Cessna 206 and an 81210 for human trafficking. So, these traffickers, we've had to follow traffickers down to Stockton and down to Central Valley, when they're taking these young teenage girls. You need a reliable airplane to do surveillance. Otherwise, an airplane is a force multiplier versus having 10 officers in cars trail somebody. You can put an airplane up on a human trafficker, and that can make a difference. So, we're trying to get those planes and replace those assets, but in a plane like those are very old, there's much newer technology to make it much easier to fly and get up there, when you're up there for hours. And we're really focusing those planes on the human trafficking aspect, trying to rescue these victims, rescuing these girls. And what's interesting is, everyone wants the golden goose. The golden goose is the trafficker. So, FBI has a task force here in Sacramento, Homeland Security does, SAC PD does, we do. You don't get a lot of traffickers. The way you get the traffickers is through the girls, is how you get the traffickers, plain and simple, that's how it happens. Otherwise, which way do you get a trafficker? And you have a lot of folks that, hey, they're victims, they are victims 100%, but sometimes they're hostile witnesses because of that impact or that force that trafficker has over them to try to get them to cooperate, they don't want to, whether through fear or just brainwashing. So, it's tough sometimes. So, sometimes you need to get that girl to get the information, and then expunge the record. But some of the thought has been with just solely victim, nothing else, where hands-off, that's exacerbated the problem since 2016. It has made it 1,000 times worse. You can go out to areas of Sacramento, where it's just, you go out there, it's unbelievable. I went out there myself, and I couldn't believe how busy it was and the number of folks out there. So, those planes are invaluable when it comes to human trafficking. We've actually used Homeland Security and used their air assets when ours were down. So, it's an important tool to have. Next slide. Equipment needs. On the body-warn cameras. It's still not, and was never fully funded. We still need some folks that don't have body-warn cameras that we need to get to make sure. But as far as where most of our issues come up in field services, patrol, and corrections, we do have them. So, obviously, funding would help. A large portion of the funding is for storage and redaction, and the redaction unit, which we use, and we get PRAs every day for body camera footage, and it is very intensive. On a big incident, you may have 10 officers there, you've got body cameras, in-car cameras to go and redact that. So, it takes time, and it's a very lengthy process to get it done. So, it's very tough. Mobile command bus, El Grove has a bus, Folsom, pretty much every department has a mobile command bus. If you're on scene and you're out somewhere, and you have a tactical situation, whether it's a barricaded subject or something going on, you need a command bus. We don't have a command bus right now, especially in inclement weather, when it's hot, when it's cold outside, to bring that tactical commander in, the operations commander, to figure out what they're doing, you need a command bus. We need more less-than-lethal, so that's important. We don't want to take anybody's life. So, since I've been in, I've stressed time and time again how important it is in your training. So, we just spent out of Hyde 1.7 million for brand-new tasers, only for patrol. That's where the liability is. So, we want to make sure those officers have the tools to deal with if they have to, use less-than-lethal force. We want it to be effective, less-than-lethal force, to replace those tasers. Drones, drones are a game changer. They're everywhere. Someone called for a drone last night, I heard on the radio, and we had several instances over the years, many, many instances. over the years, many, many instances. I had one individual in a car. They were going to approach the car. They sent the drone up to the front window. He had a gun on the car seat. That changed the operation. We said barricaded subject. We broke out a window. We fly the drone in the house to see where he is. We've used the drones over and over and over again. And the drones are important because for me, it's a less than lethal. You get your idea. It saves lives. It saves the public's life. It saves my officers' lives. And drones are critical. And we're fighting a bill in the legislature right now. They want to ban Chinese made drones. I don't care if China looks at our video on our drones, but the American drone specked out is about three times higher. So you're talking several hundred thousand dollars for American drone versus less than a hundred thousand dollars for a Chinese drone. So it's a very busy business. So we're fighting that, we're opposing that. I think the county is too maybe. So hopefully we get some leverage out of that. But drones, drones are a game changer and we're going to see them more, used more and more. El Grove PD is going to have a first responder drone that will launch and fly autonomously to incidents and give them updates before the officers even arrive. So that way we hopefully will lessen the encounter of having to use lethal force at some point. So I'm excited about the drones. Next slide. Infrastructure, property warehouse. Our property warehouse is full to the brim. It's old. We need a new property warehouse. Training academy, we've been out on River Walkway, the old sewage treatment plant. There's not room, there's not room to expand. We're in a lot of not mobile homes. What are they?
Temporary classrooms.
Yeah, temporary classrooms. But mobile homes, I call them anyways, some of the mobile homes. It's really not conducive. You've got to have a training academy, not just for training new recruits, but for in-service. So we send training out every day to train our officers for in-training, to make sure they have the best training that's available. And then corrections. We know the consent decree, there's so much going on in corrections right now. And you think about it, really the main jail should be all pre-trial inmates, the branch sentenced inmates. Right now the combo is about 83% pre-trial inmates because the courts are so far behind. And we also need a new downlink system. During the floods, we went up and the downlink, because it's so old, it failed. And what we want to do is work with the county emergency operations center to be able to downlink from our helicopters and send them live video, real time with that. And that would be available on the planes and the helicopters. So we would love to do that. Next slide. So basically we're doing more with less. We're just trying to change it. I realize what's going on with the county. There's not a lot of money. That's why we're not asking for a lot of money. Probably my biggest fear right now is the May's consent decree and jail medical. You know, we've talked about it at length. That is a big issue. I can control what I can control, but when you have inmates out, when I've got, for every inmate that goes out on a medical, for medical reason, I send two deputies. There are days that I have 24 deputies out of the main jail. 24 deputies. I can't do pill call. I can't respond to kites and get back to the inmate. I can't get rec time. And that impacts us. And what scares me is if we come under receivership, it screws the whole county. We have no choice. You have a judge telling us, you guys and me, what we will or will not do. And that's going to cost, cost is not an issue. It's going to cost a lot of money. So jail medical is an issue. It has been an issue for some time. And sometimes it's easier for them just to say, hey, I'm going to send somebody out instead of making that decision with that. And most of the time, they want to get someone, someone cleared for incarceration. They go to the hospital. And I've taken inmates myself. The doctor clears them right away and sends them back. So we just can't do that. It's not sustainable. It is not sustainable. I talked about that when I came in back in December. It is a big issue. And like I said, I'll be honest with you, why would you work in a correctional facility if you can go work at Kaiser, Sutter, UC Davis? A lot of those nurses start at 120,000. We can't compete with that. So we've got to do something to change that. And it is scary with that. But I've got deputies out every day, every day that are out. And like I said, it does programs. And the reason we went to ROs in the control booths in the first place was to put civilians in there to free up officers to be on the floors and deal with those problems. Well, those officers are gone on med runs. So you're gone over and over and over again. And the emergency rooms are impacting themselves. It's a long waiting time. So that's not the place. Back in the day, the county had it where we had a contract with a med clinic and we were able to take people there and get them cleared. And it was a fast turnaround. I would argue us putting a physician's assistant down there in the jail or going to a med clinic is much cheaper than what we're doing now. Not to mention the cost that's incurred by the county for these medical visits. Yeah, there's some reimbursement, but still things are coming out of hide. So we've got to change that. That is what scares me, the roles for the county. Like I said, it's not, under the consent decree, I'll get more bodies. I'm sorry, under receivership, I would get more bodies. I don't need more bodies. I can work with what I have now in the jail, if they're there in the jail and not out on med runs. So something has to change with that. Hot, it's been going good. I think you guys are aware of what's going on with the hot team operations. It's going fairly well. We're out there responding to issues and any issues that may arise. Talked about human trafficking early with the businesses and then late night releases from the main jail. So the only people that get released between 11 and 6:00 in the morning, if this is court ordered or mandated, a judge mandates this person be released, they have to be released at that time. So we're making sure when it's time to get released, call, get a ride. Met with Uber the other day and we, the under sheriff did, and we've got a program we're going to set up with Uber. So if you need a ride, you can get a ride. So I will say some of those problems are ours, but not as many as people purport. So I mean, it is what it is. There's been a lot of controversy on that. But we're being a good neighbor with our downtown folks to make sure it works. So we'll stand something up. But it's been very effective right now. The deputies, probably being released in the release tanks, hey, call, get a ride. Who needs a ride? So we really ask them that to make sure that the folks have rides that want rides. But at the end of the day, we can't force someone to get a ride if they're non-responsive. There's not a lot we can do with that.
Excuse me Sheriff, Supervisor Hume?
Yeah, thank you Sheriff. Not to interrupt you, but I just wanted to say as you're talking about May's consent decree, which I think terrifies all of us if it's taken control from us and the impacts there. But I know with all of the restrictions or contractions that are happening at the state with Department of Juvenile Justice and some of the things, have you been recruiting from DJJ or CDCR? Is there an opportunity to get laterals from folks where institutions are being shut down?
They're all going to CDCR.
Okay.
Yeah. That's been the big issue I wish. And you know, that's another issue is you think about some of these things. So DJJ closes in July. So DJJ had a, the old TYA, they had an award winning nationally recognized sex offender program that did a good, a good job for youthful sex offenders. So now these folks are coming back to the county. It can be 25-year-old males. And the counties can't recreate these programs that have 30 or 40 or 50 people that DJJ had. I know we can't. I know most of the counties can't. LA by virtue of scale can do it. We can't help these kids. And that's the sad part about it. The state has kind of pushed that down. It's the same thing as AB 109, pushed on the backs of the counties. And now we're left to suffer with that, which is crazy. They washed their hands of it for CDCR. They built that hospital down in Stockton, a hospital for inmates. We can't do that. And the prison law office, these folks are now suing us the same way they sued CDCR. So it's a constant battle. And you know, heaven forbid you cross swords with them because you're screwed. So in some ways, you go along and get along and just try and, you know, have a decent relationship with them, a working relationship with them to try and get these things done. And that's what it comes down to. Like I said, I'm concerned for the county as well as the sheriff department, you know, where we're headed. So we're doing more with less. You know, we talked about ATMS is doing a good job now, Lexapool, longevity. We talked about that because folks that are experts in the jail that deal with the issues on the consent decree are subject matter experts. Eventually after assignment, people move after two or three years to move around because people want to promote. So we're trying to have longevity and keep them there. So you know, one thing we asked for was to not lose that institutional knowledge to really help us and see how we can do that. So I would love to get some money in the budget to retain those people, have an incentive because obviously if you're in corrections and you stay long enough, you know, there's a good chance you may not promote. But some incentive to have them maintained there for those commanders, assistant commanders, and then the compliance officers to try and keep them there longer. So we have continuity. I think that's an important thing to have that. And that way you don't lose that bringing someone else in new. But we don't want to stifle people's careers either. So that's important to us. So that's pretty much the end of my presentation. So I think the last five or six years, I think we probably returned about 70 million to the county that the sheriff's department has. And for some of that within a detriment, some of those things I mentioned here, we could have gotten ourselves. So we've always been a team player. You know, it's, even though we have our autonomy, we want to, we still realize that we want to help Sacramento County because if we all work together, it benefits everybody. There's no, it's we. It's not me. And that's how I intend to govern and run the sheriff's department to work with you. So staff's been great. Ann's been great. Eric's been great. We've had a lot of talks and got a lot of things accomplished. It's just facing those future hurdles. So thank you.
No, thank you Sheriff. I think this really helps kind of frame up a lot of the issues for us, both this year and in upcoming budget years certainly. The question I had on a lot of the equipment needs that you have, I mean, I know there's a lot of other funding sources potentially that are out there, you know, at the state and federal level, certainly come through OES. But since we use, since the sheriff's department plays more of a regional role a lot of times in Northern California, do we get any funding? Do the locals kick in at all for some of these equipment needs that they rely upon?
Not really. We use a lot of grant money. The drowning in the river the other day, the young boy, the 14-year-old, we ended up recovering the body. That was our ROV. We're the only agency that has ROV in the region. And we sent that down with our marine enforcement and retrieved the body. So it's, while we got it through a grant, it's, we use it as a regional asset. The same thing with our boat. So we're very good at that. So pretty much most of the reinforcement detail is funded through grants for the equipment besides the bodies. So we work very well at that and trying to do that and work with grants. We've got partners. We work with the FBI, with DEA. So we have folks on task forces and that helps to address some of the overtime issues where they pay for that. So where we can, we'll try and work and leverage as many resources as we can.
Yeah, Chair and Board members, Mike Ziegler, Under Sheriff. To answer the question, we had, we had three congressional asks this year. One's still alive. We tried to get a mobile command bus. So we're not, we're trying to be smart, right? We're not dumping everything else on the county. So we're doing our due diligence. When we did our AGR, we were very judicious on what we were asking for. And the sheriff said, okay, where can we get some of these things instead of just going to the county budget to get them? So we're pretty aggressive with the relationships we have with Matt Souy and Barrow's office.
I went back to DC and met with Senator Pardilla also. So we're trying to turn over every stone to see what we can get. And I'll give you one that's still alive. It's a shoot house, right? A shoot house? A regional shoot house. So with so many active shooter incidents going on, we want to build a village that has classrooms in it and storefronts for active shooters to train not only law enforcement, but educators. If they're in a classroom and they act a shooter, what do you do? EMT, fires, a regional asset. So we tried to get through the state legislature and of course that was shot down. So we've got obviously an ask to the, our congressional delegation trying it. So we're out there working, trying to get as much as we can and not just coming to the county with our hands out. And I realize what times, the times are tough right now. We get it.
Well, thank you. And I just tell you, thank you. I know it, you know, this board specifically funds the homeless outreach team because it's a priority for all of us and really appreciate how you've been building the team back up because that's made a dramatic difference, you know, in our communities. And Under Sheriff and I recently had a discussion about obviously working, you know, collaborating. It's certainly a collaborative effort with our social services teams and the navigators and outreach workers to be able to offer services, but also to enforce the law, certainly where it's appropriate as well. So I just want to thank you for that as well, for really paying attention to that.
And I'll tell you one thing, these operations, because we hear a lot about homeless and everyone's talking about the homeless and everyone's got an idea of how to fix it and how to do it. The biggest takeaway we got, because we asked a lot of questions. We have very detailed questionnaire and we asked the folks for help on what they need. The number of sexual assaults against women, no one's ever spoken about that ever at a state level, at the local level. Over 20, just in our short operation, 20 unreported sexual assaults, including rapes. One woman had been raped numerous times over and over and over again. And when you live in that environment, there's not a lot you can do. So going out there as a law enforcement agency really helps and makes a difference. We actually took some reports and some didn't want to. So it's getting out there and letting them know, hey, you're a victim. It's okay. There are services where we can help you. But no one's asking about that. No one inquires about that. That was the biggest takeaway I got with the women out there. Because yeah, Boise is there, but you can still enforce those laws and make sure those women and children are safe in the camps. And we're going to do that. And with the drug problem, you know, it's a misdemeanor, but it's the same as doing a lawn job or egging someone's house, having drugs. We're still going to cite people for having drugs because it has to happen. It's, like I said, it's just having an impact on our communities, not only on the homeless community, because if you're homeless, you're being victimized over and over again, but on the, on the citizens that live in those areas too. So, you know, we hear you. We hear the board's concerns and they want to, I know you want a balanced approach, as do we. But we want to try and help this as much as we can. But for the most part, law enforcement's been hands off for a long time. And depending on where you live in Sacramento County, people do it different ways.
Supervisor Serna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So again, thank you Sheriff Cooper for your enlightening presentation. I just thought it would be apropos at this point to let the board know and our executive team know that Sheriff Cooper and I have been discussing, once we returned from break, our summer break, having the officers, the team that actually is responsible for the 1,800 pounds of methamphetamine confiscation that was mentioned in chambers to, I think rightfully commend them for a job exceptionally well done. And as the broken record up here on the subject of meth, I think we need to take advantage of, you know, every opportunity we can to not just recognize the men and women who are responsible for taking meth off our streets, but to hear some of the circumstance around these large busts and learn more about the dynamics of the meth trade and production so that we can get our hands around this, working of course with great cooperation with the sheriff's department. So thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Serna.
So first of all, support that 100%. And I've mentioned this both to you as well to the DA. You know, I think there ought to be an escalation à la a hate crime for people who deal drugs into the homeless community because I think it's preying on the vulnerable. And, you know, looking at, obviously if you're out there and you're going through the trauma of living on the streets, you know, to convince them to be clear-headed enough to accept the services as a problem. But when you have people coming to the community who are continuing to poison them with these drugs to keep them in where they are, I think if we could somehow figure out an escalation for that, that would go a long way. But I wanted to go back and mention some of the things that you were just talking about with respect to your interface with the unsheltered community. And I know I've heard from you and I've heard it from members of the public that I think you've made a very concerted effort to make the uncomfortable but blatant recognition that there are crimes happening from the homeless community. There's crimes happening to the homeless community and there's crimes happening within the homeless community. And I think it's important that we do gather that data and we do document those things and we do issue those citations because that's one of the tools that goes to accomplish what you were talking about earlier relative to compelling, to offering the carrot, to saying, hey, you've racked up, you know, 10 citations. Now we can step in on your behalf and mandate that you take some of these other things. But my question, and this may not be something you can answer, but is all of this data that you're gathering being plugged into the HMIS effort that's happening with Sacramento Steps Forward and kind of congregating a more clear picture of what's happening?
Not yet. We've only done three operations. So at some point we look at sharing our data and letting folks know. And the thing on the sexual assaults, so we know it's probably three or four times that. It's in the hundreds for sure, way, way higher than what was reported because people are reluctant to come forward and say that. I mean, they feel ashamed and they shouldn't. So it's like, even if you were, if you had a job and a house roof over your head, victims are always reluctant to come forward. So imagine a homeless victim. That reluctance is tenfold. And that's the troubling part out there that, like I said, no one has ever talked about. That's never been an issue. Well, for law enforcement, we deal with victims of sexual assaults on a daily basis and we're, we're good at that, at drawing that out. And it was tough to get some of those women to talk out there. It was very difficult, especially you got some of the perpetrators standing around there. So it's really hard to separate folks from there and, hey, what's going on? How can we help you? So thanks for recognizing that. And Supervisor Serna, thank you for recognizing the dedication of our narcotic officers.
Thank you Sheriff. So if there are no further questions for Sheriff Cooper, thank you again Sheriff for again providing us with a great deal of information for our consideration. So next on our sub-agenda, we're going to hear from our DA, Tan Ho. consideration. So next on our sub-agenda, we're going to hear from our DA, Tan Ho.
I'm not as tall as Sheriff Cooper.
Good morning, District Attorney Ho. Let me ask our clerk. So we closed off agenda. Off agenda, public comment was closed.
Correct.
And I, I mean, I do, I wasn't planning to take public comment after each presentation.
No. We're doing one public comment period.
One public comment after. Okay.
Correct. After all the presentations and your conversations, when you open that up, you'll open public comments and then you'll close public comments and then you'll deliberate.
Okay. Yes, go ahead.
Could I ask, Madam Clerk, do we have people in the queue right now?
We have two in the queue and one in person.
Okay, very good.
You're welcome.
Okay. District Attorney Ho, thank you.
First of all, Mr. Chair and the board, thank you for the opportunity to be here today and speak with you on an important matter. I would like to start off by thanking our CEO and Edwards and her staff, in particular Amanda Thomas and Eric Jones, for the countless hours they've put into this process. Having now gone through or going through this process for the first time, I truly appreciate the monumental task that they have taken on and that you have taken on. To begin with, I would like to start with talking about some of the trends in our criminal justice system. And to do so, I want to focus, compare and contrast with three different cities. The first is the city of San Diego, that has a population of 1.4 million people. San Jose has a population of 1 million, and the city of Sacramento has a population of just over half a million. When we're looking at homicide statistics that were provided by the FBI in 2019, we had the city of San Diego reported 50 homicides. The city of San Jose reported 32 homicides, and the city of Sacramento had 34. Of note, Sacramento had more homicides than the city of San Jose, which has double the population. Now, fast forward to 2022. San Diego recorded 57 homicides in that year, with San Jose at 35. And Sacramento shot up to 54 homicides reported in 2022. That is three less than the city of San Diego that has three times the population. Sacramento County reported 114 homicides last year. And so to put this in perspective for a moment, what we're dealing with at the DA's office is the city of San Jose, obviously, is located in Santa Clara County. They have approximately 220 prosecutors budgeted. We're in the 170s. Santa Clara DA's office is the largest DA's office in Northern California, and we are dealing with significantly higher violent crime rates. San Diego County is the second largest DA's office in the entire state with nearly 400 prosecutors, and we are dealing with violent crime rates consisting with them. We are simply asked to do more with less. And I want to talk now about some of the demographic statistics in regards to victims. And this is from the City Police Department of Sacramento. And it involves both shooting victims that survived and those that did not. And we looked at the demographics, 27.1% were Caucasian, and the remaining 72.4% were from communities of color and disenfranchised and disadvantaged communities. When we talk about public safety and those who bear the brunt of being victims of violent crimes, they are from communities of color, and that is an equity issue. Let me provide some additional statistics here. And I believe this is a PowerPoint that's not animated, but you might be asking why we are focused on the city of Sacramento. And the fact of the matter is, the city of Sacramento is the primary influencer and driver of crime in Sacramento County. So I'm focusing on there. And I start with, let me go back here. Can we go, I think this PowerPoint is not animated, but let me go back to this. When we look at, for example, rape statistics from year to date, we have 127 reported rapes in 2021. In 2022, that number shot up to 169. That's an increase of 33%. In terms of robberies, we had 812 in '21 and 1,064 in 2022. That's an increase of 33%. And then assault, which includes not only domestic violence, simple assault, aggravated assault, they were 6,427 in 2021, and that shot up to 7,291. That's an increase of 13-plus percent of assaults in the city. And in regards to theft, we're talking about petty theft, grand theft, we're talking about auto theft, we're talking about burglaries. In 2021, we had 12,542. In 2022, that number shot up to 12% more, at 14,000-plus theft offenses. Now, how does increased crime affect those that are working in the criminal justice system? Increased crime results in increased caseloads, which then require increased investment, equal investment in our system and in the resources, or the system begins to crumble. And I want to emphasize the word equal investment. And I want to focus here on attorney positions for the DA's office and the public defender's office in terms of growth. You look at the left, in 2014 to 2023, we had a 33% increase in public defender attorney positions that were allocated versus the DA's office saw a 9% increase. And when we look at the proposed budget for the 2023-24 cycle, we have a proposal for 16 new public defender attorney positions. And for the DA's office, three, three new positions. And when we talk about these three positions, I'm going to now talk about a specific phenomenon, a factor that demonstrates and illustrates why we need more than three positions at the DA's office. And when I show the next slide, we're going to move from left to right to illustrate the point. So I want to talk about the public defender overload and what that means. A public defender overload simply means this, that the public defender's office will decline appointments on a new case, or they will give back a case in which they have been representing their clients for a day, a month, or in some cases, years. Think of the public defender overload as a relief valve, to release the pressure when they feel as if they have too many cases and can't handle them. Or to use another analogy, it's like opening the emergency exit on a plane and getting out. So in 2019, the public defender's office overloaded on 43 cases on the left-hand side. That meant that the panel attorneys then assumed those cases. In 2020, they overloaded 96 cases. And as you can see from this, in 2021, that number skyrocketed to 957 cases of overload. In 2022, that number is at 503. And these statistics we received from the courts that indicate essentially here what is happening. And if you look at from 2019 to 2023, the county allocated to the public defender's office 14 additional attorney spots. And with those 14 attorney spots, they have nonetheless this year to date overloaded on 232 cases. And that yellow kind of shaded spot, they're on pace to match last year's rate. And that is why the county has proposed to give them 16 additional spots. And I can tell you that I'm here to advocate that they should get those spots. But the reality is this, that is a luxury that the public defender's office have, that they can overload on a case. They can open that relief valve and let out the pressure. But the fact of the matter is, at the district attorney's office, we don't have an authoritative DA panel. Rob Bonta is not coming to take our cases, and neither is the Yolo Placer Eldorado DA. Those 2,351 overload cases over the last several years, we still keep them. Because we don't have the luxury of getting out of the plane. We have to land the plane. All with a proposal to get three new attorneys. And I want to now emphasize a particular aspect of this. When you look at these overloads, approximately 70% of them involve cases in which the public defender's office have represented their clients, oftentimes and at times for lengthy periods, including years. Just a month ago, they overloaded. After having received 14 new attorney spots, they have overloaded on eight homicides, four of which they've had for three years. And when you overload these cases, what happens is it causes a delay because a new attorney comes on to the case. And so now, they get out of the case, we retain those cases, and there is a delay in resolution either by plea or by trial. So while our cases remain high, because we don't get that relief valve, more cases are coming in. We are asked to do more with less. And let me provide some additional statistics in terms of DA budgeted attorney positions over the years. In 2014, and you'll see a particular pattern here, we received a budgeted for 170 positions. In 2015, there were three additional allocation to 173. In 2016, it remained the same at 173. In 2017, it remained the same. In 2018, it remained the same. In 2019, it remained the same. In 2019, the same, and in 2020, it remained at 173 positions. In 2021, we received two positions to go up to 175. And then in 2022, up to 179, and the proposal now adds three attorney spots. Now, you might think that 182 are a lot of attorneys. The fact of the matter is this, when you combine the public defender's office and the, and the criminal conflict panel combined together, they have over 200 attorneys that we are facing on the other side. And that doesn't even include the private defense bar. We are asked to do more with less. And this pattern, frankly, of stagnant growth is exacerbated by changes in the law. Now, before the changes in law, I want to demonstrate here, we have our mainline operations. And we had two attorneys assigned to our post-conviction or our justice training and integrity unit, and one in our collaborative courts. But what happened was that there were changes in the law. Starting with 2014, there was Prop 47, Prop 57 in 2016, as we remain stagnant. And then capital appeal litigation, these are death penalty cases. Originally, they were handled by the Attorney General's Office at the Supreme Court level. But the change in the law in 2017 transferred all those cases to my office, to the DA's office to handle on the Superior Court level. Then there were changes on firearm enhancements that required that we relitigate cases that were closed, sometimes for decades. And then there were further changes in regards to the felony murder rule in 2019 that resulted in 400-plus homicide cases that were closed coming back to our office for further litigation. And as a result of that, we had to move, and the animation in this slide actually shows what happened, which is the 11 attorneys that were in our mainline operation were actually moved. They were transferred over to our post-conviction unit, so that we had 13 there. And our justice training or our post-conviction appeals unit, we had to create this. We had to then go back into resentencing on firearm, felony murders, prior strikes, inmate requests for clemency, youthful and elder parole, the capital litigation that I talked about. Essentially, what happened, those 11 attorney spots that were in mainline got moved up, and now we have 13 attorneys up in the top. It cannibalized our mainline operations. But on top of that, what we then had was we originally had one attorney in our collaborative courts. I then moved the three attorney in our mainline operations to collaborative courts, because I'm a believer in collaborative courts. We have 13 collaborative courts, and I'm intending on creating more, including a community one that is close to creation. We are also creating a diversion program for juveniles, and we are partnering up with the Elk Grove Police Department to do it. I'm not a believer in just lock them up and throw away the key. I believe in intervention and prevention. The public defender's office, they have 11 attorneys assigned to the collaborative courts. Right now, I only have four. We requested four additional collaborative attorneys in this budget cycle, and we only receive permission for two. In addition to those 13 collaborative courts they have to cover, and I'm a believer in expungement and second chances, my attorneys have to then review up to 120 cases monthly to deal with expungements. And here's an example, with the creation of felony mental health diversion, where a person could be diverted and get their cases dismissed, a felony case because of a mental health issue. Those cases have skyrocketed 450% since 2019. Right now, we have 40143 mental health diversion cases. The public defender's office, they are ready to file cases on an additional 400. Two more collaborative courts attorneys is not enough for us. Then we look at what the result of this. When you look at the 17 attorneys that have now between JTI and collaborative courts, we have been cannibalized in our mainline operations as a result of that. But in addition to those 17 attorneys, we are also down attorneys in domestic violence. Caseloads have gone from 20 to 40. The gang team, the target team, which focuses on gangsters and guns and ghost guns, adult rape, down, child molestation and abuse, down, career criminal unit, down, prison unit, down, consumer and environmental protection, down, special investigations that deal with OIS's officer-involved shootings, down. And the major narcotic unit, of which I used to supervise at one point, was five attorneys strong. We've had to disband that unit. What does disbanding the major narcotic unit look like? What that looks like is those major narcotic cases have been essentially transferred and distributed to less experienced attorneys, attorneys who will be superstars in my office, but less experienced. And those attorneys are also managing a whole list of other cases. So here's the request. Number one, I am respectfully requesting, in regards to the collaborative court attorneys, we currently requested four spots and received only two. I'm asking for two more collaborative court positions, what we had originally requested. Our child pornography and exploitation unit, the cyber crimes, in the last eight years, caseloads have gone from 20 to 100. And let me just give a tip for a moment here. Sheriff Cooper and the under sheriff and I were speaking yesterday about it. We have received, in the last 10 years, we have gone from 200 tips online on these cases up to 10,000 tips a year. It's a one attorney unit. The current growth request that we've put in is for one attorney, and we've received none. Our request is to approve one attorney. And then, on the elder independent, the filing numbers are up. We currently have one attorney assigned to that unit. We've requested one additional attorney spot. We received none. We are asking for one attorney spot. And then ESCARs, this is the electronic child abuse reporting system. It is going online right now in June. It allows people to report abuse electronically and immediately. It is expected to increase exponentially the reports that need to be reviewed for child abuse. The current growth request that we had in our budget was for one. We received none. We are asking for approval on this. And then, the major narcotic unit, and these numbers are simply staggering. In the last three years, we've had 360 fentanyl poisoning deaths in Sacramento County, 360. That's more than all the gun-related homicides during that same period of time. There is a new synthetic form of methamphetamine that is ravaging the West Coast that can cause psychosis on the first use. I'd like to establish a fentanyl-meth response team. Rather than be reactive, which is what we are now, I would like to be proactive in working with HIDA, the different task force, our federal partners. And so our request for this is an approval, and I have to admit, this was not in the original budget request. But as we were looking at what was happening in terms of narcotics and overdoses and how it's ravaged our community, I'm asking for one attorney, an investigator, and a criminalist. And finally, I would like to address the retention and recruitment issue. Because here's the deal with that. You can provide, the county can provide the public defender with 16 new spots, attorneys, and the DA's office with however many that you deem fit. But I'm going to, we are going to need the means to fill those spots. I am losing attorneys because of increased caseloads. And when they leave, the caseloads increase, and I have less lawyers. And then those other attorneys that remain, they leave. This is a vicious cycle that feeds on itself. Because here's the deal with that. You can provide, the county can provide, the Public Defender with 16 new spots, attorneys, and the DA's office with however many that you deem fit. But I'm going to, we are going to need the means to fill those spots. I am losing attorneys because of increased caseloads. And when they leave, the caseloads increase, and I have less lawyers. And then those other attorneys that remain, they leave. This is a vicious cycle that feeds on itself. Over the last several years, I've lost seven attorneys to county council, where they have less cases and they get paid more. We need to be able to recruit both the Public Defender and the DA's office lateral attorneys with experience. But we need to be able to financially compete with those other counties. So I'll give you two examples. I had an attorney recently from a neighboring county apply to the office. He had experience. He declined our offer because to come to Sacramento, he would have to work more and get paid less. There was an attorney ala Alameda DA's office who had homicide experience. She was fantastic. I wanted to recruit her, and we made an offer. She declined because to come to Sacramento, she would make less and have to work more. Now, in regards to the Public Defender and the DA's office attorneys, they have been out of contract now for the last year. Several weeks ago, I think it was two or three weeks ago, for the first time, they started the actual hearing in front of the fact finder. They are not set to return to that fact finder until the end of October, leaving them out of contract now for a year and a half. I'm asking that you step in to resolve that conflict, provide a reasonable equity with retro pay, and to be equitable and comparable to county council. I know that the wonderful staff at the county and each and every one of you, just like I, care about public safety and fairness. Because whether you live on a quiet farm in Wilton or in a condo over a busy street in Midtown, whether you are white or black, whether you were born with a silver spoon or a plastic spoon in your mouth, whether you are housed or unhoused, whether you have a small business, or whether you are simply trying to manage your own business and get off drugs, fairness and public safety is something that everyone deserves. And I am asking that you provide us with the resources so that we can provide fairness, public safety, and to be always just. Thank you.
Thank you, District Attorney Ho. I'll ask some comments and questions myself. First, I'll go to Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, Tan, I just want to commend you and congratulate you on your eloquence. I felt like you should have ended your presentation with ladies and gentlemen of the jury, "I'm asking you to be fair," or something along those lines. But I don't think we're hopefully as far apart as you presented in your slides, because you show us only approving three attorney requests. And when I look at the call out of the recommended growth, I count five attorney requests. Add one FTE attorney, Level 5, to address workload and dedicate to expert cases. Add one FTE attorney to child abuse unit, which was one of your requests that you said wasn't filled. Add one FTE attorney, Level 5, to cyber crimes, which was one of the requests that you said wasn't filled. And then add two FTE attorney, Level 5, positions to serve jail population reduction plan. So is our math off, and we're actually recommending more?
Was there an update? I was aware that we were approved for, I believe, one attorney to deal with homelessness, and then two attorneys to deal in the collaborative courts. Was there more allocation? And if there was...
Supervisor Hume, maybe you could let us know what page you're looking at in the budget.
Sure, I'd be happy to. So in the recommended growth, Attachment 3, Exhibit A, Pages 1, 2, and 3 of 23.
Attachment 3 is growth not funded. Attachment 2 is funded growth, and there are three attorneys.
Okay. So we have an additional five attorneys that we're recommending, should the, or that's not recommended, so that's not even the...
There's some criminalist positions.
The September...
Yes, I, my inner, maybe I can have a point of clarification. We are approved or recommended for three additional attorney spots, is that correct?
Yes.
Are we approved for the other attorney spots?
No.
So I apologize. I was looking in the requests that had been made that are not recommended for...
I was about to sit down, Supervisor Hume, but...
I was trying to get you there. Honestly, I was. And I'll say this, that, or maybe it's a question that I can ask as we delve into things later, but is the discrepancy, if you will, of the amount of positions we're funding for the Public Defender versus the amount of positions we're funding for the DA related to May's consent decree items and trying to reduce jail population? I mean, are we really, and I hate to even put it this way, but are we stacking the deck to try and get cases to not end up with prosecution? Or, I mean, that's what it seems like.
I'm going to turn this over to Eric, but the short answer is that yes, the, most of the attorneys approved in the Public Defender's Office are related to May's consent. And Eric, do you want to add to that?
Yes, Eric Jones, Deputy County Executive, Public Safety and Justice. And I would, I would not say it's to stack the deck against prosecution at all.
Okay.
However, you will see in the May's Consent Decree specific update, county legal mandate obligations, of which May's Consent Decree is a top one, that is where and why those positions were prioritized as such.
Thank you. I appreciate everything you're doing, and I appreciate the tenacity with which you've come into this office. And to the extent possible, it wasn't on my list of asks, but I will be looking to examine the amount that we're funding the Defender's Office versus the amount we're funding the DA's office. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Hume. And so, District Attorney Ho, what is your, how many vacancies do you have right now in the DA's office among the prosecutors?
We have 11 vacancies.
And I, I'll turn to county staff. In terms of the numbers that the district attorney provided us compared to other counties, both comparing the counties, staffing in the DA's office, and the crime rate, do we, as part of our, I guess, exercise during budget, do we look at staffing comparisons based on relative workloads with other, compared with other counties as part of this when we evaluate any of these growth requests?
We do often look at how other agencies are staffed up for like departments, but then we have to look internally to our county and what's specifically going on here, especially around, like I say, a lot of these legal mandates. And so as far as the numbers presented, I wouldn't be able to respond to those. I know the overload numbers are different than what Public Defender and Conflict Criminal Defender have. And so we just, just recently received these numbers, so we're not able to comment further on any of the statistics.
And I appreciate that. And I certainly don't want to get into a thing where our Public Defender comes up and responds directly either. But maybe, Eric, you can explain. I mean, I, you know, I'm looking at the, at the FTEs approved, and I understand that a lot of those, those numbers in the DA's office, I think it says a total of eight, I believe, right, in the DA's office, but obviously, five of those are not prosecutors or other support staff. But how about in the, in the Public Defender's Office? And, and I also understand, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison, I don't think. So I want to, I'd like to get you to comment on that, too. But out of the proposed growth in the Public Defender's Office, out of the 17, how many are for attorney positions?
16 attorney positions.
16 attorney out of the 17, okay. And, and three out of the eight prosecutor positions for the DA's office, recommended growth.
That is correct, Supervisor. And I would also reiterate that it's not an apples-to-apples...
Yeah, please flesh, flesh that out to me, for me, a little more. I know you responded to it a little bit in response to Supervisor Hume, but...
Yeah, so all of the things mentioned are obviously very important that have been mentioned. We specifically focused primarily on the mandate of the consent decree. And we're, we're quite some ways off of being within compliance of it. And so the priorities with our consultants, our criminal justice partners, all the departments involved, were to prioritize it again by what will reduce the jail population so we're, we are in compliance. And of that, a number of questions were asked of all of the different departments and agencies, which are what's evidence-based, what can reduce our jail population while still recognizing the need for overall community and public safety. But it's about reducing incarceration on the front end, reducing length of stay while those are in custody, and also reducing recidivism or returns to custody. And so several programs came up through our May's Consent Decree 33 planned items, known as the Jail Population Reduction Plan, and then there's also the Remedial Plan, which we'll discuss later. And of those, the positions were prioritized in that manner. Now, for Public Defender, you did hear about overload, and we don't want overload. Conflict Criminal Defender's Office is not intended for overload. It should be for conflicts. And so we do believe, as we increase Public Defender's staffing to reduce that overload, ultimately, we won't need as much contract services through Conflict Criminal Defender. So an investment in that will eventually reduce an investment on the Conflict Criminal Defender's side. Again, also, there are a number of legal mandates that fall directly to either Conflict Criminal Defender or Public Defender's Office that don't necessarily apply to other agencies or departments. Very, very much has increased in recent years, including this year. And you'll, you hear about things like AOT and Murphy's and other things that are really just falling more and more to that office. And then also, historically, there's been a lower investment within Public Defender's Office. And so we're not trying to compare attorneys to attorneys, because again, they often have different roles, different legal mandates. But even with this growth request, the Public Defender's Office still will be significantly fewer attorneys.
Okay, I appreciate that. I mean, and District Attorney Ho, I mean, yeah, the figures, the data you provide is certainly alarming. I mean, and I, and I think, when you look at public, public safety resources, both in the district attorney's office and the sheriff's office, there, it at least raises an eyebrow among people who are watching this today and see how we have lagged in terms of the resources. And it's something that sounds like Supervisor Hume will be maybe considering some things, but, but certainly, this is a discussion. As you eat into the vacancies, both in the sheriff's department and the DA's office, we need to, we need to have, I think, a more ongoing discussion, you know, certainly about this, even outside of the, the regular budget discussion. Supervisor Frost.
Thank you, Chair Desmond, and thank you, District Attorney Ho. I am also shocked by the statistics that you've brought. I was thinking a lot of what's already been said, but I had one more question regarding the collaborative courts, and I wonder if those, it seems like there's a, I mean, the DA's office still has to try cases, even though we have public defenders, and there's a discrepancy, there's an imbalance in the, in the workload for those two departments. But I wonder if the collaborative courts can qualify toward our consent decree, our goals with our consent decree? And if we can rationalize more resources to that, that would qualify toward the consent decree?
So as Eric Jones again, and so as presented, will be presented later, collaborative courts, mental health diversion, pre-trial services are all things that do apply to the Jail Population Reduction Plan toward May's Consent Decree compliance. And that's actually why a portion of that growth request was approved, and there were portions of, a variety of growth requests were approved to be recommended to you based on that. So that's why those two attorney positions were, in fact, approved to move forward.
It seems like we're reducing, while we're reducing our jail population, we're reducing our ability to, you know, receive justice with criminal activity in our communities. And so it's, it is concerning, and I'm going to be, I'll be supportive of, you know, having that conversation in our deliberations regarding the DA's...
I, I understand, Supervisor. And of course, this is just a recommendation as to go forward, but, you know, perhaps Conflict Criminal Defender or Public Defender may have some comments as well.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I'll actually invite that. I see our Public Defender, would you, any comments or response to either our district attorney or comments from the supervisors? Amanda.
Thank you. Good afternoon, and thank you for allowing me to speak on this. And I also want to thank District Attorney Tenho for his words, and I appreciate him saying that. He certainly recommends that we receive the growth that we've asked for. With regard to the positions that we've requested, we, our main goals are reducing, safely reducing the jail population, reducing the number of overloads that we are giving to the Conflict Criminal Defender, and also, just one moment, I just want to gather this. Complying with new legal mandates that we have, we have a number of different things that we have to do with regard to mental health diversion, with immigration advisements. We also have some mitigation work that we are required to do with plea negotiations and finding alternatives to incarceration. We also are required to investigate trauma and history of trauma of our clients to try to address underlying issues and get them diverted from the incarceration path. And so that has been something that has really increased our workload for our attorneys, which has increased the number of overloads. We don't want to overload on cases. We would prefer to keep them in our department. We think that we can actually process and move cases forward more efficiently than when they're overloaded to the panel, or to Conflict Criminal Defender. And the district attorney is, is correct, that when we overload, it does tend to increase and delay that case even longer, and some of those people remain in jail longer. So I understand what the district attorney is saying with the things that he needs for his office, and, but I will say that this county has, we have a really high number of criminal filings. That could be we have a higher crime rate, whatever it is, but it, it increases the work for both offices. And so our goal is to bring down the number of overloads and save money on that Conflict Criminal Defender budget and keep it within the Public Defender budget. We think overall that would save the county money. It would, it would result in better outcomes for our clients. It would result in a safer community and a safe, we, when we try to get safe releases from jail, it's safety for the community but also safety for our clients. We want them, when they are released from jail, to have a jail discharge plan, to have services in place. And so we have programs within our department to address that, whereas Conflict Criminal Defender has struggled with that. That's another reason why we would prefer to keep more cases in our office. So with regard to the overloads, I know in Mr. Ho's presentation, he thought there were about 500 or 250 so far, and maybe scheduled, projected to be 500 for the year. We show so far that we've had to overload on about 800 cases, and that's what Conflict Criminal Defender also shows through their data. So that is a lot of cases that we are overloading on because of our new mandates. The biggest mandate we have is the mental health diversion. We are required now to apply for mental health diversion on, I would estimate, about half of our cases. About half of our clients suffer some, from a mental health disorder that makes them eligible for mental health diversion. That is a lot of work for our attorneys in our office. We have to do a lot of investigation. We have to gather a lot of records. We work with behavioral health to gather the psychosocial history and the substance abuse history, the mental health history of these clients. And then we have to work with behavioral health to come up with a treatment plan. And then once we have all that, excuse me, together, then we have to file the formal application with the court for the mental health diversion program. And then it usually takes, there's a hearing, there's a lot of back and forth. The judge, Judge Brown, he's a wonderful judge, but he usually requires, he's very supportive of mental health diversion, but he usually requires that we do a few more steps and we gather more information. And then at some point, there's a decision made that they get to enter a mental health diversion. And if it's a felony, which we have a really high number of felonies in our county, the mental health diversion program lasts two years. And during that two years, we have to case manage that client, meaning that we're helping them make their appointments if they have transportation problems. We're trying to help coordinate transportation so they get to their appointments, and they get to their, go get, pick up their medication, they go to their classes, and that takes two years. And they're coming to court, you know, periodically during that time, and the judge and the DA are expecting there to be compliance with this treatment program. And it's our staff, our office is the one that's really holding that client's hand, and they're very, they, a lot of our clients, they have a whole host of issues that require a really high level of support from our office. And so we do have a team of social workers... And so we do have a team of social workers in our office that help us with that, which is another reason why we would really like to keep more of those cases in our office instead of overloading them. We have some, yeah, some programs and some social workers and some things in place that we can leverage to move those cases faster through the system so that we can get them the help they need, we can ensure that we've addressed the underlying issues that's leading to recidivism and get them on their way. So the DA's office, they do have a role with mental health diversion, and they, it has, it has, you know, they do need to be there in that court reviewing the case and, and, you know, speaking for their office. But the bulk of the work on getting that client through that program and making sure they comply with that treatment program is really very much squarely on the shoulders of our office. That's also true with like the expungements. They do have to review the expungements, but we're the ones that have to interview the client and prepare and gather all the mitigation evidence and prepare the petitions to file with the court so that the court can make a decision on whether to grant the expungement. The DA's office, they have a place and they need to be there, but they're, they're basically reviewing the petition and, and either objecting or, or, you know, agreeing to it. But the bulk of the work to get that expungement before the judge is really squarely on our office. With regard to collaborative courts, I know that we do have more attorneys in those courts. Again, because we are really doing a lot of handholding of our clients when they have a misstep or they're getting, at risk of getting kicked out of the program. We really work hard. Our social worker engages with them and talks to the provider and tries to see if, can we give them another chance? And so then we go back to court, and if the DA's office is objecting and feels they should be kicked out of the program and put in jail, we're really advocating, like, there's a lot you don't know about this client. This is what happened. They had a transportation issue, their pet died, they had a family member who was sick, whatever it is. Those are really things that make a big difference in helping our people get through these programs. So I do appreciate the increased workload of the DA, that the DA's office has experienced. And I, I don't want to take away from that. But with regard to why some of these reforms, like mental health diversion, collaborative court, record clearing, immigration, they really have, this legislature has really put a lot of the work onto our office. And that's true with the post-conviction resentencings as well. There's a lot of people who are in CDCR right now who are eligible to have their, their sentences reconsidered by the judge. And it's, we're the ones that are appointed to contact the person at CDCR, you know, talk to them and prepare the petition, get all the information from the prison and what they've done and what classes they've taken. And then we present it, and the DA's office does have to respond to those. But all of that work is really in our office as well. So I'm not, I don't want to say that the DA doesn't have a lot of work they do. We all are, we are all really struggling to meet up with, to comply with these new mandates from the legislature. We also have had to expand our conservatorship unit because we are now being appointed on more probate cases and conservatorships because of the change in the, excuse me, a change in the law. And then we have our assisted outpatient treatment program that's growing, so we've had to add to that as well. And so, and I do want to say that, I feel one of the slides was maybe misrepresented. We did not get 14 new attorneys last year. We had nine attorneys that were added to our department between the last year and this past year. And five of those were grants that we went out and got the funding for those, for our post-conviction and for Department of State Hospital. And then one of them was for AOT that we got through the Department of Health Services, another one was the Voya attorney that we got through probation. So we did not get 14 new attorneys. And the 33% growth is, I think, that's if, assuming that the recommendation goes through, it would be 33%. So I did want to correct that, and I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Okay. Thank you, Amanda. I appreciate that. I, this might be a bit of a rhetorical question, but I imagine in response to whether it's a state mandate or other direction from the state, or as a result of a priority established by this board, you know, in adopting Framework One that we did at the end of last year, the work you're doing, it couldn't be done, more of it could not be done by a social worker. I mean, imagine a lot of confidentiality, privileged information, it has to be done by attorneys. Is that correct?
That is true. We do rely on social workers, but a lot of it has to be done by attorneys.
Okay. Supervisor Frost?
Because that's the relationship, it has to be done by the, it seems like the attorney is, the function of the attorney is expanding. And so you're saying it has to be done by attorneys because you can't just patch people in, there has to be a relationship.
That is true. Yes.
Okay. Thank you for that. I, I know we've met and you've shared with me the complexity of your department and the things you guys do, and I appreciate it. And I feel like you, you do need every resource you can get. This is hard. I, I want to speak to Attorney Tenho and to staff. I just want to make one comment regarding the major narc unit that Attorney Tenho talked about, because that's another area that we've had a, you know, it's exploding, the fentanyl problem in our, on the West Coast is now exploding like it has already exploded on the East Coast. You told me a little bit about that, DA Ho. And I wonder if there's, I want to just put, put it out there. I mean, I don't know what we can work out, what extra help we can work out for the DA's office, but I would be, I would think it would be important for us to go out proactively to do everything we can to, to battle this problem that we have with fentanyl. And the DA has some really great ideas about it. I don't know if you want to talk, speak to that.
Yes. Before I get to that, Supervisor Frost, on the slide here that talked about the 14 spots, I had four arrows dating back from 2019 all the way to 2023. Those were 14 spots that were allocated to the public defender's office from 2019 to 2023. In regards to your, and I do want to address something that the other supervisors brought up and Eric Jones brought up. One of the ideas I have in regards to why I need to have an attorney for a major narcotic is this. So the county of Fresno has what they call the FORT team, F-O-R-T. It is a fentanyl response team. And what that does is when there is an overdose, the, there is a prosecutor, there is a agent from DEA Homeland Security, there is an officer from multiple agencies. The first thing that must be done is the phone must be collected from the victim. Then there needs to be a forensic analysis done of that phone with a search warrant that is written, or at least reviewed by a DA and approved by a judge. And then what we try to do is find out who sold the drug to the individual so that we can go after the drug dealer for charges of murder. In Riverside County, they've charged up to 20 people with murder for doing that. In Fresno County, they've done it. In Sacramento County, truth be told, we've charged zero. We don't have the resources to do it. And that's why I did put in the request for an attorney to deal specifically with narcotics that will be a member of our version of the FORT, and also deal with methamphetamine as well. And so that is an idea that we have. And I met yesterday with the undersheriff, with the FBI, I've met with the U.S. Attorney. They are willing to engage in this process, but I need to have the resources to do that. Now, I'm not going to sit up here at all and say that our office does more work than the public defenders or whatever. They deserve all the resources. But the fact of the matter is, and I'll go to the slide here, and there is going to be a choke point, or however you want to describe it here, where there are, we have four attorneys that are in collaborative courts, and we are set to get two more. The other side, the public defender's office, they have 11, and that doesn't count the conflict panel or other private defense attorneys. At some point, we have to review the case, and it's not just looking at it, it's contacting the victims, doing our analysis to make sure that public safety isn't impacted. And if you were to ask me, right, you can fund all the collaborative courts and all the MACE consent public defenders you want, but the truth is this, if I had to take an attorney from a child abuse case or one from collab courts, I'm going to take it from the collab courts. I will, every day of the week, make sure that my prosecutors in the child molestation, the gang, the rape cases, the homicide cases, the cases that are dealing with violent criminals that are man. And so I'm asking for two more attorneys, which was the request. And I need to be able to do it. If not, then I am going to not man it, and there's going to be a choke point there, regardless of MACE consent or not, because my priority are those other units that are down multiple spots. And I'll say this, it isn't apples to oranges, but our job is to build a case and to contact the victim, it's just not to read a piece of paper. And so when we look at the inequities of the system, remember, we are not just dealing with the public defender at 100 attorneys, something attorneys. We're dealing with 100 plus from the panel and all the private attorneys, all while down, all while unable to recruit because of a compensation package that does not meet other counties. And so with that, that's why I'm asking for the areas that I'm asking for.
Thank you, District Attorney Ho. I think we'll probably be having additional discussion about this this afternoon.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, what I, what I'm tossing around right now, and I'll look to my colleagues, the next PowerPoint on the agenda is from Eric Jones, and it relates to MACE consent decree. I think there will be probably a lot of crossover, we will be talking about a lot of the same things. So I'm inclined to take that presentation, and then we'll take a 30-minute break for lunch after that. I'm just looking for any head nods. It's, Mr. Jones estimated 20 minutes plus questions, so maybe 30? Okay. So we'll proceed that way, and you're up next.
Good afternoon, Chair. Good afternoon, Board. Again, I'm Eric Jones, Deputy County Executive for Public Safety and Justice. Deputy County Executive Siobhan Katari and I will be covering budget items for this presentation specifically related to the MACE consent decree. So there were a lot of growth requests from a lot of departments and agencies. This one is, again, just specific to this federal decree, and I'll be able to trim it down because much of it was covered in the, in the former dialogue. So again, there were multiple growth requests. Most departments had 40 or more, so prioritization was necessary. And agencies were encouraged to communicate back with us during all stages of the process. And we're also, and we've heard there are some additional asks that weren't actual growth requests and are new, and we look forward to future discussions on how to fund those and potential funding. And all of these things you're hearing about today are very, very important. As a reminder, for growth requests, first was prioritized with Board of Supervisors' priorities, and of which at the top were county obligations and legal mandates, which brings us to the MACE consent decree, which was the largest area and, since it's the federal decree. It has a few parts. There is a remedial plan, which was approved by plaintiff's counsel a number of years ago, capital projects, and then the jail population reduction plan, which we also know to be the MACE consent decree, 33 plan items, also known, as Chair Desmond said, as Framework One, which is approved by this board some time ago. Also, Kevin O'Connell, consultant involved in helping us shape up the MACE consent decree plan items, and the Public Safety and Justice Advisory Committee and others have been involved all along the way. And so I will go through some of the criminal justice systems partner components, and then, as I mentioned, Siobhan Katari will talk about the health services information, where it intersects with MACE. And we also have a number of department experts here today if there are any questions regarding any of these specifics. Quick background for the MACE consent decree is its final approval in federal court was back on January 8th of 2020, and the county's obligation is to implement the remedial plan focusing in these areas, which you've seen before, which is about restrictive housing, ADA compliance, suicide prevention, disciplinary measures, mental health care, and medical care. And then in December of 2022, the Board Supervisors approved those two frameworks, which Framework One, again, was reducing the average daily jail population and also to address those physical plan deficiencies. Continuing just a bit with the background, the county agreed to a six-year remedial plan. This is, happens to be year six of those six years. And again, this is separate from the jail population reduction plan, which will be discussed in a bit more detail in a moment. These are the actual numbers for that plan, and the consent decree has impacted the county's budget in this way since fiscal year 1718, and for ongoing investments necessary for compliance. Here with this plan, we have 21, 2021, 2122, and 2223 listed. Those are already complete. And then our recommendation to be in compliance with this remedial plan, which is mostly extra staffing for both the sheriff's office, correctional health, as well as contracted jail mental health staff, you see the numbers here listed for 2324. And then the jail population reduction plan recommended, you see the staff here listed, and the variety of departments that are involved, conflict criminal defenders, district attorney, public defender, probation, health services, sheriff's office, if I didn't mention, and technology, DTEC. This is a visual depiction, really, breakdown of it, and it does show here now for fiscal year 2324, a bit of a tapering off here. This shows both jail population reduction plans, again, this is recommended growth, and on the top portion, and then the remedial plans on the bottom portion, you can see the numbers, they are large numbers. You've got essentially about 6.6 million net county cost in the right column, and for remedial plan, a bit over 9.5 million net county cost. A bit later, we'll see a breakdown of what those other left column funding sources are, but there are a variety of inmate welfare funds, ARPA, a variety of other funds. Staying with the remedial plan growth, here's a summary of the components of it. As you can see, it is staffing, but there's also equipment and supplies. And I'll, I'll just point out one position that is not listed, it's an assistant sheriff position. It's not listed because it's not specifically tied solely 100% to MACE consent decree. However, it does allow for the executive structure of the sheriff's office to allow the undersheriff to be very much involved in the consent decree for more focus from the sheriff's office on this and some of those other legal mandates. This is a breakdown of staffing for the recommended remedial plan growth. So you see here, we have 10 positions within the sheriff's office and 12 positions within correctional health. We'll now move from the remedial plan to the jail population reduction plan and recommended growth, of which was what most of the discussion has already been about today. And again, this is also synonymous with the MACE consent decree, 33 plan items. We track all of those 33 items, you've seen them here before, because we bring it to you in a quarterly report, and we will continue to report quarterly on where we are with each of those components. Again, the prioritization criteria, which I mentioned a bit earlier today, was really around, again, what got prioritized in growth requests, were these questions. Will it produce a near-term impact on that jail population? Is it effective at reducing future jail readmissions? Does it have a track record for efficiency in being evidence-based? And will it assist the county in complying with its legal obligations? This is a summary of components of the jail population reduction plan growth areas. So you see here, we have pretrial services, mental health diversion and collaborative courts, record modification and expungement, sheriff's office reentry, mental health crisis response, that's Siobhan Katari will, will speak about actually these last three items. Also, the AOT, assisted outpatient treatment at Murphy's conservatorship, and data sharing improvement. Those are the key areas. Those are the key areas. I'll now speak to each of the components individually. And also, each of these slides will show you the numerous or multiple agencies or departments or offices that are involved collectively and collaboratively. For pretrial, we're really working toward a new paradigm, a new shift in the way we view pretrial. Really, it's about having pretrial, a pretrial program under the Public Safety and Justice Agency or the County Execs Office. And then services, pretrial services by multiple agencies. So you all know there's public defenders, pretrial services, probation has very successful pretrial services. The court loves both. They reach different clients, clients at different times in the justice system. So we are expanding recommended pretrial services in these three departments. We spent a bit of time on this already, mental health diversion and collaborative courts. So here, I'll just list the positions. And it's also about contract services, supplies, and equipment. And you also see the breakdown there with the numbers. So these are five departments involved in some way with each of these. And really, when it comes to mental health diversion and collaborative courts, it's very resource intensive, and it includes connections to things like the Jail Diversion Treatment and Resource Center. And again, it's not just staff. It focuses on treatment plans as well. Next category is record modification, also known as expungements. And these are court-ordered processes where legal records of an arrest or criminal conviction is expunged, and it helps folks with background checks for housing or job searches, and there are multiple variables, and it follows best practices. And you see here the two departments that have partial attorneys doing other multiple duties, but it does involve these two offices. Then we move into the Sheriff's Office reentry program, or reentry services. Again, it's focused on reducing recidivism, which means reducing returns to custody. And a recap of the three parts of the jail population reduction plan, front end, which is reducing incarceration, middle, which is reducing length of stay in custody, and then the last one is reducing recidivism, and this, where this component focuses. And the funding source here is the inmate welfare funds, so there's no net county cost. So I will now turn over this portion to Deputy County Executive Siobhan Katari.
Good afternoon, Board. As you're aware, because you've made previous investments, a robust mental health crisis response system does, is one of the major strategies that we've been building out over time in order to both divert people away from criminal justice system as well as provide services and get them linked to prevent future involvement with the criminal justice system. We're requesting to add an additional 24/7 mental health urgent care clinic as an alternative, both to unnecessary emergency room visits, as well as an alternative to, an option for law enforcement to be able to take folks who need mental health care versus going to jail. Additionally, we'd like to expand our 24/7 mobile crisis response teams, called community wellness response teams, to cover all hours and respond to behavioral health crises. Both of these strategies will be funded through the Department of Health Services with Medi-Cal billing and state revenue, so there'll be no net county cost associated with those.
Siobhan, can I see a follow-up on that? I'm glad you changed the acronym. What is the new acronym again?
Community Wellness.
Community Wellness.
Community Wellness Response Teams.
I think there were at least three more, three additional letters in it.
There were.
On those mobile crisis response teams, I received a comment from somebody, I don't know if it was the Mental Health Advisory Board. Are there vehicles, there are vehicles associated with that?
There are. I'm going to ask Director Lutz. Do we have vehicles for our CWRTs?
Yes.
Oh, Dr. Quist is here.
And I think if I'm not mistaken, was the proposal that it was two vans, but maybe one could be a pickup truck, a larger pickup truck, because there's a lot of, a lot of times, a lot of property, a lot of possessions that have to be transported as well. I just wanted, I just wanted to put that on your radar because that was a request that came to me about that with respect to the vehicle, so.
Thank you. You might be referring to the vehicles for the HART team, which is the homeless engagement teams.
Is that what it is? Oh, I thought it.
I think so.
I think it was.
Yeah.
It was for HART?
We have vehicles in the budget for the HART teams, which is the homeless engagement teams that, and from behavioral health. And I did see that comment about the pickup truck.
Okay, so I apologize, but now I've rung the bell, so.
Thank you.
Can I, before Supervisor Turner has a comment or question too. Before we get to that, on the mobile crisis response teams, and I know I've asked you this over the last couple of years as we've been expanding the capacity to do this work, which I firmly believe in, but as you know, I'm kind of a broken record with respect to making sure that these teams are, you know, I know the idea is to get law enforcement more out of this business, but the reality is that a lot of times, these teams are going to be interacting with law enforcement. Can you, can you tell me what some of those efforts have entailed in terms of trying to create that collaboration?
Yeah, absolutely. In fact, I'll have Dr. Quist come up and maybe answer these questions for you because he's more in the weeds on that.
All right, thank you. Good afternoon, Dr. Quist.
Good to see you.
Good afternoon, Chair and Board members. We have been involved with our conversations with law enforcement partners around the design of this program. Some of our earliest conversations were really around data and getting information regarding the call volume that are, they're being experienced by our law enforcement partners to inform us regarding what staffing levels that we would need in order to design this program. And we had a series of conversations around that because we needed to understand the data and whatnot. We did, we did, we have had challenges with getting this program staffed up and implemented. So we did have a number of, started getting to the point where we were basically saying we were having delays in the implementation. So we did hold off on continuing scheduling those meetings, and we are now scheduling meetings to reengage around how we can have bidirectional referrals from our law enforcement partners, be it through their 911 call centers or be it through 988. And so how are we all going to work together? So we're now reengaging on those conversations.
And I'll just reiterate that I really encourage that. And also talking with the SAC Metro and SAC City Fire as well, because obviously they have a huge response to a lot of these calls as well, so. Okay, all right, thank you. Supervisor Turner.
Thank you, Chair. This is a question for Siobhan. The additional 24/7 mental health urgent care clinic. So is this being conceived as a new facility, a repurposed county facility? Is it NRCIP, first of all? And then secondly, would this clinic be able to take crisis clients that law enforcement or the mobile crisis response teams engage with, the acuity of which may be as severe as a 5150?
So on your first question, my understanding is that we intend to do an RFP process, so we haven't identified any facility yet for the urgent care clinic. We certainly want to ensure, we already have one clinic, which is on Stockton Boulevard in the city. We want to ensure that we're covering other parts of the county as well, so that has not been selected, so therefore is not in NRCIP. On your second question, the behavioral, the urgent care clinic is a voluntary program. So folks who are taken there, law enforcement may take them there for an assessment. They can't be held against their will on a 5150 there. There are other facilities in the county, crisis stabilization units, mental health treatment center, that 5150 drop-offs can happen, including emergency rooms. I'll ask Dr. Quist if he wants to add anything to that. Okay.
So just give me a flavor for, or by way of example, like how would, how would this urgent care clinic function if someone is in distress? I mean, would you have to be so distressed or depressed or that you'd have to, you know, first know that this resource even exists and then have to seek it out yourself? I mean, how does that, how would that work?
Yeah, so the intent is that all of our partners, law enforcement, non-law enforcement partners, will know about this and that we will be doing some increased outreach to the community. Oftentimes, I think when people start to go into behavioral health crisis distress, if you will, it may be because they ran out of medications. It may be because they make a decision to get linked to services so that window of opportunity is open. So the urgent clinic is a pathway, whether they come in during the day or after hours, a pathway for them to get linked and connected to those services, be evaluated for a medication refill, for instance. And so if somebody shows up, for instance, at one of our core centers, our behavioral health core centers, and the core center team feels like they need a psychiatric or medical evaluation, they can be brought to that clinic as well. So it's just another tool in our toolbox.
Will there actually be some de facto micro pharmacy or something that, where someone could literally walk away with a fulfilled script?
So we do have our county pharmacy services that work closely with all of our facilities. And I will ask Dr. Quist, do we, are people able to leave with medications, or do they need to get it refilled at a pharmacy? Okay, so they need to get it refilled. But once again, our core centers really are there to do more intensive case management. So in the event that somebody needs a prescription refill, we do have teams of contracted providers that do case manage that and do help people get linked to those pharmacies.
And then again, the funding for this, is that no county, net county cost?
That is correct, no net county cost. It's Medi-Cal billing and other state revenue.
Got it, thank you.
Okay. So next is our assisted outpatient treatment and Murphy's Conservatorship Services. The Board approved the implementation of Laura's Law or Assisted Outpatient Treatment for individuals who need behavioral health treatment but do not voluntarily agree to it initially. We have seen an increase in utilization of this program since it was implemented earlier this year. Additionally, Murphy's Conservatorships are a legal tool that's used to ensure that individuals who have criminal justice involvement and have committed a crime as a result of their mental illness stay involved with treatment and services in order to stabilize their illness. Individuals involved in both of these programs are entitled to legal representation, as you've heard earlier today, and as they have grown, so have the needs of the Public Defender's Office for attorneys to represent these clients. This current request adds both a principal attorney as well as some supplies and services for these clients. Once again, the net county cost is $305,000 and some, or almost $306,000. The Board invested ARPA funding last year in building out the Social Health Information Exchange, or SHE. As we've progressed in the planning process, we're coming back to you to request positions we'll need to implement the project, three of which will fall under Health Services and the other three within our D-Tech Technology Department. The SHE is an important strategy to ensure individuals' involvement in the criminal justice system and transitioning out of jail are seamlessly linked to available resources and services. It will also support our desire to gain better data about the variety of needs experienced by individuals in the criminal justice system for planning purposes. And there's no net county cost associated with this, as this was an ARPA-funded request that the Board already funded.
So this next portion will go by quite quickly, I believe, and then Siobhan and I and staff are available for questions. I did want to just add one thing about data sharing. It is a top priority for the Public Safety and Justice Agency is to have better countywide data sharing. We find that a lot of different, and this is not unusual, a lot of different departments, agencies, offices sort of collect and share their data in ways that work for them interdepartmentally. But to have common terminology, looking at the same metrics when able to, that's a project we're working on, and we're working with the Criminal Justice Cabinet on that. And then the final two slides here are some pie charts. And the first one is just showing that growth by funding source. So I mentioned earlier, we went over a lot of the total net county costs, which you see here as 16.1 million, but it shows percentages of some of the other funding sources for a variety of the programs and services that you've heard about. And then the next depiction is by service area for the recommended growth. So this again shows the primary categories. And really, as you can see, there are a lot of services provided to those impacted. And the goal here is not just to reduce jail population, but also to reduce crime. A lot of these programs and efforts are quite evidence-based in that they also increase overall community safety. And with that, that concludes my portion of today's presentation.
Thank you, Eric. I'm glad you mentioned that last point because obviously that has to be an overarching concern with any new program that we are exploring or implementing, certainly. So Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. I'll try and be brief here, and I'll reiterate the first part of my statement when we get to general comments, and that is that I don't want to sit up here and play Robin Hood and try and take from one to give to another. But given that there are general funds, there's semi-discretionary, and then there's restricted funds, I'm just trying to figure out if we can't free up some of the discretionary monies that could be applied in different ways. And so one of the things that I'll point out is, under the Health Services approved growth, there's some big round numbers. For example, $9 million contract with forensic outpatient treatment centers, mental health symptoms that contributed to the justice involvement funded by Medi-Cal. There's the mental health urgent care clinic that was asked about earlier. There's the expanded contracts to create one forensic full-service partnership treatment program, $5 million. Is there any opportunity and has the budget been scrubbed to find ways that we can use those restricted funds to potentially offset something like that was just called out on that slide, where the public defender has a net county cost of $308,000 for an attorney related to AOT and Murphy's Conservatorships?
I can, I can take that, Supervisor Hume. So a lot of the funding that comes through the Health Services Department or Behavioral Health specifically is very restricted to services. And so for instance, for MHSA dollars, it has to go through the MHSA Steering Committee, and it really is needing to focus on treatment. Additionally, Medi-Cal billing can only be done by certain types of professionals. So for instance, a public defender could not bill to Medi-Cal services. So we do actually, the Behavioral Health Budget and the Health Services Budget does fund things outside of the department, does do transfers, as was suggested earlier. But for the most part, it is restricted funding that could not be transferred into those types of services.
And then what about generally, so I called out those specific examples just because they were, you know, round numbers, which always piques my interest. But what about just generally for the department budget relative to, you know, I don't know the figure off the top of my head of what the full allocation appropriation is, but it's huge. Is there a possibility of diverting $308,000 in this example to fund that public defender attorney and backfill that with some of these more restrictive programs?
So I'll take a stab at that and ask Ms. Thomas to pick it up. So one of the things that we do throughout the development of this budget recommendation is look at a myriad of ways in which we can free up net county cost by using semi-discretionary or state and federal dollars. And so that effort went all throughout this process of developing this budget recommendation. So I don't think we've missed anything, but I want to turn to Ms. Thomas because I know that's something that she and her staff work really hard on so that we can free up net county cost for those needs.
Yeah, thanks, Anna. And Anne's absolutely right. I mean, it's, you know, by policy, the county uses the most restrictive funding source first. So that's what we're asking departments to do when they put their budgets together is, you know, not only identify what the appropriations are, but identify all those funding sources that are coming in that are able to fund those appropriations so that we're not, you know, we're not funding appropriations with discretionary resources that could have some other funding source come in and offset them.
Okay, and I appreciate that. And I'm not trying to make sausage from the dais, but you know, obviously, to have a couple of weeks to familiarize yourself with nine inches worth of paper is pretty difficult. So, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Hume. But also, as part of the process and truing up the budget in September, sometimes some additional state funding becomes available in the form of grants and things like that to offset some of our net county costs for the things we're talking about today.
That's correct. So there may, there may be expenditures that are eligible for a funding source, but you know, we don't, we don't have as much of that funding source as we would like and may have more in September.
Supervisor Turner.
Thank you. So Eric, I'm looking at the slide. So Eric, I'm looking at the slide, it's page 17 of your slide deck, labeled Consent Decree Recommended Growth Appropriations by Funding Source. And I note that the inmate welfare fund seems to be a fairly sizable slice of that pie. I think it's one back. At nine percent. Does this assume that 100% of the inmate welfare fund is being used for this purpose?
It is not. So, but this is the most it's been used for quite some time. So some discussions with the Sheriff's Office recently has been, how do we, how do we spend down some of that? The fund had become quite high.
Right.
And so its intended purpose is not to spend it down to zero, but to use it for inmate welfare. And so many of the growth request items you see here before you in the budget recommended growth directly tie to the inmate welfare fund. So I don't recall the exact number of what it stands today. Is that one of your questions?
No, I guess where I'm going with this is, remind me what feeds the fund?
Okay, yes. So it's commissary, it's some phone charges, right, and various items like that.
So the fund, the fund is sourced by revenue that comes from existing inmates, correct?
Yes.
So have we looked at this very thoroughly from a legal perspective in terms of taking the funds from existing incarcerated individuals and having the funds ultimately used presumably for the future benefit, future welfare of other inmates?
Yes, and I'll add one thing, and then Ms. Travis might have something too. So recently, there is a panel or a board that reviews the inmate welfare fund, what it should be spent on, what should be approved, and actually recently added, I believe last year, was somebody from Health Services to be on that board as well. And actually, that was at the request of the board. Lisa, did you have anything to add on that?
I was just going to add to Supervisor Serna's point that, yes, our office has been consulted on the use of the inmate welfare fund for these specific programs, and it's our opinion that they do meet the legal requirements of the state law that governs the inmate welfare fund.
Okay. It just occurred to me, though, that not, too much unlike the fact that, you know, we pay tuition fees to go to Sac State, and then decades later, we see the new fancy parking garages and the new buildings that are tuition paid for. But it did occur to me that, I wondered about the legal nexus here and whether it applied similar to the way impact fees apply, you know, when it comes to development. But I'll certainly take the word of our county council that we've scrubbed that one. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Supervisor Serna. Okay, that includes this presentation. What I'd like to do now is recess for lunch. I'll look at my colleagues. Is 1:30 enough time, or do you want a full hour?
I was thinking half hour.
Well, let's put the difference, go to 1:30.
Yeah.
We are on recess until 1:30. It's 1:33, and I will call the meeting to order. Ask our clerk to please call the roll to establish quorum.
Good afternoon. Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Desmond.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Okay, so we'll move on to number six on our sub-agenda, Health Services Presentation from our Health Services Director, Mr. Lutz. Good to see you, Tim.
Good afternoon. Thank you. Nice to be here this afternoon. So I'll start off my presentation today, there's some overlap, I know from what was discussed on the consent decree piece, and there's a little bit of overlap also when Emily goes over her homeless piece. So apologies, but I also think it's highlighting kind of those linkages and partnerships across all of our departments. So first, I just want to provide an overview broadly speaking. Department of Health Services, we provide culturally competent physical and behavioral health system of care for the county. And we really pride ourselves on doing this through leadership, collaboration, prevention, and response, and working to strengthen and protect our residents, our communities, and helping those to optimize their health and provide resiliency. We're comprised of three service divisions, Behavioral Health, Public Health, and Primary Health. And I'll note within Primary Health is also Adult Correctional Health and Juvenile Medical. Then our administrative team helps to coordinate and oversee kind of the overlapping functions within the department. So when we developed our budget, and we had a few overarching priorities, really focused around that mission of improving well-being of county residents. We looked at investments in workforce, administrative and oversight capacity, and provider capacity, strengthening, and also building. We worked to increase the resources dedicated for our full continuum of services. And more and more, and you'll see through these asks, we continue to try and build out a continuum or an array of services, looking at the frontline outreach engagement, education and prevention through intervention and treatment. We do this through building on evidence-based programs, work to incorporate data metrics within the work that we do, and also do this through a lens of equity access and providing culturally and linguistically competent services. And then, of course, we work to ensure we're in compliance with newer expanding mandates that the state or feds put upon us. So looking at how these priorities specifically align with our department budget requests, you'll see woven throughout this, a strong focus on building along our behavioral health continuum. And that includes our crisis response, community-based treatment, services to the unhoused population, and also full-service partnerships and forensic FSPs. Also working where we can build workforce, and that includes within our public health programs and our lab, our primary care clinics, and our pharmacy. And then, of course, a continued commitment to increasing staffing levels to meet the remedial plan within Adult Correctional Health. And then finally, our developing our infrastructure for the Social Health Information Exchange. So this budget gives you a breakdown of funding sources by the department. You could see certainly that the majority of DHS's budget is derived from state and federal resources. Then you have our interdepartmental transfers, MHSA. On the net county cost, I'll note again, this is where that number includes Adult Correctional Health and Juvenile Medical. Of that $7.2 million of net county cost, $6.9 million of that is with Adult Correctional Health and Juvenile Medical. So very, very little general fund within overall department operations outside of And I will say, I'll talk a little bit about this, but one of the challenges we have with Adult Correctional Health is billing for Medi-Cal. So when they're in the jail, we provide medical services just like we would in our clinics, but we're not able to bill Medi-Cal, which draws down those federal dollars. We're closely looking at CalAim under the view of, as it rolls out over this next year, April 2024, we're knowing that 90-day pre-release inmates will be eligible for Medi-Cal. What that means for us, we're still evaluating in terms of, do we, as a county, are we able to bill into that? Do we have enough information on their eligibility, get them linked to services that we can start to draw down revenue? My hope is to come to you next year at this point and say, we're bringing in this much, you know, additional revenue within our Adult Correctional Health to try and offset those costs. I've shown differently, same dollar amount. This just shows you where our growth requests are by division within DHS. And as you can see, the vast majority of this request is in building along our behavioral health continuum and addressing services to the community. The next highest, Primary Health, and again, heavily on Adult Correctional Health and Juvenile So I'll start off with Behavioral Health. Within Behavioral Health, we had a few priority areas. The first is expansion of Intercept Zero, which is the prevention and early intervention within the sequential intercept model. This is those services that are helping either deflect people from going to jail in the first place, or if they have had justice department or justice involvement through being arrested, it's trying to provide opportunities to reduce rearrest rates. We're also building additional resources to address homelessness within this budget, including behavioral health housing supports, outreach and engagement, and intensive services, and that being things like our FSPs. And then we continue to build bed capacity and infrastructure, again, looking at what the RAN study showed us on shortages in subacute beds, shortages in substance use, continue to address those within this budget. Important to note, within this Behavioral Health growth ask, there is no general fund net county cost associated with any of these requests. So starting off first, our treatment facilities, and I've tried to categorize these to kind of highlight some key areas. I'll say there are more growth requests that we have that are not covered here, recognizing the volume, we could be here for a while. But what I tried to do is highlight and lift up the biggest, but certainly happy to answer questions for any that are included within our requests. So under the treatment facilities, the first is our Children's Psychiatric Facility, which is really our Behavioral Health Continuum Infrastructure Funding that we received. That did go to this board a few months ago for requesting the contract for the state. This is putting the first year of funding, allocating it into the budget. This will provide a 16-bed psychiatric health facility, or PUF, and a 27- youth capacity crisis stabilization unit, or CSU, within our community. The second is the Mental Health Rehabilitation Center. This also is one of those B-Chip funding programs. This is to build 64-bed subacute facility. Again, looking at how do we prevent recidivism, how do we have alternatives to emergency rooms, to jails? This is specific for helping address that and help people step down for higher acuity to a lower acuity. When you think about it in a continuum like you would a hospital, people get discharged from a hospital, highest level of care, they step down to a skilled nursing facility or some lower level of acuity. This would be an analogous type of situation here with a subacute facility. And then the, developing the Mental Health Urgent Care Clinic, I know this came up during the consent decree, just highlighting here, $6.5 million. Those are round numbers, Supervisor, and those are round numbers because we would be putting out the contract for it at this point. We base that number off of what we pay now for the other urgent care in this case, so it's an estimate as what we expect that to cost.
Tim, can I interrupt you for a second here? With these investments and the growth, where does that get us in terms of a response to the gaps analysis identified in the RAN study with both acute, I think subacute beds, that's where the biggest gap was?
Ryan, I might actually ask that one for you, because I know you track that.
Happy to. Ryan Quist, Behavioral Health Director. It will not get us to our full gap that the RAN analysis identified. The gap analysis analyzes the number of beds needed for the entire population, and our areas of responsibility are the Medi-Cal population. So we're probably going to go with this one facility to begin with, and then see what additional capacity we may need above and beyond that.
Okay. And how many beds at this facility, this one that's?
Sixty-four.
Sixty-four, okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ryan. And then the next one also discussed was the expansion of the Mobile Crisis Services. One piece that I would note is, by expanding this, this gives us 24-hour coverage, and it really would be a total of 11 teams. Six of those are with BACS, this provider, and then the other five with our county teams. So a significant investment and upgrade as to our coverage for Mobile Crisis Services within the community. Next is areas that we're addressing, Services for Homeless or Out-Risk for Homeless. The first piece here is the building out of the new Community Outreach Recovery Empowerment, or CORE site. This was part of also the County-City Partnership Agreement, also approved by your board a number of months ago. This is putting the ongoing appropriation into the budget. The next item is adding community outreach workers to the CORE Centers. So what this will accomplish is each of our CORE Centers add these navigators that will be able to go out specifically to outreach to neighboring encampments, communities within their area, to try and engage with people, get them to come to the CORE Center, get them to engage in services. This is a really exciting piece to add to the CORE Centers because it really can expand the range of how do we bring people in and use these services that are now embedded within the community. The next item is increasing our flexible integrated treatment contracts by $5 million. This would be adding a 16th site. These sites, in a similarity to what our CORE Centers do, only in this case, this is focused for youth services. So families with youth able to walk in, get an assessment, get an appointment. The treatment, level of treatment that they require within those sites is going to be varied based on their needs, but they can stay with that site and receive that treatment. This helps us not only in, you know, broadly speaking, our youth, but also for our CWS youth, our foster youth. Really provides an opportunity for us to expand services to children and families across the community. I have this under homelessness because it does help prevent people from falling into homelessness, but certainly we don't just serve those that are homeless going into either this service and also when we talk about our full-service partnerships next. And then next, with our full-service partnerships, we're wanting to expand to add a new evidence-based individual placement and supportive employment model. So this ask is not adding new FSP slots. Instead, this ask is incorporating an evidence-based employment practice within our FSPs that will help people with identifying employment opportunities, getting placed, supporting them in a transition to full employment or partial employment depending on their needs, and really trying to get them out of a negative spiral and hopefully avoid going into homelessness. And then last on this, we're asking to add six behavioral health peer specialists to our heart team. At this point, we would be putting three of those to the city, three of those to the county on our teams. Again, just recognizing, right now, we have more clinicians on the heart team, which are crucial, but the peers really do help with connecting, engaging, navigating within All right, and then last, Behavioral Health piece, justice involved. These are areas that we're looking, again, overlap with what was talked about with May's consent decree. The first is developing three outpatient or forensic outpatient centers. I want to highlight in terms of when we look at that continuum, we've built out a continuum within the crisis services, we've built out continuums within our community with our CORE Centers, going up to subacute and acute facilities. What we're trying to do now is build out more of a continuum for our justice-involved folks. These forensic outpatient treatment centers would be aiming to do exactly that. It would provide out- It would provide outpatient services for those that are justice-involved. This would provide a great referral source when public defenders working with somebody released, maybe on probation. How do we link them to behavioral health services that also can support unique challenges with being justice-involved? Maybe they're on, you know, one of the diversion programs, mental health court. Those types of services would be what we would be wanting to offer through these forensic outpatient centers. Then, related, though not, again, not necessarily the same thing, but related is, we want to add an additional forensic FSP treatment program. This is important just based on the capacity that we're seeing. We know, you know, as we try and look for ways to help people out of incarceration, provide these forensic FSPs, we're really at our capacity. This would serve an additional 200 people. So, this would be doubling our capacity now for providing forensic FSPs. Then, we're adding three, or asking to add three senior mental health counselors to support mental health collaboration court. Again, I know we talked a lot about collaboration court. These are essential for doing assessments, services, treatment. And then, also, asking to add two mental health counselors and two peer support specialists to support JDTRC and the ongoing work and services with that population.
Tim, can I interrupt you again? This is great. I mean, I'm highly supportive of all of this, and, I mean, those 250 FSP, that is a big deal. You know, we often get in a discussion about, we have to have all this navigation and outreach, but unless we have the capacity, we're kind of dead in the water. And a common refrain I hear from people who are homeless and people who work with those who are unsheltered in the community is that, yeah, they get approached by a navigator, but there's, it's a, you know, a five-week wait or whatever to get into something. By adding this capacity at different levels over the behavioral health continuum, how closer are we to getting to the point where, look, we can get someone, if they're ready, we can get them into something? Or what is the way? I know that's, it's hard to really answer that question, but that's what we're trying to close that gap, right?
Yes. Are you talking something meaning behavioral health services?
Yeah, just behavioral.
Right now, that's, this will significantly help that. I mean, we do everything we can, whether it be providers or our own staff, to do that. By bringing on these, right now, we know we're at capacity. We add 200. It's going to take a while for us to get up to that capacity, so this really does help to make it, somebody wants to come into treatment, and that is our goal. When we build out these community-based clinics, and we would be, again, looking strategically across the county, we don't want it to be centralized in just one area. We want there to be, you're ready for services. We're doing the same on our substance use beds, where if somebody wants, you know, right now to go into treatment, our goal, and where we're really getting close to is, we have a bed, we can get you into treatment.
And that's, you know, I mean, usually in the homelessness discussion, it's always about the housing and how, what's available, what's not available, but on the behavioral health side, this isn't, we don't talk about this enough, and this is a really big deal, the investments that the county is making and this board is making to increase that capacity. So, okay. Thank you.
Ryan, did you have anything else you would add to that, or? And then, I, just because, again, it's important for us to highlight where we're working across all of our different communities in the county, recognizing some of our underserved, underrepresented communities. I did want to highlight and lift up our community counseling trans-cultural wellness services for our Asian and Pacific Islander-based, specific counseling behavioral health substance use services that we're increasing that contract by 921,000. All right. If there's no questions on behavioral health now, I will go to public health. First of all, you know, looking for some knock-in on wood, where certainly we seem to be past COVID, and really, right now, we're looking at what is the, what is the future for public health? And what are the key initiatives? This budget starts to reflect what we see as those initiatives. Public health accreditation is something that, you know, we've been wanting to do for a while. Pandemic put a lot of things on pause. This really does help open avenues for additional funding, certainly makes us more competitive for grants, and really helps to promote a higher standard of excellence across our public health field. Also, looking at workforce development and training, how do we bring in positions to help augment or fund some of the key areas that we know we're going to have growth? A lot of it is efforts toward enhancing our equity, access to health, better health for all of our communities, looking at those social determinants of health and where we have disparities, and how do we start to develop plans and address those plans? And then, lastly, we have our community nursing units. Those support our homeless response teams, and also help for new mothers and young children and families. Looking specifically at those asks, you'll note there isn't a lot that I'm requesting here on future of public health. Back in December, the board approved funding and positions to be aligned with future of public health. We did that because it was a spend now or potentially lose, so we didn't want to, we didn't want to lose that opportunity for those funds. But what we are trying to do is now strategically leverage future of public health with then other funding sources, other programs, and make sure that the things that we're doing are driving toward our goals within public health. The first, we have some software and maintenance services associated with our lab, associated with EMS, to help us with training, tracking, performance. We also have investments in building out our workforce. We are asking to increase the EMS medical director salary. And again, this EMS medical director is a key position within our local emergency, local EMS, apologies. So, what this position will help us do is set policy for ambulance providers, fire districts, for hospitals in terms of how we transport patients to them. This is an essential position for us. We had a retirement of our previous EMS medical director, went out for recruitment, just brought to the board contract a couple weeks ago to appoint the permanent EMS director. Also, we're asking to embed a DTEC business systems analyst in our public health lab. Given the complexity of the systems that we operate, this position would be crucial to help keep those systems going and getting reports. We'd used temporary positions with DTEC in the past. This is recognizing that there's an ongoing need, and so allocating funding to do that. Also, increasing interpreter services for the TBHS clinic, just based on volume that we're seeing. We know that we need to increase those interpreter services. It is directly related also to the refugee assistance program, where the state asked us to take on additional roughly 30% increase over last year for the number of refugees. I don't know that we'll see that many, but we know based on current trend that we need to increase the amount of interpreter services. And then, lastly, converting a limited-term position to permanent using future of public health funding. The edible food recovery program, I know, also went to the board a few weeks ago. This is asking to add now the appropriation for that that was already then approved by the board. Then, last service division is our primary health. And again, I'll note, when you look at the bottom, that net county cost number is, the bulk of that is with our adult correctional health juvenile medical services. If you looked at this slide a little differently, you can see where those asks are within primary health. Areas that we're trying to address, staffing and volume challenges with our pharmacy, and then augmenting our primary care clinic staff to support increasing volume. So, for addressing pharmacy growth, you'll notice $1.3 million, that's a huge amount for pharmacy. We'll call out the fact that that has been really where we've seen tremendous growth. If you looked at fiscal year 1718 to 2122 pharmacy, we've seen a 230% increase in pharmacy usage. Then, looking just over this last year, we expect that to increase another 19%. So, we know, one, volumes up, two, prescription drug costs are up. So, with both of those, that's where we have a significant growth ask here. Again, no general fund or net county cost ask to do this. This is billable by Medi-Cal, but this is making a number of adjustments, including adding additional lead pharmacists, pharmacy technicians, and also adjusting for the cost of medications. I think it's important to note pharmacy serves not just our health clinic. Our pharmacy serves adult correctional health, juvenile medical, behavioral health urgent care, mental health treatment center, and any other county-operated service that we would be bringing online. And then, on the access and referral, we hired a consultant to come in to look at our FQHC, really identify opportunities for system improvements, areas that we could be better on compliance. They identified access and referral as critical areas where we were not meeting managed care timelines and standards. So, how quickly when someone calls an appointment? Are we answering the call? If they leave a message, how quickly are we getting back to them, scheduling them? If they need a specialty care referral, how quickly are we making those referrals? Those are the types of activities where we knew we were lagging behind. So, what these two requests together, one is adding office support for medical referrals, and the other is office support for clinic call center, are working to address that. Again, paid for through Medi-Cal clinic revenues, no county general fund. And then, last item here for primary health is our supporting clinical teams and quality improvement. They're asking, here, we're asking for some administrative support, also supervisor support to address span of control. In many cases, we've grown staff over time, but we haven't necessarily grown any supervisory level staff, and so we have some supervisors that have 20, 30 people reporting to them. It's really hard in a care environment for a nurse, a supervising nurse, to have 25 nurse reports to them. So, this helps try and adjust that span of control. And then, I know adult correctional health was covered extensively in the May's consent decree presentation. I'll note there's a $58,608 difference between this, all of the department asks in that presentation, and that's as a result of some administrative overhead charges that would be coming from DHS administration, and also administrative overhead costs associated with pharmacy that weren't strictly part of May's, so they were separate from that, and I just want to call that out here. And then, juvenile medical services, a few requests here. The largest, we're asking to add three registered nurses. And this, when we look at estimates of the juvenile justice closure and additional youth that we're getting into the facility, we expect between 25 to 30 new residents. And that's set to complete this June, so, in this month. So, what we're trying to do is adjust our service levels. We're seeing that service in line with where it was in 2016, 2017. So, an increase in the number of youth. We're trying to add staff to help address that. And then, last two slides on administration section. This is, again, just noting what our administration asks were. The first is building and developing our social health information exchange, one key priority, and then, I'm just trying to address our administrative programs based on volume. We add facilities, we add new staff, we need facility support and logistics support for technology deployments, phones, tablets, chairs, office equipment, things like that. So, in the case of the SHE, we're asking to add three embedded positions for DTEC. This will help with data analytics and also the overall administration of the system. We're also asking to add two human services program planners. This will, they'll support a couple different roles. Part of it will be compliance and data governance, supporting the data governance committee. Part of it will be customer support and really helping develop the relationships, developing the needs and understanding how to make adjustments within the system. Launching a system this large, this complex, we're trying to look to how any other organization would operate and bring in support staff to make sure that we have the right people making this successful. We're also looking to add a ASO2 that would assist with the overall budget contracting, other types of administrative duties. And then, lastly, is department admin support. I mentioned the ASO2 for facilities and a stock clerk for logistics. I'll say the way that, because this is a, the number looks higher than it is, so I just want to note that for the record on how it's asked. An ASO actually is about $130,000, but because we are doing the reimbursement, we're basically, one department within DHS is reimbursing the other, it doubles the appropriation, so it makes that number look higher than it is. Same with the stock clerk. Stock clerk is about $70,000 when you factor in benefits. So, I just want to call that out for the board, that a stock clerk in a van isn't costing And that concludes my presentation, if you have questions.
Okay. Thank you, Tim. I don't see any, oh, Supervisor Hume.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, and I appreciate, much like I've said regarding other departments, I'm sure you've scrubbed the budget. I am going to have some requests when we get to the end of things, but I just wanted to ask a question on your largest net county cost growth item, individual, which is the contract augmentation for UC Davis for jail mental health services, to increase the capacity by 125 patients from 400 to 525. Do we have a number of how many patients we currently have in that system now? Are we at the 400? Are we at the 525? Are we somewhere in between? Are we below all of it? Do we know?
You know, I apologize, I don't have that exact number at the tip of my fingers. I can get it for you and send over to see where we're at with total number.
So, not necessarily looking for an exact number, if that helps. What I'm looking for is, given that this was, as I said, one of the largest growth requests that was approved with the largest net county cost, and it has a specific number tied to it, is this an item where we're bumping up against capacity, and that's why we felt this was such an important need?
We are most definitely bumping up against capacity. If not, don't have enough capacity. I think that's part of our challenge. As we build out some new space or reallocate some space, we know we need to increase behavioral health services. This was noted by the subject matter expert's recent report. So, we know we need to add capacity, and there just isn't enough for the broad array of services. So, this isn't, yes, there might be some excess capacity at the top of adding all of these positions initially, but we do expect that we're going to use all that capacity.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Supervisor Hume. Okay, Tim. No other supervisors in the queue. No other supervisors in the queue. Thank you for the presentation. And now we will move on to Emily Halcon.
Good afternoon. Thank you.
Afternoon, Emily.
So while Flo's pulling that up, good afternoon. Emily Halcon, you're Director of the Department of Homeless Services and Housing. As you know, and as both Amanda and Ann alluded to earlier this morning, the Board has prioritized programs over the last few budget cycles to programs that address homelessness, both direct services and supports for folks experiencing homelessness, but also programs to address the community-wide impacts of homelessness. And while many of these services and programs are going to live within the new department that we gave you a workshop just a few weeks ago, we know that despite the creation of the new program, there's going to be a need for funding throughout the county. You've already heard from some of my department colleagues today about some of those expenses. So as part of our preparation for the launch of the new department, staff in the Department of Homeless Services and Housing have been working over the past few months to collect and document all of the funding that was allocated in this current year's fiscal budget to address homelessness. And so before I give a really high-level overview of my department's budget, I want to share with you some of the initial findings from that work. Thank you, Flo. So just to start sort of how we approach this, we reached out to all county departments, with the exception of some of the, the funding related to the costs for the sheriff's hot team. The initial project that we're going to talk about today does not include external departments such as the district attorney or SHRA. We do have intentions of continuing to do this over time and duplicate it, and hopefully expand it to include some of those external departments and agencies. Fiscal leadership in every county department that was involved was asked to provide information at the project level related to costs in this current year's fiscal year budget, that in either in whole or in part serve people experiencing homelessness or address the community impacts of homelessness. And so each department went through projects and provided information in one of three categories. First, projects or programs or costs that responded to the impacts of homelessness in our community. Second, projects or programs that were dedicated to provide services or supports to people experiencing homelessness. And third, we asked, and this is especially important in health services and human assistance, for programs that are not specifically dedicated to folks experiencing homelessness, but are frequently accessed and provide critical services. This would be stuff like health services, benefits, and DHA, et cetera. And so if a reported program or service such as behavioral health or health services is not fully dedicated to homelessness, the department and my staff worked together to estimate the percentage of folks that they believe that those service-based programs serve that are homeless, and we appropriately adjusted the amount shown in this. Administrative costs or staffing for county staff were only included if the estimate is at least 30% of that staff's time is spent on administering or overseeing a homeless-related program. So we worked alongside the budget staff, once everything was received, to compile and review all the submissions and aggregate up the information for the presentation you're seeing today. So as you can see, overall, in this current fiscal year, we estimate the county has allocated over $177 million to address homelessness. And I do want to start, because I know we've had previous conversations, it's a few, a month ago, maybe close to a year, where we had estimated about $180 million, and I just want to clear up the difference between that. The first is that that estimate was, was much less precise, but the real reason that this is a much more precise and thorough exercise, but the real reason is at the point of the $180 million estimate, we had yet, we had yet to allocate a good chunk of the one-time ARPA funds. So big chunks of ARPA funds were assumed to be all spent in one fiscal year. Now a lot of those ARPA funds have been spent out, so you'll see them spread out as we repeat this year over year over year. And as you can see in the pie chart here, about a quarter of the funding that is committed is coming from the general fund, and about 45% is coming from non-ARPA state and federal funding sources. Another quarter, of course, is coming from ARPA. I do want to note that, you'll see this throughout the slides, these big chunks of ARPA and one-time funds in this fiscal year are primarily associated with some very significant capital expenditures by the Department of General Services to stand up some safe stay. So that is going to change in subsequent years. And you can see a small amount which is categorized as other. That includes some federal financial partnership funds, domestic violence trust funds, some commercial fees from waste management, and some various grant fundings throughout departments. You will, because I just said, you can see at the note, about 20% of the allocations were to projects that we were categorized as one-time projects. But you will see that about 26% of the funding is ARPA, which is the most obvious one-time funding source. So what this means is, is what we've all known, is that there were some ARPA-funded projects that do have multi-year costs. They were not simple cap, capital expenditures. And so if we are going to continue some of those programs past the ARPA deadline, we will need to be working with you to identify ongoing sources of funding. And finally, on this slide, just wanted to point out that when looking at the delivery of the services, about 19% of the funds are used to pay internal county costs, whether that be staffing or direct delivery of service by county staff. About 81% is through external contracts with third-party contractors. As I shared earlier, we did ask each department to categorize the activity being funded. The Department of Homeless Services and Housing defined those categories, and you'll see them up here. And we worked with them to, to talk through how projects most, most fit into these categories. And you can see, we did aim to differentiate between categories that are more direct services like shelter or outreach or housing, categories that are more like a client support, like benefit acquisition, health services, and then administrative cost. As you can see here in this chart, the largest allocation has, is going to sheltering programs. Again, this is primarily related to some very big expenditures this year by DGS to purchase some of our safe stay sites. Following sheltering, again, more service-related things, including behavioral health, housing, and outreach were the next largest allocations this year.
Excuse me, Emily. Supervisor Serna?
Sure.
Thank you. And I'm probably going to beat you to the punch here a bit. How concerned should we be that administrative costs at $10 million are, I guess, roughly equal with outreach and engagement, and in fact surpasses all those bars to the right of it, which are substantive activities?
Yeah, I think, thank you for the question. I think that administrative cost is a little bit more of a murky subject, so this also includes stuff like our park rangers dedicated to outreach. So it's not administration necessarily a project. Some of it is also the costs of county staff who are not running service programs that makes sense. So the rangers is a good example that are included in that bar.
Okay. So, so the administrative cost portion of this breakdown, I presume gets, can be thought of as being spread across the other bars? Is that right?
Yes. So for example, if there was a sheltering program that, that we contracted for a shelter provider, and within that contract there was administrative services, that administration would be in shelter, yes. And we can provide more breakdown within any of these, especially what feeds into them, if that's helpful.
Thank you. Thank you. Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. And I apologize, Emily, this might not be the right time for this question, but since we paused for Supervisor Serna's question, I'll go ahead and ask it, because I think it might relate to encampment services on this slide. And that is that I've, I've heard a, I don't want to call it a criticism, but it's definitely a concern, that we don't have enough forensic clean teams to really handle the encampment response, work proactively with the sheriff's hot teams. And then I just heard a concern Supervisor Frost and I the other day, relative to a lot of the park, and river, Parkway and river cleanup efforts that are going on, that if we had more robust forensic clean to come in and haul away the, the waste that is collected by these volunteer teams, that that would help. And so is there anywhere where that amount is codified in, in your department? Is that under waste and management resources?
No, that's a great question. So you are correct that in this bar, the forensic clean contract would be included in the green bar called encampment services. The encampment, the contract for forensic clean has historically landed in Department of Waste Management, and they've used their, the funding that has been provided by the Board, both for homeless services, including servicing our sanitation stations, as well as a smaller contract for litter removal. With, what we are doing with the creation of the department is moving those funds for the homeless services over to my department, and Waste Management is going to cover the litter component of it through commercial rate fees. And Keith is on the line if he needs to, to pipe in that. Effectively, what that means is that we will have additional contract authority if we need to expand the homeless component of the forensic clean contracts. I will say that we work very, very closely with Department of Waste Management, and we have not experienced yet at a time where we're not able to respond to those calls for service. We have three forensic clean teams currently, two who are homeless encampment dedicated, so they go out and do proactive outreach in dedicated areas. They also respond if there's like a big cleanup. And we have another team who services our sanitation stations and also is a flex crew. But if it was the Board's desire, we do actually now with the, the split of this between my office and Waste Management, we have a little room to grow in that contract.
Well, it's certainly this supervisor's desire, because I've heard that, obviously, we're, we're barely keeping up with demand for active encampments as well as the residual, as I said, waste that's being gathered up from, you know, encampments that have been washed away or abandoned or whatever else. And then I've also heard that there are departments within the county that are, are feeling like they're not able to go up into what they've determined to be a safe and clean area to do their work until forensic clean gets there first, and, and we're kind of in this weird playback loop where we don't have enough to keep up with current demand and let alone to redirect. So I certainly would like to see some way that we can expand and deploy more teams dedicated to that.
Yeah, and I'm happy to work, I know Keith wants to, I know he's on the phone, he wants to chime in on what the capacity is currently versus what's needed, but I'm happy to work with, with him and his team on that.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So at the risk of being too premature here with any mention of additional growth and enhancement for different departments or programs, I will say to Supervisor Hume that Supervisor Desmond and I have been working with Liz Bellis and her staff, as well as some of the better-known groups that do trash removal and cleanup along the parkways, plural. And so when it comes time for us to have a deliberate conversation this afternoon, hopefully this afternoon, as it relates to additional resources for contracted trash removal, which could include forensic clean, as it relates to parks, I think we'll have plenty to share that I think gets to your, to your point.
Okay. Thank you, Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. Finally, in looking at the total expenditures across multiple departments, we did look at allocations by county department. And as would probably be expected, the Department of Human Assistance and Health Services account for the vast majority of the allocations. And, and next year's analysis, when we repeat this again, the bar that is shown in red of human assistance, the bulk of that will be transitioning over to the Department of Homeless Services and Housing, but I still anticipate these two departments will remain through the top. And again, DGS is shown in here as a little bit of an anomaly year for them, because there's some pretty significant capital expenditures. Now taking a look at the coming fiscal year, that was looking at today, and we're looking now in the future, and simply at the department, the new department's budget, we went through this in the workshop, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time on here. This, our overall department budget will be just over $51 million, and you can see in this slide here how our budget also aligns with these different services we just talked about, with sheltering and housing constituting the largest investments planned for the upcoming fiscal year. Looking at the source of funds, the department, I was asked, thank you Supervisor Serna, in May, about the proportion of our funding that was federal, non-ARPA, and so I did that math here, and you were indeed correct. And so you can see that taking out ARPA, our federal sources of funding are a very small portion of our overall budget, with general fund representing over half of the total departmental budget. With the, with the significant commitment of ARPA to programs that the Department, Department of Homeless Services and Housing is administering, our direct growth requests from the general fund are really primarily related to some costs this year with establishing the department, some, some one-time equipment and furniture expenses, as well as our share of costs associated with getting representation from our legal council, county council's office. In addition to these more internalized requests, we're also asking for just over $440,000 to allow us to expand outreach services as needed. Currently, as we talked about in the May workshop, we have a contract that will start July 1st with Sacramento covered, that has 22 FTEs outreach workers. They work in both the Parkway as well as the unincorporated county. And their contract importantly includes not just the actual outreach workers, but it also includes some flexible funding for them to do stuff like short-term motel stays, deposits, other, other one-time costs that are needed to help people transition from unsheltered homelessness, either into a shelter or directly into housing. But with the expanded reach of our role in outreach, not only in the city of Sacramento, but certainly in some of the other cities as we've talked about, as well as the partnership agreement, we really anticipate the need to enhance and potentially expand some of these outreach services. So we're asking for that growth to support that. And then finally, as Amanda alluded to earlier this morning, in addition to the $800,000 in growth specifically requested by the Department of Homeless Services and Housing, there's an additional almost $9 million, of which $1 million is in net county costs within other county departments to address homelessness. They're listed here. Tim already went through the ones from Health Services, our partners at the district attorney and the sheriff's office, talked through theirs this morning, and other departments are available if there's questions about their asks. That concludes my remarks. I'm happy to answer any questions as well.
Okay. Thank you. Emily, I should have had a couple of, I'm glad you really highlighted the, you know, ARPA funding and the issue of the, the one-time funding. I mean, it's, but the good thing is, it's helping us make, make investments in these things that are, that, we're going to have to figure out how we're going to, how we're going to continue funding them, but, but in particular, the safe stay communities, obviously. There's another funding source out there that will be available, and then we, I know we haven't taken advantage of it yet, but the $25 million
Yes.
that was approved at the state, in the state budget last year, I believe, to help us provide some relief to the American River Parkway. How do you envision that playing out in us utilizing those funds?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, the $25 million in Parkway funds is sitting in a separate fund account, and we have been working for a while on identifying a safe stay location that would specifically serve the Parkway. I think some of you are aware of some negotiations on potential land. So we anticipate once land is secured, that that initial capital investment would, would utilize a good portion of the Parkway funds, and then hopefully we'd have enough funding remaining to, to fund operations for two to three years. So that's our, our primary plan for those funds.
So we have taken receipt of that from the state? Those funds?
Yes, it's sitting in the bank.
Okay, great. Okay, and then the other, the other, on the SAC covered contract, you and I have talked about this a lot, I'm, I'm very excited about the, the expansion of that contract. Obviously, the way we deploy outreach, engagement, workers, staff in the unincorporated area is much different from the city core, where things are much more concentrated. So what will their, I guess their, how will they operate in terms of office hours or mobile, or can you just describe that a little bit to me?
No, I appreciate that, and we've had some really great conversations with some of the community organizations in those parts of the county, specifically the Harts. Some of the P-bids have reached out, some of the smaller cities, specifically Citrus Heights. So we are working with them to make sure that they're available to do both proactive outreach into encampments that we primarily are receiving from community complaints, the hot team, just sort of our eyes on the ground, but also available to do more reactive responses throughout the county. And in some places, it does include, for example, we met last week with the Orangeville Heart, and they're going to set up office hours and probably a community library or such like that, having similar conversations with P-bids, to make sure that in those areas of the county where there may not be huge encampments and ongoing issues, that they at least know every Tuesday, the navigator's going to be here, and if somebody in need, can go reach out to them. We're having very similar conversations with the city of Citrus Heights, thank you Supervisor Frost, and probably going to be able to fold that, that work into this contract as well. So really wanted to create enough flexibility so that they can work in areas of the community that, you know, have just as much need, but maybe not these really, really large embedded encampments.
Yeah, the more spread out. Well, I have a, a meeting kind of along the lines of, of building better relationships between, I think, some of the outreach or in the navigation providers and the sheriff's department and the DA's office. I'm going to be meeting with Scott Young, who you know oversees their, their, the contract, and our community prosecutor in the north area, as well as the hot team sergeant next week. And I, because I think that's incredibly important, as you know, that, that they are talking to each other and coordinating. It's really great to hear that you're reaching out to the P-bids, because I think that's a, that's obviously their, their insight is really, really important, so. Okay, I see Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So as it relates to, it looks like the fourth item, fourth row down here, the two passenger vans, I'll look to Siobhan on this one. Just want to understand, is this different than the vans that we discussed earlier this week? this different than the vans that we discussed earlier this week?
No, that's the same as the vans we discussed.
Okay, so I was under the impression, though, that we were funding that with ARPA funds.
So your district allocation is going to be used for the branding of the vans plus other?
Vehicles.
Vehicles, right.
But it's all going to, is it all going to be under the auspice of the Harts?
The vehicles?
Yeah.
For the city teams? That's right. Our representation on the city teams is the Hart vehicles. However, we do have teams in the unincorporated areas too that expand, like Emily was saying, beyond behavioral health and into the outreach workers as well.
Okay, so the, I won't get too in detail here, but the branding, the vans, it's going to be a presence of the county of Sacramento, correct?
That's correct.
That's kind of what the whole point was?
That's correct.
Okay, I want to make clear on that. And then Emily, have you looked at other surrogate counties, counties of similar size, to see if they've done any recent organizational restructuring to develop their own equivalent Department of Homeless Services to, so that we can have an apples-to-apples understanding perhaps of your $51 million departmental budget compared to others to see what, you know, see how other sister counties are taking upon themselves to focus so finely on this one particular subject that their departments are being kind of revamped and, you know, under, again, the umbrella of homeless services. Is there anything to compare to at this point?
Yeah, no, when we were first starting contemplating the new department, we did do some of that research, primarily at counties who were hovering right around our size. And we've looked at mostly for structural and organizational approach. Do they sit within the county exec's office? Are they standalone? Are they within a larger department? And I will say that virtually every county larger than us either had one already or was working towards it. The part you're asking about budgets, we did do a little bit of look. That's a little difficult because, for example, some of the departments also are the continuum of care, or do functions that here Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency does for us. But I think that's a really great point, and I can, I can, I can't remember off the top of my head, but we did do some of that work. It's a little hard to compare because of the different functions, but it is becoming more and more common that this department-type role lives in counties and that they are directing resources in this way.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Actually, Supervisor Serna made me think of something. I was looking online as you were talking, and, you know, a news article about Santa Clara County spent, they spend $520 million a year on homelessness in that county. I'm assuming that that includes a lot of other things that are not included in just our, your internal calculations.
I'm sure, yeah, and I'm not quite sure. I think Santa Clara might be one where the COC is in-house, and that makes a huge difference if your COC is in-house.
Okay.
Because our COC's budget, I mean, annual allocation from HUD is, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars as well.
I think it's a dramatic improvement to have this information. I know we started, kind of started trying to compile information about how much we spent on homelessness a couple of years ago or so, but it's just such a moving target. But this is really helpful. It certainly does not capture, I mean, certainly SHRA and other things too, but the costs borne by, you know, the Sheriff's Department and other agencies that respond in an ancillary way. So, okay. Well, thank you. I don't see any other comments from Supervisors.
Thank you.
Okay, well, that is the last. I don't know, Ann, did you have any comments? Or can we go public? Okay, then we will go to public comment.
Right now, we have one person in chambers, Ms. Betty Williams.
Good afternoon, Betty.
One patient, Betty Williams.
One.
Good afternoon. My name is Betty Williams. I'm the president of the Greater Sacramento NAACP, and I am standing before you requesting a renewal of the program or at the very least an extension to the end of the year. We call it the Dining 2 Program. You call it the Food Desert Program. But we have met with a number, or I have met with a number of you, except for Supervisor Hume. He didn't return my phone call. Okay, let me keep going. In response to an extension of the program, Supervisor Patrick Kennedy provided the NAACP with alternative resources, and he addressed his concerns with the insecurities with CalFresh, WIC. Both programs have long history of helping these disadvantaged communities, but the food insecurity is still a problem even with the existence of our own residents. As you know, CalFresh emergency allotment ended in March 2023. What you may not know, as of today, we have served 57,814 meals and counting. We have reached out to over 2,700 just for this month, 3,900 impressions just for this month. Staff requested that we added homelessness to our program without additional funds, and we did it. Our costs include transportation and the delivery, and we also have certified covered California entities that help with enriching health demands. And so we're asking for additional, not additional, but at least an extension till the end of the year so that we can help these individuals. The restaurants, they have employed individuals, they're given skill sets, and some of them are coming off the program, even the homelessness. Without the additional funding, we will not be able to extend this. And I'm hoping that you will, at the very least, allow us to send you a packet of additional information of the number of meals that we have provided.
Ms. Williams, would you be able to wrap up your comments?
Oh, I can wrap it up too, okay.
Thank you. We're past the time.
I'm just saying thank you for allowing me the time, because we really want to continue this program with the small businesses and the homelessness as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. Supervisor?
Betty, I just wanted to say I apologize. I'm still getting my communications worked out in my office. I would have never intentionally ignored a phone call from you. So I don't recall missing one, but I'll check and see what happened.
No worries. I'll call you later today.
There you go. Thank you. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So I'm certainly well aware of NAACP's program, and I know I and my staff have had multiple conversations with Ms. Williams in recent weeks about the request. I will have the board know, if they don't already know the balance of the board, that there are other partners that we've been fortunate to have on the food provision front during the pandemic that have also at least reached out to District One seeking funds, resources to continue what they believe to be a very similar, successful program. So what I'd like to propose, because I'm not sure if we're going to be able to do it on the fly today, given the fact that there are different opportunities in front of us, is that perhaps between recommended budget and September, that we maybe have a concerted effort by our executive team to look at the prospect of maybe plugging into the final budget some available resources, not just for the NAACP, but maybe for the wider selection of partners with whom we've worked with over the last few years to enhance food security in the community. And I'm not sure how my colleagues feel about that, but that's what's kind of feeling comfortable to me today.
I'll chime in. I think that's actually a good idea, because there are multiple efforts going on and multiple asks. I think that would be appropriate. So, and I think we do have, Supervisor Frost, sorry.
I just wanted to add to that. Is it possible to understand if those organizations qualify, can qualify for ARPA, can show the losses to qualify for ARPA, which I'm sure they can if they're restaurants, right? And what they qualify for, for the, this round of ARPA that's, we're working on? What is the cost for what Supervisor Serna was suggesting so that we have an idea of what it looks like as we're reviewing it?
So Supervisor Frost, I think you may be talking about ARPA beneficiary agreements, which are structured as assistance to nonprofits, so not, you know, not-for-profit restaurants. We do also have small business assistance grants, so that may be something else that you're thinking of?
Oh, I guess I was thinking NAACP was a nonprofit.
Yes, yes. You had said restaurants, so that's why I wanted to clarify what you were talking about.
Um, let's see. I have the impression that they're working with restaurants, though. So I'm not sure if it's going, working its way through the nonprofit to help the restaurants or how that's working with each one of the different participants in the program.
Yeah, and I think Ms.
Yeah, and I'll also just add that we, the ARPA allocations that we have have now been allocated to other activities. So I think if we're going to look at bringing back some proposals, it wouldn't be with ARPA funding. It would be with other funding.
Okay.
We will take a look, you know, per the board's request at that. A lot of these programs that were designed to support both small businesses and restaurants, as well as to support food security under COVID, were really to serve folks who didn't have access to food and to help out our small businesses. So that's why we didn't bring a recommendation forward to the board right now. But, you know, per your request, we will go back and take a look at it. Thank you.
Thank you.
But there might be, still be some ARPA opportunities in the district allocations. I mean, I don't want to foreclose the possibility, you know, and have a discussion, right?
So if you recall, we decided not to use ARPA money for the food programs because of the difficulty in tracking all of the expenditures, particularly with restaurants. So if a restaurant buys a head of lettuce, we need to know that that head of lettuce only went towards this program and not any of the other restaurant dining. So we made a conscious decision to use General Fund instead of ARPA for that reason, and I think that still applies.
Understood. But I think maybe some of the nonprofits, I don't know about the NAACP, there may be other assistance that could be provided in terms of revenue replacement from things. Right, right, okay. Okay, well, let's finish up public comment.
Okay, so we only have one caller. I've left a queue open this whole time, so I'm going to close it now and have James transfer the caller.
Hi, caller. If you could mute the meeting in the background and then start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Hi, of course Supervisor. I would just want to start off by thanking the staff in the presentation who were actually serious about this hearing and decided to present their budgets compared with the two elected officials from the District Attorney's Office and the Sheriff's Department who didn't present their budgets and actually didn't even showcase any amount of the cost of how they distributed it, the way that you did. So I really want to lift that up. If you're noticing that a lot of the chamber is empty today, it's because a lot of us have more important things to do than have ourselves be gaslit and lied to for the span of literally four hours or so, at least. So rather than just go into that, I'm just going to say, get ready for September. We have some, like, there's been a comprehensive breakdown of this budget. And just wanted to name a few things off of that that we've noticed from this budget, is that the Sheriff's Department is going to get $695 million. That's what it's requesting, which is a $45 million increase. The District Attorney's Office is getting $123 million, which is about a 10 million, or a little over 10, or $5 million increase, either way. And Public Defender has only $61 million. And that the new homeless services and housing departments is only getting $51 million of that. So when you put all that together, the Sheriff's Department is getting no less than 18% of all General Fund discretionary dollars. And housing, homeless services, only getting 1%. And Public Defender, 1% as well, not including the conflict defenders. But either way, this budget is not set by community members. You all know that. You only use electioneering to effectively gather a few short-sighted opinions from about 1,100 people out of the 1.5 million people that live in this county. And this hearing, really, this seems like you all have already made your decision weeks in advance. You didn't even, I don't even think most of you looked correctly at the budget, even that one of you didn't even look at it like that.
Hi, Keon, could you please wrap up your comments, please?
Just to say, there's a lot of information on here that can't be delivered within just a two-minute period. I think you all know that. But don't worry, I'm going to spend the next few weeks bringing that all to your attention and breaking it down for you, since you all weren't capable enough to ask the critical questions yourselves. Thanks.
Thank you. That concludes your public comments.
Okay. All right, well, thank you. So move on to deliberations among my colleagues here. We'll start with Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair, and I appreciate the expediency of the morning from all the presentations and from the colleagues here on the dais. By my math, that gives me about two hours and 16 minutes with which to deliberate here. So I appreciate the extra time. No, let me start by thanking staff, first of all, for all of the work that went into preparing this budget, both from the departments who kind of analyzed where their needs were and put those forward as growth requests, as well as all the work that Amanda Thomas and her staff did of trying to sort through that and make sense of it. And then particularly of the patience and forthrightness displayed to me in the briefings to, you know, this is my first time dealing with this budget. And even when I didn't necessarily like the answers that I was being given, I think that there was a desire for transparency and honesty that I did appreciate and helped me work through how to make sense of this. And, you know, I've obviously been dealing with overseeing governmental budgets for almost two decades now, but this is the first time where I've been confronted with one that has a third comma in the bottom line. And so it's a completely different animal to try and parse through that. And then when you add on top of that all of the, you know, General Fund and then semi-discretionary and then restricted funds and trying to chase those dollars back to see where, if at all, any meat actually exists on the bone. And I would say also in that effort, staff was very patient and responsive in trying to walk me through that. And just as has happened earlier in today's meeting, you know, to kind of assure me that those questions have been pursued. But I want to start by thanking the fortitude of my colleagues here on the dais and of staff in last year's budget and in the previous year's budget to that, of making the commitment to the reserves. Because had you not put that money into the reserves, I would have had a very different attitude towards this budget. I probably would have dug in a lot harder, and it would have been a much more unpleasant experience, just because I still don't think we have enough reserves. I think if an economic downturn that we saw presented in that graph happens again, we're going to have to figure out how to tighten the belt. And so for me, I always look at how can we live a little leaner, even when times are good, so that we don't have to be draconian when times turn bad, which they always do. It's a very cyclical thing. But I just, I do want to say I appreciate that effort of putting that money away so that it at least starts to get on the correct trajectory. Then, you know, dealing with this budget, again, because of simply the sheer numbers that follow those digits, you know, obviously fund balances money that, for whatever reason, in the previous year wasn't spent, either because of unfilled positions or programs that were funded but weren't stood up, or maybe there were capital programs that were delayed and are still going to be funded but haven't yet been expended. And so I know that it's oftentimes, you know, it looks like that is where you really should trim the budget, but I didn't find a lot of meat there either. But I will say this, that relative to recommended growth, and this is really where I think that there is, you know, the rubber hits the road as far as priorities and moving forward, is that creating new positions, it's kind of like that Eagles song where you can check in, but you can't check out. And so then that becomes the base budget for the following year. And so two things that I've always railed against in my public service career is a mission creep, when government gets out over its skis over areas that it really shouldn't be interfering. And then the second is organizational bloat. And I think that government has a tendency to be like a goldfish that grows to the size of its container, and the budget is the container. And so, you know, I just throw that out there just as two things that I want to say is that from the fiduciary responsibility standpoint of things, even when monies are net county cost zero, those are still tax dollars that have been collected somewhere from someone that are being expended. And so I think that's important to keep in mind. And then obviously, I recognize coming out of the economic turbidity that we've been in the last couple of years with the pandemic, and then in the last couple of years with the pandemic and then the recovery funds that sort of just came and hot and heavy and fast and furious. We've always had work from home and workforce compaction issues that have made sort of forecasting and kind of separating the wheat from the chaff of what really has happened harder. We have inflation and all of these things that, that just make the job harder to discern, you know, what we have and what's available and what we should project. And so I recognize all of those things. And then as I was looking at this budget, as I'm going to go through some of my asks here, you know, I always just kind of bear in mind kind of the community priorities and what I hear from folks, certainly as I was seeking this job, but then even when I'm out in the community talking to folks. And, and, you know, they, homelessness is always right up there, but I'm going to let off the gas on that one at this time, because I think we're in a pretty good state of flux right now, where we're going to have better information in front of us to, to make informed decisions relative to that, you know, in future years. But I do want to say, Emily, I appreciate, this was the closest thing I've had yet to that sort of bright line funding and uses document that I had requested early on. The second thing that I hear, you know, obviously, especially in the rural areas, is, is relative to law enforcement and justice. And so it's good to see that we are, are funding some priorities there, but I do have an ask that arose out of today's presentation. And then, you know, the perennial, Mr. Vacari, is roads, roads, roads. And particularly in the rural area, particularly in the parts of the unincorporated county where, you know, the roads maybe haven't been touched in a significant way since they were first constructed, other than to patch together some potholes. And so I've got some ideas relative to that. And then the, the priority that I wasn't expecting but cannot ignore, obviously, because it shot up to number one, is flooding. And so I, I will start there with my first ask, and, and that is, let's see, before I get to that, I'd like to just ask a couple of questions relative to the June process versus the September process. So there's an item in here for probation where it's a million six, I think, something like that, that it's a million one five. And it says, although this request is unfunded, it may be supported with Assembly Bill 109, Senate Bill 678, and/or Prop 172 funds, if available. Are those monies that will be tracked? And then if that is the case, that that would be freed up to be considered in the September budget if it happens within that timeframe?
Yes.
Okay. And then there's an item in here for a position with OES relative to a contract to pursue FEMA funding. I would assume that a lot of that funding is going to be reimbursements, and so if we don't get that funding, it will be a net county cost. If that position is successful and they are able to get more grants than maybe we would have had otherwise, does that potentially free up additional monies for September consideration?
Likely not. FEMA reimbursements typically come much, much later. And, and I don't know if that's true for this as well, in that, so usually we get FEMA reimbursements a year or two later, and so it is a net county cost until the reimbursement comes in.
Okay. Then I'll, I'll just move on to my asks here, rather than try and chase down where there might be pots of money of, you know, at the end of the rainbow in September. And, and in all of my asks, I'm trying to look at whole systems approach, and so I'm not necessarily just one-offing here and there. And so the first one, relative to flood response, you know, I've, I've been convening a pretty disparate group of folks that we've been enlarging the tent with each time the working group comes together, looking at doing a multi-benefit project for flood mitigation, obviously tying into flood mar efforts and the aqua fur recharge and groundwater recharge, habitat restoration. And we're looking at going from the watershed all the way to where it meets the delta. And it's starting to get a little bit unwieldy. And at our last meeting, there was pretty obvious recognition of the fact that we need someone to herd the cats and, and manage this effort. And so I would ask for, I just threw out 300,000 because that was the item that was in OES, but I would ask for, for 300,000 to go towards DWR staff time and potentially a contractor to help manage this and coordinate this effort. And as I say, I, there is a lot of different groups with different interests, funding different projects, that I think if we are able to bring people together and get them pointed in the right direction, there's a lot of overlap to where we can really achieve some of these goals from a wider spectrum. My second request is, comes out of the not recommended growth, and that is to fund one of the four FTEs that was requested for EMS coordinator. It's page 19 of 23 on the, on the not recommended. And the reason why I'm asking for this is because I met with our EMS director and our, Dr. K, and, and I've been meeting with first responders, I've been meeting with the hospital council, I've been hearing about wall time being an issue, I've been hearing about healthcare delivery to our unsheltered population being an issue. And so what I'm looking for is, is somebody in the EMS coordination department that's going to be able to, you know, we have the LMSA legislation that's due to expire, but it looks like it might be extended. And so somebody that's able to really bird dog community paramedicine, triage to alternate destinations, mobile integrated health, the basic life service or advanced life service transport, as well as, you know, as I said, the wall time or the A-POT, bed capacity waiting room, just trying to get a better emergency services delivery model. And I think that's $160,000 for one of those positions. And out of a three-quarter of a billion-dollar budget, I think there's budget dust available there, if not some coins in the couch cushions that, that might be able, did you want to respond to this, Mr. Lutz, or?
Thank you, Supervisor. First of all, I appreciate your, your passion on A-POT times and wall times, and I know we have had a couple of meetings with you to kind of talk through regionally our challenges. I, and I don't want to negate the importance of that coordinator position. And in fact, I mean, again, it was, it was a submitted request. I also appreciate the conversation with, with Amanda and kind of her background on fire districts and understanding different funding. So where we kind of landed was that the first priority within our EMS system, we have a revenue problem. And that revenue problem is, it was historically tied to MADDY funding that is based on ticket revenue. As a result of, of reform, we're writing fewer tickets, revenue is down. So we've seen year-over-year declines in revenue, which what it has done is really put the onus then locally on county general fund. What I appreciate the support from Finance and OCE is developing a, bringing in a consultant to do a revenue analysis, to really look at how, what are we missing on how to generate revenue into the system and make it more sustainable? And that could be enhancement fees, some areas have taxes. There are a lot of different options that we can weigh, and I think helping us inform that is the next logical step. And when it comes to A-POT, what we, what we see is there isn't one organization that really has the, the silver bullet to solve it. This is something that's going to have to be solved with EMS, with our fire districts, with our private ambulance providers, and with our hospitals, everybody working in concert, which is why the medical director salary, making sure that we have a strong medical director, was first-year priority one for us. With every intent of next year, solid revenue analysis, a way to provide some sustainability, we would be wanting to come back to ask for that position. But I would really like to see a team, because there are a few functions that were, if you look at the original request, I think there were three or four positions tied to it. We want to make sure we do it right and do it in a way that we're, we're building a program that is going to make the most impact. So I, I feel that we can hold on doing that coordinator for at least the period that we get that revenue analysis together, recognizing that we have a lot of work we're doing with our partners to help on A-POT.
And I appreciate that position, and I appreciate sort of the methodical way that you're approaching this, but I also don't want to let perfection stand in the way of good. And I think that there is an opportunity here for a position that is dedicated to helping come up with solutions for these issues, to, to really be focused on that and meeting with the, the first responders, the hospital council, the well spaces of the world, the folks running our core centers, really trying, again, to, to solve what seems to be a fairly intractable problem, where right now we are essentially subsidizing private healthcare delivery systems with taxpayer dollars and, and then taking critical infrastructure out of the community. So that's something that I don't think should wait while we get our funding stream figured out. So I'll give you till September, but I want this to be a priority.
Okay.
Okay. And then this, the third ask is, is something I wasn't anticipating bringing up, but it was part of the presentation today, and that is, I would like to find funding for two of the DA positions. So that would be about $462,000 or so. And that would be one attorney for the collaborative courts and one attorney for the cybercrime unit. And because the DA is, is really focused on going after the online predators that I think are preying on our seniors, they're preying on our kids, they're trafficking humans, and they're, they're really, you know, creating, I think with AI, it's going to be even more of a situation where people aren't going to be able to discern what is real and what is not. And so I would like to, to hear from my colleagues if they'd be willing to back that play. And then the last item I have is, is the biggest item, and it's, it's one that I'm going to recognize that it's probably going to get punted to September, but I'm hoping that maybe we can bake at least a portion of it into our June budget. And, and that is relative to roads. We have a couple of unique opportunities, certainly in, in the next few years, maybe even beyond that, wherein we're doing some pretty big utility projects that are going to be tearing up and then repairing half the road. And this is primarily in the rural area, it's primarily in some of the older communities that have roads that I said, mentioned, you know, haven't been touched, you know, significantly since they've been constructed. And we have, what I see is a once-in-a-generational opportunity to leverage the money that these utility companies are required to bring to the table in order to repair at least the half of the road or the lane, travel lane that, that they've disrupted. And then we put a little bit of county funding behind that in order to do the full roadway improvement, so that that way we never have to come back, well, not ever, but we wouldn't have to come back and touch that road again for potentially 25, 30 years or, or longer. And so, you know, that's relative to the Harvest Water Project in, in District Five that's going to be causing major disruption and doing some serious pipeline. But then they, they, as a part of the costs of their project, would only come in and repave half the road. And I just think while we're down there, while we're doing the work, it makes a ton of sense to leverage that opportunity to do all the work. And then I know in another part of the county, there's a big water pipeline improvement project, that it's the same thing, the utility's going to be in there, tearing up the roads, and they're obligated to repair part of them. Why not repair all of them while we're there? And so my, my ask then would be that we look at bumping up the, and I don't know if it has a particular name, but the, the recommended growth for September, if, if fund balance proves available, that we, we put 5 million in, in this budget now, and then we bump it up to 25 million in September, with the first 5 million to be the other part of this program, and then the 20 million to be allocated out to districts as, as would normally take place. And I think that is, that's the extent of my asks.
Do you mind if I follow Supervisor Hume on the roads, roads one? This is, the two, the two things that keep me up at night are homelessness and roads, same as my constituents. And yeah, thank you Supervisor Hume for bringing this up, this perennial issue that we face, especially districts with large areas of unincorporated roadways. I think 43% of all the unincorporated lane miles are in District Three. But yeah, this situation where we try to, I think we get, and I know Ron Vacari's there, so Ron, you may want to just come down to the podium if you don't mind. And Ron, maybe you can just verify the numbers that I threw out, if that's okay. I believe SB1, we get, or about 30 million a year to, for road repair and maintenance?
That's correct. Good afternoon, Chair and Board members. Ron Vacari, Director of Transportation, and you are correct.
Okay. And then that, that 30 million is generally just a portion based on a percentage of, of road miles. But, but what we all do in our respective districts is we kind of, we talk with constituents, we meet with members of the community, we go to neighborhood meetings about where the biggest need is, and we try, and we try to figure this out, maybe plan over the years, working with your staff and looking at the PCI, the condition of the roadways in these communities. But then here comes a big utility project, as Supervisor Hume mentioned, and then we're stuck in the unenviable position of, of, well, that may not have been the primary roadway that we had been focused on in our planning efforts over the years, but it's still a pretty darn bad roadway, and if half of it's being repaved by a utility, what do we do? It kind of forces our hand. I mean, so it's a really, it's a difficult situation. Supervisor Hume is right. I mean, he, I know he's got a huge project down in District Five, there's another very large one in District Three with all the water metering programs going on where they're tearing up half the roadways. I guess my first question for you is, Ron, are we getting everything we can out of these utilities?
Yeah, based on, based on, you know, what the current requirements are that were, you know, have been around a while, they are required to do certain things, and that's it. And we do, as you mentioned, we look to partner with them where it can really benefit the county. And sometimes that's, you know, difficult to do, as, as you mentioned, I think every district has some utility projects, but some of the ones that you've mentioned, Harvest Water Project and certainly the Arden Water Project, you know, those are in the millions of dollars just for the piece that we, we would be partnering. So it is difficult, but yes, we require everything that we, that we have a nexus to be able to require. And then we need to determine whether or not we have the ability to partner with them to do, as you said, and help take the opportunity to address those roads one time and hopefully not have to address them for many, many years, if not decades.
I just, you know, it occurs to me that we have Regional San doing the Harvest Water Project. Obviously, the county has a very close relationship, the Regional Sanitation District. And then I think in, in District Three, it's Sacramento County Water Agency is, I mean, I just, I feel like we, we have, should have a lot of leverage over these utilities to try to get them to do, to do more. I guess I would, I like, I like, certainly like where Supervisor Hume, Supervisor Hume's head is, for sure, in terms of this. I think it's a, it's a kind of thing where these projects are not the same year to year, right? I mean, right now, there's two big projects, one in three and five. Are there, I mean, I, I'm certainly supportive of setting aside some additional funding just specifically for this, this purpose. But I'd want to get some kind of assurance that we're doing everything we can to, to stretch the utility companies, to make sure they're doing as much as we can get them to do. I don't know, any, any recommendations, Ron, how we could?
You know, I'll tell you, you're bringing up two projects that we're currently in negotiations on, and they are significant asks of which we have, you know, we're, we're starting those negotiations of possibly not having the funding and, and the need. The other issue with this is they're such significant projects that they bring in so much construction equipment and activity that it, it really has an effect on the other half of the road. And so we're working there.
Why can't we use that argument to say, hey, you're, you're, you're further degrading the, the other half, so maybe you don't pay for the entire thing, but we split the cost of doing the other half, or something? I mean, it seems to me we can get creative in, in getting them to do more.
And, and we are trying and talking about what we're going to do in the case that that happens, whether we videotape roads and, and just to, just to assure that after the, you know, subsequent to the project, that the other side of the road, if not addressed and not partnered, will be left in equal or better condition than when they got there. But just to give you some numbers, because there were, we're just now, over the last month and a half, and with the water resources project, over the last six months, we've been discussing this, just the share portion of it is around 7 million, I believe that's correct, $7 million on the water project, and I think the Harvest Project, it's somewhere in the 10, 11 million dollar range. So these are significant cost-sharing asks, and so we are talking to them about the, the ability and, and the need to not destroy these roads. And in the cases that we're unable to meet that full amount and take advantage of this opportunity, what can be done, what more can they do, what can we do? And all those discussions are taking place. And all those discussions are taking place now.
Yeah, it occurs to me certainly with District Five, obviously, the formulaic share of the 30 million, District Five would never be able to, you know, pave the other side of those roadways. And District Three, I mean, that would be, that would take up half of the amount that goes to District Three, that has 43% of the unincorporated roadways. It's a, it's a tough, tough situation. I mean, part of me thinks maybe we have a, have a separate pot of money that, you know, there may be some years where District One has a big project and they tap into this pot to help defray the cost of paving the other half of the roadway, and it may not, it's almost like a SECOG-type model where it depends on the need on any given year. It wouldn't be formulaic, year to year, it'd be based kind of on need.
Oh, actually, since you mentioned District One, I mean, we have had occasion, especially with the Levy Improvement Project and the Thomas Basin where that's been the case, where SafCA assumes, you know, a fair portion of the, not just the repaving, but building back the entire road base to, you know, what it needs to be, depending on how much they disrupted the roadway.
Yeah, and, and I should say, you know, in some of the smaller projects, maybe we, and we have, we've worked with each of your districts to try to partner with them, some of these larger projects really make it difficult. We are also looking at how we can spread those costs over multiple years, and in some cases, these projects, when I mentioned those big numbers, some of them are going to be over the course of a couple of years, maybe two, three, four years. And so we're looking at that also, but when the number becomes large, even in, as you mentioned, in your district being the largest in our county, it's difficult. But in like District Five, when you look at the funds that are allocated to that district, an $11 million ask is almost not, you know, doable at this time.
By the time we got it paved, it would be due to be repaved. It'd be like painting the Olden Gate Bridge.
You'd be long gone.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a respectful point of order? Is this, is this a better conversation to be left to our CIP discussions? Unless there's a, is there a line item, Supervisor Hume, in the recommended budget that you want to enhance for roads? I'm trying to figure out, get my mind wrapped around where the line item resides.
So I apologize, I may be off just from a procedural standpoint.
Because we are having a separate CIP discussion, are we not? Or are we taking them together? Usually we have two different ones.
Yeah, well, we did the, the CIP presentation, Amanda did that along with her budget presentation. We will certainly have a conversation about that if need be, but I think this would be an augmentation to the 20 million that we said we would fund for roads in September.
Gotcha. All right, just wanted to understand.
So I'm, I'm certainly supportive. What I would ask between now and September is, first of all, maybe Ron and, and, you know, maybe Dave, first survey the districts to find out which, you know, where these big projects are, just so we kind of understand the landscape, and then identify a plan and how we can leverage these utility companies. I mean, clearly Sacramento County Water Agency, you know, I would think we would be able to get some, you know, favorable consideration from them, but, but some of the other agencies too, and kind of come up with a plan that will inform our decision-making in September. That would be.
Point of clarification, I just wanted to ask Supervisor Hume, were you talking about doing the 20 million for roads and then adding an allocation for each district or for these special projects on top of the 20 million?
Yes, I was looking at going additive, bumping the total figure up to 30, and having the first 10 allocated for the special projects, and then the next 20 would be regular district formulaic.
Thank you.
So we have time to have that conversation with a little more information to inform, you know, staff recommendation, right?
Not to jump in on the timing, Supervisor Hume, because again, that's not in my purview, but I do want to say, I believe the Harvest Water Projects, we're in negotiations because it is kind of critical because they're out to bid on one of the projects. So I, it may, I don't know if that's the reason why the urgency, but certainly the Harvest Water Project is asking whether or not we are going to participate with them. And being out to bid, I'm just wondering about the timing of September, if that's the reason.
And that's why I was hoping to have 5 million of the 30 million baked into this budget, and then the other 25 would be in question with the September budget, because to Director Vacari's point, Harvest Water is proceeding, and the discussion, as I understand it, is a negotiation of whether or not we look at sharing the costs horizontally or sharing the costs vertically, because they could come in and they basically do all the disruption with their trench, they do the mill and fill and maybe a slurry that gets the base created, and then we come in and do the paving, and we get an asphalt reduction. I mean, there's, there's ways to maybe squeeze a little more money out of it on an economy of scale, if everybody's on the same page, that yes, we're going to be throwing everything at this when it happens.
So then would it, your request be, so 5 million now, and would that all be, and we'd have to figure out how that is divided proportionally among the needs among the districts? Okay.
Yeah.
Well, if I can jump in, so typically the way we've done budget in years past is we give staff our, our asks, and then we usually take a break, and then they come back with the funding sources to accommodate the asks. Is that what we're going to continue doing?
No, that's great. So I just want to make sure, so it's 5 million now, just so we can, when we do take that break? Okay. Okay. All right, Supervisor Serna.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chair. So first, I want to pass some paperwork out to Supervisor Hume and Frost, so that we're literally on the same page. And I assume you have. So what I've passed out is our copies of a May 26 memo from Liz Bellis, our Parks Director. Liz, you might want to make your way down to the podium at this point. And this was to capture for us some options, budgetary options in terms of the ongoing show of interest amongst this board, and especially Supervisor Desmond and myself. During past board hearings, the entire board will recall as well, staff, that we had reached out literally in the course of our meetings to folks like the River City Water Alliance and others who are doing terrific job augmenting the work of our great Parks Maintenance Staff to help clean our parkways, not just the American River Parkway, but Dry Creek Parkway as well. And what we asked our Parks Director for were some options, and she has done that with this memo. She's given us three in terms of giving the board some choice about how we might want to augment the growth request for regional parks. So first I want to commend and thank Liz for doing precisely what we asked her to do. And as you can see, the memo is addressed to just two out of the five of us, obviously for Brown Act purposes at that point. Supervisor Desmond and I did meet with River City Water Alliance along with Liz Bellis, as well as with Regional Sand and representatives from the water agencies to have a good discussion, what I thought was a good discussion about how to work together to think carefully about how we might want to approach the subject of growth request for regional parks for the 23, 24 recommended budget. And again, in discussions with Chair Desmond, and I certainly want to applaud his leadership on the subject, what we have come up with is kind of a hybrid of these options, and that's not unusual. That tends to happen when we ask for different ways to approach a challenge. So the hybrid option, if you will, that Supervisor Desmond and I are interested in pursuing is Option A, with the 500,000 for contracted trash removal that is referenced in Option C. So by my calculus, that means it would be a net of 1.7 million and change for that particular growth request. And that would get us one Park Maintenance Superintendent, two Park Maintenance Workers, two, two Park Maintenance Worker, one, two more Rangers, and again, the 500,000 for contracted trash removal.
I see our county council has keyed in here.
I was just going to ask Supervisor Serna if he'd be willing to put that up on the board so that the public could see.
Oh, absolutely.
And also, at some point, you have a copy for the record.
Yep.
Thanks.
Here, you're going to want this one. Here, why don't we do this?
Sorry to interrupt.
No, I appreciate it, and I'll just chime in as Supervisor Serna's providing this to the clerk. Appreciate him getting everybody together. I think we've, we've highlighted this at several board meetings, and we've heard from many, many members of the public about the condition not only of the American River Parkway, but the entire system, all the creeks, including Dry Creek and Arcade Creek, and I think especially that additional 500,000 would be available, almost just as Supervisor Hume had, it sounded like he had described, would be available to support these efforts to pick up trash and some of these other smaller waterways, so.
And it's unfortunate that we don't have representatives from River City Waterway Alliance. This is one of the few meetings they've missed in recent months, but, you know, they deserve a lot of credit and absentia here in terms of, you know, I think really given us cause to reconsider what we might do this budget round, and so this as much reflects, I think, their interest as it does ours.
They're not here because we wouldn't let them put the bucket on top of the, on the, what do you mean?
So that, that would be my, my ask, and I certainly let our chair speak for himself, but I, I know that he's invested quite a bit of his time in being thoughtful about this as well, and would respectfully ask my colleagues to consider it. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Serna. Supervisor Frost.
Thank you, Chair. First, I want to thank all the county executives, Ann Edwards and Amanda, and everyone who worked so hard. I know that a lot goes into putting together a budget that huge. It was heavy. I want to also say thank you for focusing on reserves, because that's been something that's, we've been working on for a long time, and I think we've made great progress over the last couple of years, even though this year's a little bit more difficult. I, I want to say that one concern I have about the budget is around just that there is a lot of one-time money with some really big programs, like the Safe Stays, that are going to require ongoing intensive wraparound services, and so I'm trying, I'm trying to be respectful of that, just understanding that it's obviously, we, we need these things, but we have some challenges. It's, I don't think it's going to be easy as we move forward, and I do think it's good for us to focus on reserves. The sheriff made some comments, right, regarding not really asking for more, even though in, in regard to the jails and the May's consent decree, it's a huge lift, what we're trying to do, and it's a huge lift for him too. I just had one question regarding his concern around the medical portion of it. I think we're addressing that, but I wonder if you can share just a comment or two about how we're addressing that, because that seemed to still be a concern of his, and I know you've been in conversations.
Yeah, I think I'm going to ask Director Lutz to talk about some of the work we've been doing to reduce the callouts for medical and, and the resources we're building in-house for that, so, thanks.
Thank you, Supervisor. Definitely callouts has been something that we've been tracking closely and really trying to do a quality audit of, are we sending out the right people? What we find is 85% of the time, we are sending out on a case that should be sent out. So typically what's happening, somebody comes to, comes to jail, they, you know, might have had a head injury, they might have had some type of, you know, doing a heart check, abnormal heart rhythm, unusually high blood pressure, things that, as a clinic, when you think about the jail as, we're really a health clinic, not a hospital, that we would need somebody to be at the hospital for. We recognize that that does take either, that there are two pathways, either the arresting agency or officer off the beat and having to escort that person, or having to have custody, the sheriff, you know, take on that inmate and then have to do the transport. So we work closely to try and, and put measures in place to reduce that. We, we know adding staff will help us tremendously, but some, some of it's a factor of just space at the current facility that isn't going to be solved until we get the, the new health facility built out. And specifically, that's about observation windows. There's 10, or observation booths, and there's, there's 10, not, not enough if there's a lot of arrestees coming in, and so it limits our ability to do those assessments. We've been working on new, new processes, such as a dual-stage intake, that helps us to at least go through the immediate stuff quickly and let them know, no, we need a, we need the assessment on this one, the others, we can free up medical to focus on high needs and trying to avoid that sendout. So we're working really diligently to try and get those sendouts down and make sure that when they are happening, there really isn't another option based on the current facility. As we see the new facility come online, I know that's going to help us, but we're, we're obviously years out from, from that being able to help us, so what can we do in the interim?
Sounds like you're working on it very well, so, and he's, but he's aware of that, right?
He is. We work very closely with, with custody team. And the unfortunate thing is generally, what we see is not having enough custody does create challenges, not just on, on this, but on calls. So it's always a trade-off where we've had our medical staff waiting to enter a cell to address an inmate, but there needs to be a deputy going in with them. So it's always this, this balance between making sure we have enough medical staff, but also needing enough custody staff to help support that, and, and certainly we're happy to, to continue to, to support custody however we can, and I know they're trying to work on this. But this is a topic I think we've met now three or four times with certainly the sheriff leadership to try and talk through these issues. My, my team meets with the sheriff team on a weekly basis, and this is always a topic that they're working through about what are we doing to address callouts.
Great, thank you, Tim. Regarding the DA, and I know Supervisor Hume had made some comments regarding his support of the DA and specific attorneys, I, I was a little bit stunned at the, at the statistics that the DA presented to us, and I, I felt like there were several areas that were important, the collaborative courts and the fentanyl, and he, he suggested, he, really, he just wants two attorneys. And so I want to, I want to support that. I can, I can support specifics, but I wonder if it'd be easier for him if we just support two more positions, and he uses them wherever he needs them.
I'll, I'll go with whatever. For full disclosure, I called him and said, if you only had two, which two would you choose?
Oh, okay. Well, that's great. Whatever works is fine. I, I do support that. I, I did have those conversations with Supervisor Hume and the folks at River City Water Alliance, and I definitely see the importance of the, the parks. It's catastrophic. The pictures they show are just, it's unbelievable, the mess. And they're doing a lot, and they're volunteering to do it, and it would probably cost us a lot more to do what they do, is, is in general what I'm thinking. So I definitely want to go on record as supporting Supervisor Serna and Desmond in their endeavor to, to put more resources toward the parks and the encampment, enhancing the response on the encampment. the response on the encampments at the parks. Regarding DWR and the EMS coordinator, it sounds, DWR, I'm, I'm happy to support that. It sounds like we need, it, it sounds like we need some time to look at the EMS coordinator for September, so I'm supportive of that. And I know, I know it's a real problem in the ERs and that we're, we're trying to work on that. The roads, I guess I was under the impression, I wasn't sure if we were going to have 20 million for roads this year. And I would love it if we could, and I would see, I see the logic in trying to take care of business when you're repairing a road. I remember a few years back, there was that conversation with the water districts and the other people, you know, the, the utility districts, and when they go actually creating an agreement that would require a sort of a T, a different fix on the roads that would be more, that would be more sturdy and that would be more protective of the moisture and that would last longer and not leave us with nice roads that got torn up and patched, and the patch doesn't, it, 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 it falls apart and doesn't do as well over time. I'm probably not saying it right, but I, I do think, you know, working together while we're fixing those prob, those, those problems makes sense, and I'm happy to support, you know, when there's big projects going on. I don't know exactly what big projects are happening in my district, Ron, and so I'll look forward to hearing your report back on that. I don't have any big asks, but I do, I did want to ask Ron Vicari, that there was one project that I was working, we were working on regarding the fire safe council in Rancho Marietta and some possible solutions for evacuation on the, in, on the D2 segment. And I just wondered if, I know you're working on that behind the scenes, I wondered if there's any comments, if, if we need to allocate a couple million in this budget to help with that, or what, what can you tell me regarding that?
Yeah, again, Ron Vicari, Director of Transportation. In response to your question, yes, we have brought all the groups together, we're making actually some good progress, and we actually have a grant opportunity that we're now starting to get everything aligned in order to go after grant funding, in order to, to fund some of that effort. So as we progress, I think you'll see that in terms of a future board item of which we would likely, and we're looking for other ways to fund the match portion of that grant, but if not, we would, we would see that at a future board item that would, would come maybe, maybe be able to be funded through departmental funds.
Okay. That was sort of a big deal for us in Rancho Marietta.
Understood.
Thank you, Ron. That's it. I, so far, feel comfortable supporting everything everyone suggested, and I want to thank everyone for hard work on a great budget, so.
Okay. Thank you, Supervisor Frost. So I will, the, the roads project, I certainly support, and I was going to be suggesting something similar to that, so that's great. And obviously, I join Supervisor Serna in proposing the, the additional funding for our Parks Department and also additional funding for trash pickup along our waterways. One thing I'll bring forward on behalf of Supervisor Kennedy, so I will not try to claim attribution, is that an ask for 168,000 for one year to provide CalFresh benefits for, at farmers markets. Right now, there's an issue where if you are a, if you, if you get CalFresh benefits, you cannot use those benefits at a farmer's market, but there's an organization called Alchemist CDC that has implemented a point-of-sale model, and it's been in place at eight farmers' markets in the Sacramento region. I think when we're talking about, you know, food insecurity and access to fresh food, I think this is a, a great program. Alchemist CDC anticipates they're going to be able to get some state funding. There was state legislation that passed, but there's not funding for a grant until 2025, so they would need an additional year to get them over the hump to be able to continue providing those benefits for people at farmers' markets. So I submit that on behalf of Supervisor Kennedy, and I certainly support it. And I don't know, do we need to, we need to put this up on the, there's, there is a handout. If we need to put it up there, just submit it as part of the record, Lisa?
Unless you're going to go over it.
I'm not going to go over it.
Yeah, just submit it as part of the record.
Part of the record. Thank you. And each supervisor got a copy of that.
Published right now.
Okay. So then, by my reckoning, we have, well, I don't know, did you have any comment on the other, any of the other proposals? I mean, I think we're all?
No, I'm, I'm good with what's been recommended by Supervisor Hume, I failed to mention that earlier. What I understand his ask that's in play here is 300,000 for flood protection coordination that amounts to one FTE, and then the two DAs, I'm supportive of that, and then the roads, I'm supportive of that.
Okay. So do you have all those in the county?
I do, and if you don't mind, because I want to make sure that I have everything, and also make sure that I have at least three of you supporting before we go back and do all the math. So I've got the flood response for 300,000. Okay, I'm seeing head nods. Okay. The EMS coordinator, we're kicking till September.
Correct.
Okay. The two attorneys for the district attorney's office. Roads, an additional 5 million now, an additional 5 million in September?
I thought we were going to, we're possibly work on 20 million in September and add 10 with 5 now, but I might have misunderstood.
That's right.
It's the same thing. 5 now, plus 5.
Plus 5 in September.
Total of 30.
So total of 30.
But 5 now.
Yes, okay.
For projects.
And then the parks cleanup, 1.7 million plus 500K?
No, no, 1.2714 and change, plus 500K for 1.7.
Okay, so 1.3 plus 500, essentially?
Correct. Option A on this, plus 500, right.
And then, okay.
168.
168 for the CalFresh.
For the CalFresh access, right.
So I have a question for you on the parks and parks cleanup money. As you know, we have $5 million remaining in reserves for work, work related to homeless on the parkway. I would argue this is related to that, and wondering how you all feel about using some of that for this, since we now have the 25 million for the parkway that we did not have when we set this reserve aside?
I would respectfully say that it should be additive and not, it should not come out, only because we're still, even with this funding, I think we could all argue that we're still behind the ball in terms of resources for the parkway. So I would respectfully ask my colleagues to think of it as additive to the 5 million, but let's not sit on the 5 million too much longer in terms of its designed use. And for Director, or Supervisor Hume's benefit, this is a request that I made last budget that we set aside for enhanced homeless-related, you know, operations on the parkway.
I agree with that.
Okay. So I'm guessing you need an hour?
How much time you need? 10 minutes?
An hour.
An hour.
Okay, how about 4:45?
Okay.
Okay, we will recess till 4:45. Great. I'll call the meeting back to order, ask the clerk, please call the roll.
Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Hume?
Here.
Desmond?
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Okay, I will turn it over to our county exec to go over your recommendations.
I'm actually going to turn it over to Ms. Thomas to, to kind of walk through where we're recommending we are taking the funding from, and then look at the list, the new list for September.
Great.
Okay. Good afternoon, still, Amanda Thomas, Chief Fiscal Officer. So as Ann mentioned, so we, we are displaying here, and maybe a little bit difficult to see on the screen, but hopefully you have the hard copy in front of you, the changes that are being, that were requested earlier, and what we are recommending to fund, thank you, Flo, to fund the, the total of 7,645,781 dollars in additions, is that we would be reducing, so I'm, now I'm speaking to this box at the top here, we would be reducing the recommended contribution to general reserve, so we had recommended that at 17, roughly 17.7 million, and we would be taking from that roughly 6.7 million to fund these additions, which would take that contribution down to 11 million dollars. The significance of that is that, per the board's general reserve policy, we should be contributing 10% of fund balance, and that estimated fund balance is 110 million, so that's that 11 million dollar minimum contribution. So we would be sticking with that. And then the remainder, we would reduce what we have recommended in the appropriation for contingency from roughly 13 million to roughly 12 million dollars. So it's the combination of those two is what's funding the additions that are listed below. So I will walk through each of those to make sure we've captured them accurately. The first is the 300,000, which would be a transfer from the general fund to water resources for staff time or contracted services to manage flood mitigation efforts. The second is transfer from the general fund to the road fund of 5 million dollars for paving projects related to utility work. The third is roughly 1.7 million to regional parks for the positions identified here, as well as an additional 500,000 for contracted trash removal. And then we have 168,000, which would be budgeted in human assistance that would support CalFresh benefits at farmers' markets. And then about 463,000 that would fund two attorney positions in the district attorney's office. So that is getting us to the total that I mentioned earlier. We do, on the back of this page, have sort of the non-general fund transactions that are tied to those general fund amounts, but those are not, not additions, they're just the, the other piece of those transactions.
Okay. Thank you, Amanda. Supervisor Serna?
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify for the record that the verbal explanation about budget unit 6400000 for regional parks also includes one-time funding for the requisite equipment and vehicles that goes along with that adjustment.
Yes, thank you. Yes, all, all of the things in the description there, thank you. Yes.
Okay. I don't see any other supervisors with queued up. You want to go over the revised, for inclusion, for priorities in September?
Yes, so let's see, I think I might be able to click through, oh, there it is. Okay, so it's displaying there, and it is, that is also a little small, too, I apologize. So, so what we've done here on this table is we have updated the table that we included with the recommended budget. So as you know, we were recommending certain growth be prioritized for funding in September if we have additional resources available. That growth that was recommended totaled about 29 million in net county cost, if you look at that net county cost column, and we're now adding to that the two things that were requested earlier. So 100, roughly 160,000 for an EMS coordinator, and then another 5 million to the road fund for paving projects, again, tied to utility work. So that would bring the total of the prioritized growth for September to about 34 million in net county cost. I did want to actually answer the Supervisor Desmond's earlier question that I neglected to answer about the change in fund balance from June to September for this current year's budget. So we actually, in June, a year ago, we had estimated a fund balance of about 209 million. It ended up being 244 million, so we had about a 36 million increase from June to September for this current year. I would caution you that I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily extrapolate that to mean that we would have 36 million for this current year, because we are estimating a much lower fund balance to start with. So all of that to say that, you know, there is a, there's a good chance that we may not have this 34 million available in September, so we would be looking at prioritizing within this list.
Great, and I, I appreciate that. Thank you for making that, following up, making that clarification. I, I am assuming it won't be the same situation, but that's also to say, something we, we discussed earlier today, that there may be things on this list that, some funding comes up, that's grant funding, right?
Yes, yes, there may be, and, and that would certainly be a great outcome.
I don't see any supervisors queued up to, oh, Supervisor Serna?
Great, thank you, Mr. Chair. So again, thanks to our staff, especially Amanda, this is always kind of her wheelhouse, generally speaking, but I want to thank our county exec and all of our department heads, who again have done all their due diligence and spent weeks, if not months, putting together their respected growth requests and working with the executive leadership to come up with a balanced recommended budget. And so with that, Mr. Chair, and alongside the augmentations that Amanda just covered for the recommended budget, I would move approval of the 2023, 2024 recommended budget and CIP.
Okay, we have a first and a second, and, Supervisor Hume, did you have a comment before we vote?
I, I did, really quick. I was just wondering, in the report on the, for the pages received on the dais, I didn't hear what else was said, other than when Amanda said we could expect an extra 36 million in September? Is that right? I was paying attention correctly? Thank you.
Okay. Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Well, I will echo Supervisor Serna's comments. Thank you, Amanda, most importantly, and all the, our county exec and, and our deputy county execs and our clerk and county council for, for today and for all the time spent providing briefings and answering questions, and really thank my, my colleagues up here. It's, it's very nice to, to really be able, I think, come together around, I think, common, common goals and priorities in Sacramento County, so that, you know, I think it's reason really to be proud. There's a lot of reason to be proud about what this county has done and is doing in this budget, and look forward to tuning, fine-tuning it in, in September. With that, I will turn it over to our county exec for comments.
Thank you, Supervisor Desmond. I, too, want to sort of pile on and thank Amanda and her team. They really do phenomenal work, and I think I've said this before, but, you know, Amanda hasn't been doing this that long, and she really has mastered our budget and programs amazingly well, and so I just want to thank she and her team for that. I also really want to thank the Assistant CEO and Deputy County Executives, because they actually make my job in this process easy for all the background work they do, and I greatly appreciate that. And then department heads as well. I thought everyone who presented today did a great job, and, and all departments spend months putting together their recommended budget proposals, and I think they do it very thoughtfully with, you know, keeping in mind that, you know, we are stewards of the public dollar, and I think they do keep that in mind. And finally, I want to thank all of you. You know, I have colleagues that don't have as collegial aboard as we do, and I really greatly appreciate working with all of you and the professionalism in which you all do your work, so thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ann. Next is, any supervisor comments? Seeing none? Well, it's, I kind of feel like I need to drag this out a little longer. Jeez, how about a poem or something to read? Okay, well, it is 4:57, and we are adjourned.